Okay, I will call to order the April 13th, 2021 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting, and we will start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Gore.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bonnie. Our first item is the consent agenda, which is a list of items intended to be taken all at one time, but the board is happy to pull anyone that anyone would like us to discuss individually, and we will be pulling item 20A and 22E. So are there any others that anyone would like pulled to be discussed individually? It's a pleasure of the board. Motion Holmes, second Gustafson, roll call, please.
Gore.
Aye.
Holmes.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Go again.
Yes, so then we'll start with item 20A.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This morning, item 20A is for your board to consider approval of a schedule of classifications and salary grades for both classified and unclassified service. According to the California Code of Regulations, public agencies are required to have a publicly-available pay schedule. So on a periodic basis, we do submit to you your current list of classifications and their compensation for approval. I'll note that there are no changes in compensation represented on the item before you today. It's merely just a codification of prior actions by your board.
Thank you. Any questions, comments by board members? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
Cheryl, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yes, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes. Actually Cheryl, we cannot hear you right now.
Hello?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, good morning. The reason I asked to have this item removed was, there was a recent charter review item that had to do with the way promotions and this type of data was handled, and there were no minutes for the charter review. There were public requests to have minutes, and one of the items that was to go through the CEO's office for appointments and raises, things of that nature. What that did was it removed transparency from the public. So we are not aware now that there are promotions being provided to individuals, which I believe there should be. So that was one issue. And then, secondly, there were some, a recent rash of promotions that the public was not aware of. A couple of them were, had public scorecards from other agencies of Ds and Fs, and yet they were promoted to executive-type positions. I don't think that that's appropriate. I think that the public should be aware, especially when there's lawsuits involved in some of these promotions. So I think that however that could be changed should be, because it was not made public during the charter review that this would be the result of that decision being made. So I think the public wasn't made aware that that was one of the fallouts of having voted in that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
No, Chairman.
Thanks. Seen, no other comments, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll second, but I wanted to see if staff had any response to those comments, because it does reflect poorly on the county, so I'd like to...
Kate, could you respond to those comments?
I can offer that the item before your board has no promotions or changes in compensation for any employees today. This item is merely a list of all of the county's classifications and compensation, all of which must be reported to your board for approval. This is typically an annual action we take to have it all in one place, so it's easy to find for the public, but does not represent any promotions or changes in compensation for employees today.
Thank you, Kate. So we have a motion Holmes?
I think Todd.
Oh, Todd.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to reach out to her and just, I'd like to get more information. I'm not sure exactly what she's referring to, to be honest with you. I will tell you, the Charter Review Committee, one of the recommendations was about appointments of department directors, and these were, whether this were handled under the CEO's office or sent as a recommendation to the board for final decision-making. That decision was arrived at by the voters that that would retain with the Board of Supervisors. So I'm not sure, there was no really discussion about compensation regarding executive staff, but I'll get more clarity from her.
Well, and any jobs that we've changed do come to the board for approval, and this is the process we use, so it's pretty transparent from my perspective. It is a lot of reading for the public, but it's there.
Correct, and in fact, we are going to be discussing reorganization today. So, yeah, all these items go...
Would you mind reaching out, finding out if what the situation is?
No problem.
Thank you.
And a point of clarification, it is only the department heads, not every promotion in the county. So it's the department heads that you appoint, or you want to appoint, our board approves. But a promotion between supervisor to a manager, those are done throughout the organization like a regular organization would do promotions for employees.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And as it should be, so we're not micromanaging. So we have a motion Holmes and a second Gustafson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And wow, we're ahead of schedule. No, we're not ahead of schedule, yes. I was, I just, I don't know what it is. Next item is public comment, this is the time... Oh, 22E, thank you. Next we have item 22E. Thank you, Megan. No, I'm good with coffee, I think. Don't let me drink any more coffee today, period.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Andy Fisher, County Parks Administrator. Item 22E deals with the Granite Bay Parks Trails Open Space Assessment District. This is an assessment very similar to a great number of CSA zones of benefit that the county has throughout Placer County, special assessments for special benefit purposes within communities. This one is for Granite Bay. It specifically, it's a property tax-based assessment that shows up on about 8,300 property tax bills, generally within the Granite Bay Community Plan area. Normally, in May, staff brings a package of levy assessment increases for the next, or adjustments for the next fiscal year, all together in May. This particular assessment is governed by a little different section of the Streets and Highways Code, and so it needs, just by law, it needs its own path to come to the board separate from the other CSA zones. And so, it's a three-part process. The first, we come in February to appoint the engineer of record, to do the engineer's report for the levy for the next year. The item today is to set the hearing, so it's the approval of the engineer's report and to set a hearing for May 11th, to set that assessment for that levy for the next year. Specifically, this assessment district pays for parks within Granite Bay. The biggest Granite Bay Park, Tree Lake Park, Ronald F. Ice Park, with a few smaller ones, and about 30 miles of trail specifically get paid for by this assessment. It was voted for by the citizens of Granite Bay in 2000, first enacted in 2002. And with that, I'll see if there's any questions.
Any questions by board members? Suzanne.
Hi, Andy, thank you for that. My curiosity is, last time you were here was to approve having the engineer's report, but today you want us to approve the actual engineer's report?
Correct.
I haven't seen it.
I believe it's an attachment, is it not? Or on file?
Not in my binder.
It's online, but not in the binder. So the additional materials are actually attached online, which I learned recently, but not with the packet.
Okay, that's just...
Right, is that how it works?
A little curious, because most of our backup is in our binder. Okay.
Take a look at that.
Okay, well, I guess I'm gonna have to go online and find it.
So Suzanne, are you comfortable going forward today, or would you like to read the material first? And do we have any deadlines, Andy, that can us wait for a couple of weeks?
I might want to clarify that this particular item is simply to set the public hearing, so there will be an opportunity before the public hearing is scheduled on May 11th to provide that engineer's report.
Well, it does say to approve the engineer's report on this item. I'm fine with setting the meeting.
The item is to set the meeting for approval of the engineer's report.
Right. Okay, so approve the engineer's report is not actually...
Not part of this, it'll be part of the next one.
Okay, then I'm good with that, Andy.
Yeah, then the title isn't really clear.
Yeah, we'll fix that wording for next year, for sure.
Accept the engineer's report?
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Any public comment? So what's the pleasure of the board?
Oh, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion Jones, second Gore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Andy. Now we have a public comment. This is the time when anyone in the public can address the board on anything that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we can take no action today. So is there anyone here who would like to address the board on something that is not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name.
Hi, I'm Deanna Slade Tripp. Many of the people here that are with us are fifth-generation, sixth-generation Placer County. If you have read any of the information that has come to you last Friday, you guys kind of have a background on what's going on with us. We are being sued to keep a gate open on Slade Ridge and to have our speed bumps removed that have been in for over 20 years. We are being sued over this because of an illegal winery that has popped up out on Slade Ridge Road. In 2008, Scott Pruitt filed for a home-occupied business license, which he was granted, and he started his garage winery, a hobby, but he did not and does not follow the rules for the home-occupied business license. He was supposed to have a second septic system per environmental health conditions. He does not. A home-occupied business license allows two employees. He has over 10. He makes over $500 to $1 million a year on this winery. He's not supposed to have any more than one commercial vehicle at a time. If you guys have seen the videos, you can see the oversized semi-trucks coming out on a 12-foot-wide, single-lane, blind-turn road. No public is supposed to be allowed, but yet he has 250 wine club members that come out 20 to 30 at a time on this single-lane road, and it affects every person that lives on Slade Ridge. They destroyed, have destroyed our property, they have destroyed our road. If he were to follow the 2008 rules that he was supposed to follow, the access to Slade Ridge, he has misled Placer County. He only has half of Slade Ridge that he has access, deeded easement to, the other half he does not. It's untitled, it's undeeded, and it's not recorded. The notification to the property owners, he never did that. None of us knew what he was attempting to do, what he's doing now. If he were to follow any of the 2020 wine regulation rules, he's not to have any onsite wine tasting. He has, like I said, his 250-member wine club, they come out 20 to 30 at a time to pick up their wine. When they do this, they taste the different varieties of wine. Granted, it's not a full tasting room, but he's still doing this, and he's still allowing the pub, the public is still coming out on our road. If he were to have to follow the non-county maintained roads, access to the county road, the private road shall meet all applicable site distance and shall provide access rights. The roadway shall be a minimum of 12 feet wide. Like I said, Slade Ridge is 12 feet wide. 20 feet wide. Slade Ridge is 12 feet wide, it's single-lane, it's blind turns, there are no passing lanes. You have to know where and how to back up and maneuver on Slade Ridge. The hours of operations are supposed to be 10 to 10. He is out there during harvest time from midnight on for 30 hours plus harvesting with these lights blazing, with the harvest machines going, and he's very destructive to the people on Slade Ridge. His ag building that he had permitted is not no longer an ag building. He has electricity to it, he has a full winery production going on, and it's now a commercial winery. It's no longer a hobby, he has taken it full-blown. Scott Pruitt, Pruitt Vineyards, has gone from a hobby in a garage winery to become a full-blown winery production. He has outgrown his home-occupied business license, and he's destroying our road. He has destroyed our road, and he is decimating our quiet, peaceful entitlement to our private properties. Placer County Planning, we have all turned him into the code enforcement. Planning has backpedaled on us for eight weeks. They will not tell us what's going on. He needs to have his business license revoked, and he needs to start over with a new business license and apply the 2020 rules to him. If he does not meet the 2020 rules on Slade Ridge, there is another viable easement, it's called Emerald Pines Road, it has a 20-foot-wide deeded easement and a 30-foot-wide easement. It's no minimal blind turns and can be approved for the camp, for him to have his public come in. He will be putting in a wine tasting room at some point in time, and he won't be telling Placer County. And if this, his license is not revoked, then we'll be right back in here when he does the wine tasting. My husband will be up next. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for seeing us today. What I want to start out with is Slade Ridge...
Sorry, could you state your name for the...
My name is Wallace Tripp, I go by Wally.
Thank you.
I'm a small business owner, I've been welding out of Placer County for 36 years. A lot of the buildings that you go through on a daily, or see on a daily, excuse me. Anyways, I've built a lot of the buildings here. I am the one that just put the new structure up downtown, where the murals are in downtown. I married into the Slade family in 1984. In 1984, Slade Ridge belonged all to the Slades. You might remember Willie Slade, he was a colorful individual here in Placer County. He's my wife's uncle. He left Placer County for the same reason that we're dealing with right now, is individuals from the Bay Area or otherwise come into our small community, run us over, and force us out. Scott Pruitt, right now, is in a lawsuit with me trying to bankrupt us. This is the second lawsuit I've gone through. He's in cahoots with Dr. Garrity. Dr. Garrity had moved into my wife's homestead. He has refused to adapt to our community, he has run us over, he has sued us over our speed bumps, in which he lost. Now he has teamed up with Mr. Pruitt, they are now going against us for our speed bumps again. They are trying to open our road up to a winery that Mr. Pruitt snuck in. He had no notification to any parcels to what he has attended. He has the public coming out, he has told me to get out of his way so that he could get his public in. He has oversized trucks coming in that are running our road. If you've seen, I hope you've had time to go over what we've presented to you, you can see the traffic jams that are in play, you can see that there is no room for this to happen. Now, he's not to have any employees other than two at the maximum. If you look at the information that we supply to you, he has over 10. He has over 10 employees working for him. We have to deal with these employees speeding through our properties. He's had wine club members with their fancy cars use our property as a drag strip, leaving rubber behind on our property to impress Mr. Pruitt. Now, we've had enough. He is going to bankrupt us, and it's for no reason, for a glass of wine. Now, he has not paid a dime, $400 on our road in 20 years. Mr. Garrity has paid $235. The other parcel has paid $35 on our road. There's another way out, he needs to utilize his money for that way out, and the county needs to have public works come out, drive our road, and tell us how fast they think the public can drive on our 5 mile an hour road. I have with us over 12 of our neighbors here. We're gonna go in line, Leslie Calabresi's gonna be next, she has two little ones. She has a right to be on the road or her children. We not getting out of the way for this commercial winery.
Mr. Chair. Wally, can I?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
I've been out on...
Slade Ridge.
Well, I was out there, I was afraid to go all the way down, because it was too narrow, and I didn't know how I was gonna get back, but I was out there this weekend. So where were the speed bumps? Were they on Slade Ridge?
Speed bumps are on Sylvia Slade's property, one. Excuse me, two. Ms. Powers's property, one. Mine, three. Mrs. Calabresi's, one.
So those are all private roads?
It's all private.
Okay.
They have an ingress, egress, and utility easement only. They have no rights to the road. They have merely a right to go in and out. And now he's trying to take our road over and sue us out of our own road. I won't stand for it, and neither will our neighbors.
All right, Mr. Chair, I just want to let you know that I, my staff is working, looking into this, so we hear what your concerns are.
Thanks.
Hi, Jerry.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address something not on the agenda?
Hello. My name is Leslie Calabresi, and my husband, James, and I live on Slade Ridge. And I've come here today because I want to express my deep, you know, deep concern for what's going on. I have concern for, you know, all the things that have already been said, but to go beyond that, my specific concern is for my children. You know, my husband and I moved to Slade Ridge in 2014, and we had looked for over five years for a home, and when we found this place, you know, it wasn't the home that was the selling point, it was, you know, the secluded, quiet, you know, one-lane little road, and that sold us, you know, that we knew we would have a quiet, lovely place to live. And the fact that there was only like four houses past us on the road, so we knew that there wouldn't be traffic, or, you know, our children would have free rein to kind of live their life, and so... So it's very disturbing to think that someone wants to put in a, or continue what he's doing with putting in a vineyard or a winery and a tasting room. You know, my, I just imagine that pretty soon, there's gonna be hundreds of people coming down, you know, on weekends, or, you know, and then drinking all afternoon there, and then driving back down the road, you know? And my children like to ride their bikes, drive their little, you know, battery-operated cars, you know, up the driveway, through our gate, across the road. You know, we have a little vineyard across Slade Ridge, and they like to go up there and eat the grapes and play, and they also like to go up the road to the Tripp's house, you know? And they like to go visit them. And I just have, you know, this fear of all these people speeding up and down my road, some of them intoxicated, you know, and something happening to my children. And I don't want to have to tell them, oh, you can't go up there anymore, you know, we gotta close the gate, we gotta be, you know, secluded here now, you know? And it's just, it's very, weighing very heavily on my mind. And so that is my big concern, and I hope that, you know, I imagine you would all feel the same, right? If you had a neighbor down your street inviting hundreds of people up your road, you know? And I'm sure they won't abide by the 5 mile an hour, you know? Most people will probably go 20, 25, you know, at the least. So just wanted to tell you my concern and hope you can relate to all of our feelings in opposition to this. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who'd like to address something not on the agenda?
Hello, my name is Holly Tripp. I'm Wally, Indiana's daughter. I'm also a construction inspector for Placer County Water Agency. And I put together the large part of the complaint that went to the planning commission to take a look at this vineyard again. Even Placer County Water Agency has to abide by the zoning ordinances, encroachment permits when we're designing a project, and it really baffles me that even in 2008, we would, Placer County would have signed off on a winery on this 12-lane road, 12-foot-wide road. Specifically, I would like you guys to look at one part of the 2020 code that we know Pruitt Vineyards is in clear violation for, and that reads that if a farm brewery is accessed by a private road, the applicant shall provide proof of access rights in the form of a recorded easement or other applicable legal document as determined by the county, and an affirmative written statement of legal rights to access and use said road for the purposes of requested facility. We know that he doesn't. He, the tenants on, the residents on Slade Ridge have ingress and egress, period. And I was the little kid that didn't get to ride my bike on the street because of the first lawsuit. My life was significantly impacted from the first time we got sued for the removal of speed bumps. It's a 12-foot-wide road with blind corners. If you do not drive that road regularly, you don't know where to pull off, and it causes traffic jams. I would get fired from my job as a construction inspector if I put the public down a 12-foot-wide road without flaggers on blind corners. I'm working on Powerhouse Road right now. It's not okay. It's a safety issue. It's financially devastating. I won't get into the details, but my parents have worked on our homestead for my entire life. I was born and raised in Auburn, I was, my entire life was spent on this property, and it scares the crap out of me to not be able to have my kids have access to that road because we're yielding to somebody's commercial operation that isn't even legal. It shouldn't be allowed. So that's my two cents. We have quite a few other people who want to say something, but I just want to stand here as a future mother, sixth generation, and say, can we take another look at this? Because this doesn't seem right, guys. It just doesn't seem right. Thank you.
Are there more people here today who want to address this item? Could you raise your hands? You know, I'll take one more on this item, what's gonna happen, as Supervisor Holmes is gonna get out there and dig into it, and if there's something that needs to come back to the board, we'll do that. But we have a policy in order, we have a very long meeting today, and in order to keep us reasonably on track, we'll take, I'll take one more item, comment, public testimony, and then we will defer our remaining public comment as our last item, as per board policy. So if one more of you want to come up and address this item, fine, keeping in mind that... Sure. Yeah, and you can all submit comments to us in writing, or give us a call if you want to set the meeting, although I would recommend that it's preliminary to do that. Do we have a lot of people online?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks. Go ahead.
Good morning. I just found out about this...
Could you state your name?
Well, my name is Dr. Dennis Levin.
Thank you.
I've been living at 2611 Slade Ridge since 19, actually moved there in 2007, bought the property in 87. I also have an affidavit for my wife. First of all, that even the road on Andreg Road is untenable to have access for a public winery. You don't have enough space. You barely get two vehicles, and they go at the maximum of 5 miles per hour. That's Andreg Road. We are the first property owners on Slade Ridge. When I purchased the property, I was responsible for all the trees on both sides of Slade Ridge. It so happened, I didn't know, but a lot of the vehicles, or the high trucks, are touching the top limbs of some of my trees, which then created problems with my trees that would then have to be cut down, and I'm responsible for the... that would then have to be cut down, and I'm responsible for that. Not only is Slade Ridge very narrow, it's also ravine. I'm also responsible for picking up people's refuse. People's throwing out bottles, cans, and why not. And if you have inevitably people coming from wine tasting who don't really care and accessing that road, I'm responsible. And if there's an accident and people fall in the ravine, falls on my property. So this whole thing is absurd. It should never have been discussed within the first place. And I'm saying this from an emotional point of view, but I just don't think it's right that you haven't even had this discussed. All things to moot point, Andreg Road's not really safe for two vehicles going at it, even the speed of twenty miles per hour both ways. Not only Slade Ridge.
Thank you. Fair comment. Okay, now the board will move on to board member and executive officers' reports. Cindy.
I just wanted to make sure that we're clear with the public. We appreciate you coming today, and we can't take action today, but as Supervisor Holmes and happy to help as well, look into this issue and respond. So thank you for being here and taking time.
Thank you. Did you need any further information? Please.
I wanted to report to the board. As part of my duties, I also serve on the Tahoe Transportation District Board and TRPA Governing Board. And we're gonna be adopting the regional transportation plan for TRPA's next eight years and beyond with a lot of strategies on how do we fund the transportation solutions we need as we see the impacts growing in the area around and similar to these folks in infrastructure that doesn't support the level of visitation we're seeing. And with that, the largest issue I wanted to bring to the board's attentions, we're continuing to try to understand what our infrastructure needs are as well as potential funding mechanisms. And the RTP does show that we need to raise about twenty million a year in regional funding from the various five jurisdictions in and around the basin. So there's a lot of ideas about how to do that, one being some sort of entry fee into the region. It's going to be controversial, whatever we do, to try to raise twenty million dollars a year to operate the sort of system we need. But I wanted to just give you a heads up. That's coming. You'll be hearing about it in the future, but we continue to work on it. And I see it's in our strategic objectives to consider how we raise the money necessary, but looking at self-funding that in some mechanism up there.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other board members? Todd, do you have anything?
I do not have anything.
Thank you, Todd. So now we'll move on to our nine fifteen timed item, which is a resolution, commendation for Mark Wrightout, who recently retired. So Ken, are you gonna kick this off, and then I'll read the resolution as per our strategy last time?
Great. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Ken Grimble, Department of Public Works. Today, we're here recognizing Mark Wrightout, Deputy Director of Public Works, who recently retired for over twenty-seven years of service to the people of this county. That's both in the Department of Facilities as well as the Department of Public Works. Trained as an architect, went to Cal Poly, came here as an architect, but in 2000, he was promoted to be our property manager for all county properties. He's been involved in every significant, in the past twenty years, every significant lease or property acquisition we've done in this county. That includes the Placer Legacy acquisitions and improves all the parks, most notably Hidden Falls Regional Park, but everything that involved acquiring or getting property dealt with. But probably a highlight, at least I believe, of when I reflect back with my time with Mark, is really his work at the Placer County Fairgrounds. Fairgrounds is going through a time of financial distress. I don't think that would be an exaggeration. Your board led to some studies. Your board directed a Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee be formed of community members. Through that group, the ideas generated came a partnership with Placer Valley Tourism, a private, public-private partnership that led to a thirty-million-dollar investment in the fairgrounds, to a state-of-the-art, huge event center down there, and a total revitalization of the entire fairgrounds, the old buildings as well as the old grounds. He has an intention for detail that's probably work was to the benefit of the county to address all these integral or these very complicated agreements that were required over time. But I think when we think about Mark, it's really about his faithfulness. His faithfulness to his projects, to the people of this county, he's always looking for what's best for the county. So I hope you join me in congratulating him on a well-deserved retirement and nothing but the best in his future endeavors.
Thank you, Ken. So now, Mark, I'm gonna read this thing, and then you can get up and rebut it or argue with us or whatever you...
Can I have four minutes today?
Three and a half. In the matter of a commendation, recognizing Mark Wrightout for more than twenty-seven years of service at Placer County. Whereas Mark Wrightout began his employment with Placer County in 1993 as an architect in the Capital Improvements Division of the Department of Facility Services. He is retiring after serving the citizens of the county for more than twenty-seven years. Whereas Mark was promoted to the position of property manager in 2000, to deputy director of Facility Services 2010, director of Public Works in 2018. Whereas in Mark's various roles, he oversaw the property management, parks, museums, transit, and accounting divisions, providing critical leadership and project management in the acquisition and development of important public amenities, including Hidden Falls Regional Park and the revitalization of the Placer County Fairgrounds. Whereas Mark is admired by his staff for his long-term faithfulness and positivity, he is dedicated to quality and thoroughness in every project in which he contributes and has a wealth of knowledge and history that has worked hard to pass on to those who will follow in his footsteps. Whereas Mark was not only dedicated to his formal duties but loved to bring a flair of art, beauty, and levity to his workplace around him, Mark's professional quality photography adorned hallways from his office building to the board of supervisors' chambers. The stress of work-life seemed to lighten up whenever Mark walked down the hall in his trademark flashy colorful socks that occasionally even matched. Whereas in addition to independently bringing countless individual projects to completion, it was Mark who developed many of the processes and systems that stand behind the success of initiatives such as Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program. As we bid farewell to Mark, may we know for certain that he leaves a legacy of programs, projects, relationships that will serve the citizens and staff of Placer County for decades to come. Whereas Mark's retirement is sure to be filled with precious time spent with his wife, Gail, and their daughter, Cape. Mark will now have time dedicated to his renowned service in photography, culinary arts, wine-making, and along with vacation adventures in their Airstream Camper. And then therefore, now let it be resolved, the commendation was duly passed, not quite yet, but soon, we hope. So with that, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, Gustafson. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously, Mark. So you now can come up and address the boards, and then we can take another picture, and I'll give my colleagues a chance to comment also.
Excellent. Appreciate it, everybody. So yeah, I will talk fast, but I am tremendously grateful for my career at Placer, serving our citizens and employees. I've seen lots of positives change since my first day, January 4th, 1993, when my desk was co-opted by parks, processing hundreds of in-person reservations for the Bear River Campground. That time was also memorable because within three weeks, Gail and I married and bought our first home. And thanks for your unwavering support in all my endeavors. I learned so much from all of you. It's such a wonderful and supportive organization. And at the beginning, I quickly made friends with all the carpenters and plumbers in building maintenance who taught a young architect the practicalities of construction. As we worked with HHS, the DA in Economic Development, to modify old wood buildings for their needs, interesting puzzles arose, like the floor sloped in Building 15A under the rolling files and the files rolled by themselves. I always enjoyed working closely with employees to redesign their workstation, such positive, friendly experiences, and the supportive relationships that continue across a career, like before 2000, working with Will Garner to design the Tark facility at Cabin Creek, and then twenty years later, working with Will and DPW on Transit. Outstanding leadership from all of you folks, and Larry Otto, Dave Babbitts, and Tom Miller, who as directors of facilities, supported my growth and the opportunity to work in property management with Mary Dietrich. I learned so much from her as we negotiated the first Kirby Hills lease and all the transactions associated with Hidden Falls. And learning the attention to detail and the analysis, I'm a much better writer because of her. And as the property manager, I was truly fortunate to contribute to some of the county's visionary initiatives. You folks mentioned Placer Legacy, also Tahoe Beaches, these really bedrock values and initiatives of the county. And working alongside Lori Morris and Rob Sandman, Lauren Clark and Joel Swift, all these folks around me that supported and brought our common goals to fruition. Grateful to Jim Durfee, who entrusted Parks and Museums to me as a new deputy director, because that responsibility really caused me to step back and realize and appreciate our ability to enrich the lives of our citizenry. It was such fun to work with Ralph Gibson and his team relocating the Gold Rush Museum, John Ramirez, Andy Fisher, and Lisa Carnahan on all the parks projects, the big ones like Hidden Falls, the Martis Trail, the Immigrant Trail, but all the little parks in between. And with that experience in the fairgrounds, I could retire fully satisfied with my career that I'd contributed to our citizenry. And I could go on and on about the fairgrounds over the last eight years. It had an uncertain path, as you guys said. The vision and stalwart support of your and prior boards sustained exploration of wide-ranging alternatives. We talked about closing the fairgrounds. We talked about relocating it. But through conversations with that Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee, I learned a lot about the annual fair and how critical it is to support the positive values it teaches our youth through 4H and FFA. And I owe incredible debt of gratitude to David Adaway for the vision that PVT could revitalize the facility, which oddly brought me back to the point of beginning, collaborating with architects, builders, Jack Patton Coastal Partners, Robland, on this fabulous facility. And with its grand opening last year, the Hidden Falls underway, I could retire truly satisfied, ready for the next chapter, five acres on Millertown Road, travel, photography, spending more time with our family. And in closing, I need to thank Ken Grim for his calm counsel and teaching me advice on solution-based negotiation, supporting me through all of our initiatives. And finally, heartfelt thanks to the prior board and each of you individually. I really do mean that. The CEO's staff, staff of county council, and all the other departments, really working as a team. It's like a family, really. And as I was preparing this, I recall, as I'll tell young staff preparing for their first presentation here, just relax, look around, and realize you're surrounded by friends. I look forward to seeing you in the community, maybe out working on trail volunteering at Hidden Falls, or if you're in the neighborhood, please stop by.
Thank you, Mark. I'll open it up to my colleagues. Jim.
Did you say Jim?
I did say Jim. Jim, Supervisor Jim Holmes.
Ah, there you go. Mark, the legacy you've set here is unbelievably strong over the years, all the things that you've accomplished with the help of staff that you've recognized. The one thing that stands out for me, and always will, is what you did for the Placer County Fairgrounds. Some time ago, right after, I think right after I took office here, a former supervisor and I went down and cured the facility. And it was, I'll be gracious, it was in sad shape, as I think my friend, or our friend, Lee Bastian, will agree, was really in sad shape. We were talking about bulldozers at that time, but we saw your vision and working with everybody involved to see what it is today. It's really, really a great accomplishment. And I just want to thank you for that. And I know that in the future, you're going to be a stalwart person that will preserve the rural character of Ofer on Millertown Road and Ayers-Holmes Road. So it's very important to me that you have that, that we have that connection. So congratulations, and Gail, thank you for your support. Thank you so much for what you've done for us.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Lanny.
Thank you. Mark, I just have to say, wow, all the work that you've done and projects you've worked on the last twenty-seven years. And I've known you as the guy to go to for the fairgrounds and all the challenges that sort of I inherited, the good stuff and some of the challenges with the fairgrounds the last couple of years. But I just really appreciate your hard work, your responsiveness, and I just wish you all the best. I've enjoyed working with you. Nice to see you clean-shaven again. Last time I saw you, you shockingly looked different as a result of the last year. But thank you so much for just your hard work, and it's obvious you've had an impact on our community, and it is really appreciated.
Oh, thank you.
Cindy.
Hey, Mark. So I did everything they've said. You're just such an outstanding example of dedication to our community members and the great passion you brought to your job. And I learned a lot about you most recently, since I've been in this seat, with the photography and the incredible efforts you've made in our parks and facilities. I got to work with Mark many years ago, peer-to-peer, and I can tell you, he represented the county's interests so well on the Commons Beach and on the fire station. We didn't get that project finished yet, but exciting things happening there, too. So thank you so much, and best wishes. And Gail, thank you for sharing them, and thank you from the citizens of Placer County for all you've done.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Suzanne.
I just want to offer you my congratulations on what sounds to be a great job, since I wasn't here to participate and get to know you and your wife, but also send you my best wishes in all your future endeavors and in your retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just finish up with, I mean, everybody well articulated your great accomplishments. So personally, I have to thank you for all of the legacy transactional work that we did. Karen can attest to the fact, from a real estate perspective, all of them are weird and different and challenging. So personally, thanks for that. But the fairgrounds is a comment by way of your positive attitude and calm demeanor. My recollection is, over the years, the board, five of us, different reasons, wanted to hold on and help the fair as much as possible, but it really wasn't our thing to worry about. So we'd lend some money to the fair board and kind of keep things alive. And then we appointed a committee, and people like Lee sat on all of that and advised you. And I remember Ken, I think, making the round, saying, "How serious is the board about all this?" And it was sort of like amongst all of us, "Well, we don't know what to do with it. We don't want to let go. We can't participate in seeing it not stay around." And you come in with this unbelievable accomplishment, this great private-public partnership with that calm demeanor, and I'm about falling out of my chair three or four times. I'm, "What?" So again, thanks for all of your accomplishments, but the attitude that you took forward. And already, Mark is contributing, volunteering, Gail and here out on Hidden Falls Park. So again, thanks for a great career and all of the work that you did and the dedication and achievements you had on behalf of the county.
Excellent.
I think it's just here this morning.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a great morning.
Mark, before you leave, we have somebody who called in. So public comment regarding this commendation.
Kirk, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Mark, I couldn't let this go without offering just a deep sincere thank you for your commitment over the years. You served the Granite Bay community and District Four extremely well with the way that you engaged on Feist Park and helped us build the field out of Franklin, and the management of the multiple community services districts along Douglas Boulevard and the way that you were able to help bring people together there. But clearly, as has been alluded by my former colleagues, the crown jewel in your career clearly is the Placer County Fairgrounds, the way that you engaged after we had the RCS report and recommendations of, as Supervisor Holmes alluded, recommendations of everything from tear the damn thing down to, I don't know, set fire to it. You came in, worked with Greg Hagwar and Dave Henry, and helped the fair committee, the fair association committee understand that there could be life after the fair association. And you dared tread where very few did. And the results of your hard work there will remain for generations and will be a blessing to Placer County for generations. So I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kirk.
Thanks, Kirk. Anyone else? Now you're free to go, Mark. Thanks, Gail. We'll now take up our 9:25 timed item, which is a continuation from March 30th, I think, dispute resolution services contract. And Todd.
Yeah, I'll speak on this one. So just for a brief background, back on March 30th, your board heard a presentation and a recommendation for a contract for Placer dispute resolution services to provide those services to the county. Based on public comment and testimony that was made subsequent to that presentation, there is a decision to delay as a request from County Council to a date certain time of today. Obviously, there's been a great deal of discussion, and we continue to have that. And so my request of you today is to continue this off calendar and provide staff and County Council to come up with a solution that's adequate. I just don't think we have something to present today for you. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions by board members? Anyone from the public? No. So the request is to continue this?
That would be, that would be the recommendation.
And do we need a date certain?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you. So we do the motion.
I'll second.
Motion, Holmes, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Todd. Next, we have our health and safety element update, Angel Green.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Well, good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Angel Green. I am a senior planner with the Planning Services Division. I'll be providing an update on the health and safety element work that we're doing. With me today on the phone, I have Eli Crispy. He is with Placeworks, our consultant team who is helping us with this effort. And shall there be any technical questions that I'm not able to answer, I may chime in to answer those. All right. So the purpose of the update today is to bring your board, to share with you the work that we've done to update the health and safety element. We'll take a look at the regulatory requirements that we need to address. I'd like to share with you some of the feedback that we've received from stakeholders, and then the steps moving forward to complete this effort. So the health and safety element is one of seven mandated elements in the general plan. It outlines and addresses a number of health and safety concerns in Placer County and provides us with goals and policies to help protect the community. The state does require that all cities and counties prepare safety elements as part of their general plan, and to include goals and policies to help protect our residents. We are required to address a number of natural and human-caused disasters and threats, and to lay out the goals and policies to help protect against those. We have this opportunity to also bring together existing documents and programs that can help to mitigate some of these hazards, such as the local hazard mitigation plan, the Placer County Sustainability Plan, among others. So it's our hope that with this update, we can bring those documents together and to incorporate a number of revisions and modifications that have been made recently. Last, I'll mention that this effort, the state does require the Board of Forestry and Cal Fire to review all amended and updated safety elements. And so we are working closely with Cal Fire on that review, and we'll be sure to address all of their comments and concerns. So the 2013 Health and Safety Element currently identifies and addresses the following hazards. We have seismic and geologic hazards, flooding, fire. We have airport hazards, as well as emergency management and public safety. We have hazardous materials, as well as avalanches in public health. The revisions that we're making to the Health and Safety Element update will address recent state regulations that now require health and safety elements to also address climate adaptation and resiliency. And so with this update, we will be including new hazard sections, such as drought, extreme heat, severe weather, agriculture, and forestry paths. And with this update, we'll also be including evacuation planning. So I'd like to first just cover a few of the regulatory requirements that we'll need to address with this update. Those that are related to flood hazards require that we provide in this update updated flood mapping, as well as identifying responsible agencies for the protection against these hazards and to ensure continued coordination. Also, to develop policies to minimize the risk for new buildings and essential facilities. For those related to fire hazards, we will be including updated fire mapping, as well as showing those areas that fall within the state responsibility areas in the high fire severity zone mapped areas. We're looking at incorporating new policies to minimize the risk for new buildings and essential facilities. We also have new requirements that require the county to identify residential development projects that are located in high hazard-prone areas that are lacking a secondary emergency access point. For those related to climate adaptation and resiliency, the state now requires that all cities and counties prepare vulnerability assessments to show the risks from climate change impacts, also to develop adaptation and resiliency goals, policies, and objectives to protect the community, to implement strategies to increase community adaptation and building resiliency. And we're required to incorporate those goals and policies into the general plan by January of 2022. Now, as your board may recall, in January of 2020, the board adopted the Placer County Sustainability Plan. And as part of that effort, we had a technical study that we had completed, that was the vulnerability assessment that was included within that plan. And it analyzed the climate hazards occurring and likely to occur in Placer County over future years. We've looked at a number of populations and sensitive groups that may be impacted. And so we've completed that effort, and we've got a number of goals and policies that were outlined in that sustainability plan that we're incorporating into this safety element. So I wanted to provide just a quick summary of the total goals and policies that we are recommending. I have this broken down by hazard section. So we have a total of 19 goals in the safety element. We have 114 policies and 82 implementation programs. And this table here just helps to demonstrate, to show total number of goals, policies, and programs for each of the hazard sections, and how many new goals, policies, and programs that we are bringing forward. Climate adaptation, as you can see, the last hazard section listed there, that is a new section. And so with that, we have five new goals, 26 new policies, and 28 new programs. So I'd like to take a moment to address the feedback that we've received from our key stakeholders. I'll then go into some examples of new policies and programs to address state regulations. But starting first with the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and the Airport Land Use Commission. So all general plan amendments require an Airport Land Use Commission consistency determination. And so we started working with PCTPA staff early in the process to look at what it would take for the county to achieve that consistency determination for not only the safety element, but the general plan itself. So based on the feedback that we received from PCTPA staff, we're looking at making the following modifications. For the general plan, Section 8, which is the health and safety element, we're looking at adding some new background information to discuss the state law requirements around the Airport Land Use Commission, and the need to incorporate that information into the safety element, looking at barriers and review processes when we're looking at new development projects in airport overflight zones. So we've got a few revisions. We've got that new information that I just shared. We've got a new and revised goals and policies. So we've got an update two, goal 8D, policies 8D 1 through 3, with a few minor modifications, implementation program 8D 1, as well as some new policy and programs. Additional revisions will include, for the introduction section, we will be incorporating, or rather reflecting, the current ALUCP. So we've got some dates that we'll need to revise. For the transportation and circulation element, we'll need to make minor text changes to include all applicable airports. For Section 4, we are adding additional notes in reference to the airport overflight combining district and compatibility buffers. And last, I'll mention, we're looking also at adding additional revisions to the Placer County zoning ordinance. And those text amendments would include adding, again, applicable airports, the aircraft overflight combining district, and then we've got some additional texts that we'll be recommending for Section 4, other regulations for consistency with the general plan goals and policies. All of these revisions are contained in the track change document in an attachment to your staff report. So I'd like to invite you, if you've not already had a chance to look at those track changes, you'll be able to get some additional information there. All right. So moving on to our second key stakeholder, Cal Fire. As I mentioned earlier, the state does require the Board of Forestry to review all amendments to safety elements. And so we also reached out to Cal Fire very early in the process. Cal Fire, through their review, they provide an early assessment based on the county's existing safety element. And a copy of that report is also provided in the staff report. But essentially, we're looking at revisions necessary to address Senate Bill 99. Senate Bill 99 requires that the county identify residential developments in any hazard zone that are lacking emergency evacuation routes. And so we're providing a figure that identifies those properties. We also have Assembly Bill 747, which requires the county to identify evacuation routes and their capacity, safety, viability under a range of emergency scenarios. So what we're proposing with this update is to include a new section called Constraints, which outlines all of those factors that we might see that we might want to weigh into our analysis. And then we also have additional revisions to policies necessary to comply with AB 747. Some additional feedback that we received addressing Assembly Bill 2140. We are including, as recommended by Cal Fire, to comply with this requirement, mention of the, or incorporation, rather, of the multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan. We do have a requirement to actually provide a link within the document, so if someone is reviewing the documents online, they can access these other documents. We're also including new implementation programs to be able to identify the necessary updates to the local hazard mitigation plan. This is something the county has been doing for a long time already, but Cal Fire, and specifically related to Assembly Bill 2140, the state's looking for specific criteria in detail as to when these plans will be updated. So we'll be sure to include what the county is already doing into the safety element. For goals, policies, and objectives, and feasible implementation measures, we've made a number of revisions. And so just real briefly, a number of those revisions are addressing avoiding or minimizing the wildfire hazards associated with new uses of land, developing adequate infrastructure if a new development project is located in a state responsibility area or a very high fire hazard zone. And I've got an example that I'd like to share with you, excuse me. And last, working cooperatively with public agencies responsible for fire protection. And I've got a list here of a number of strategies, but I'm sure as you have seen in the track change document, there's a number of revisions that we are proposing based on the feedback from Cal Fire. So here are just a few examples that I wanted to provide your board for some discussion. So one in particular, addressing climate adaptation policy 8I2. The county shall implement the goals, strategies, and actions contained within the Placer County Sustainability Plan to create a more resilient community and local economy that can adapt to the hazards created or exacerbated by climate change. And this is just one example of many programs and strategies to increase resiliency and to tackle those climate change impacts that we're seeing in Placer County. Second, I wanted to provide the board with this recommendation that was actually made by staff to address fire hazards and new development in high fire severity zones. So if I may just read here, for parcel maps and tentative subdivision maps located in high or very high fire hazard severity zones, the county shall require the undergrounding of new electric utilities. For all projects located in moderate fire hazard severity zones or non-residential projects in high or very high fire hazard severity zones, the county shall require all feasible fire preventative measures during environmental review. And last, all projects shall conform to the utility requirements specified in the applicable community and specific plans, as well as all applicable design standards and guidelines. And here, the goal is to identify feasible mitigation strategies for various project types of different sizes, and to look for ways to help mitigate for fire hazards. All right. So next steps in the process. So the health and safety element was out for a 30-day public review period, which closed on March 27th. We really did not receive much comment from the public. You know, as I had shared, we had gone through the process during the Placer County Sustainability Plan, where we had about a two-and-a-half-year public review process, and did receive extensive comment and recommendations from the community at that time. And essentially, we've incorporated many of those recommendations into the adaptation strategies, which now today, we're incorporating those into the safety element. We did receive additional feedback from the Department of Water Resources, so we're working with them to, you know, take a closer look at the flood boundaries and information that we're providing. We did have the Planning Commission workshop, March 11th, just a few weeks ago, with the Planning Commission. We did not receive any public comment at that workshop. Planning Commission felt that the health and safety element was, contained some good information. They really didn't have a lot of feedback for us. I did have an opportunity to chat with Commissioner Woodward prior to the meeting, and he had a few recommendations, just some clarification that we might be able to make to a few of the policies. So we're happy to address those. And we're here today with your board, providing this information, so we're looking forward to receiving your feedback and any comment that we might get from the public. As I mentioned, we have Cal Fire in their review. They do have a 90-day review period, and we expect that to close at the end of May. I would expect that when we do receive comment, we will look at the recommendations that have been proposed or suggested by Cal Fire. We will be sitting down with our OES staff and interested fire districts and those sorts that would like to come to the table to further discuss, to make sure that we're fully addressing Senate Bill 99 and Assembly Bill 747. We will make those necessary revisions. We are in the process, working with our consultants, to complete the environmental document. And we expect to receive the ALUCP consistency determination by the end of May. So with that, with the feedback that we receive, we'll make the necessary revisions. We are planning to... We are planning to prepare those revisions and have to the Planning Commission by midsummer the draft and proposed health and safety element update for their recommendation to your board by late summer. And I think that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Angel. Great, great presentation. Are there any questions by board members at this point? This will be a public hearing, so we'll bring them back to us later, but Jim?
Thank you, Angel. Thanks for bringing this forward. Thank you for meeting with me and giving me an update about what's going on. I appreciate all the hard work that's in this, and a lot of it just makes good common sense about what we need to do. I appreciate on the effort with the Airport Land Use Commission and the airport overflight zones I have to have a hard look at. But particularly, the wildfire and CAL FIRE issues, I've said time and time again that those of us who have land use authority really need to be aware of what we're doing in high-fire zones or areas that have that potential. And we see the state legislature is taking note of that and giving us some direction as far as what we need to do. And so this is something that we really have to keep an eye on and take a hard look at at any type of development, make sure that we're consistent with state law. So thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. So I did my best to read through this yesterday afternoon. The proposal that you mentioned, the new one, proposed policy eight C 19, and I was trying to look through this. So this proposal about having utilities underground in high-risk fire areas, is that a state proposal? I mean, is that, that's our own personal county proposal?
Yes.
Which then would mean we would have to change our local planning guidelines, ordinances, et cetera, correct?
Well, I don't know that this one, well, there is some discretion here, depending on the project type, the size of the project, and so I'm not sure.
So that's what's important, because I see that it's like, we shall require this, and there might be a project where, first of all, we've got projects that are already underway, so this is not going to be retroactive, correct? And I certainly want to make sure that we prevent fires, right? But there might be opportunities where if you have plenty of defensible space around an electrical utility, you may not need to put stuff underground. So I just want to see what the, because here it says "shall," and I just want to make sure we're doing this in a way that there's some flexibility if need be. So, and I don't know how this affects, like, future planning documents and requirements with the county. If you could clarify that, or if staff could clarify that, that would be helpful.
Sure. So staff, in drafting this strategy, we wanted to think very carefully as to the type of projects. It could certainly be cost prohibitive for some projects, depending on the size and the type, whether they'd be able to underground these types of facilities. So the thought was to incorporate some flexibility, taking into consideration some of that feasibility. The, I am not sure what other documents we'll need to revise to be sure that this is incorporated, but we can look at some additional, whether we're looking at zoning text amendments that would be required. I've not gone to that extent to see what those types of revisions would need to be. Happy to do that. The, and the goal here, I know, is that during environmental review, we'd want to be able to make a determination as to whether, the level of mitigation that we were asking for, if, again, if it's going to be feasible and if it makes sense for the project, but also allowing that opportunity to look specifically at the landscape, look at the proposal, and to also allow for other types of mitigation strategies that might make more sense for the project.
Thank you. So I don't know if that word "shall" is written in this document, but we might want to look at how that's written in a way that allows flexibility if need be.
Right, and that was, that was my, my same question was on this clause, because, you know, there's a difference between splitting one parcel and doing a whole new subdivision. And so making sure that I, you know, that we're not triggering on one individual when it's not going to make a big difference in a wildfire if their neighbor still has above-ground utilities. On a whole new subdivision, I understand and support that concept, but I'm just worried about those small projects and saying "shall" for an all-new electrical utility. So that's where I'm confused, and what kind of cost that is versus upgrading the existing utilities and making them, I mean, a lot of the problems we've had with wildfire are very old infrastructure. So is it better to upgrade the above-ground and mitigate it that way versus going underground for one parcel? So, any thoughts on that, or size of project?
I think that, yeah, we definitely do want some flexibility, because we do understand that there could be certain projects, especially on the smaller scale, for a parcel map, for example, if we're just looking at a two-lot subdivision, that might be very cost prohibitive for that particular size of project. So we would like to have some flexibility here. We could certainly look at modifying the "shall" to consider, we can look at some more flexible language that will allow us to take into account, again, those project types and the existing landscape that's out there.
Well, I certainly would support having some level of flexibility for the smaller projects, that, you know, we can still get mitigations that improve our fire safety without overburdening one particular parcel, especially when we have such a shortage on housing, we're trying to support more affordable housing, and then we start triggering these sorts of things that create us the inability to create more housing. Thank you.
All right.
Suzanne?
Yes, hi, how are you, Angel?
Supervisor Jones, yes.
My question's regarding slide number six and slide number 10. Both of them refer to identifying residential developments in any hazard area identified that would, that do not have at least two emergency evacuation routes, as required by the California Government Code. So my question is, so once you identify them, what, what will be done about that? I mean...
So the first step was to identify where those locations are. We've included a number of implementation programs that would allow us to go a step further, to look at how to address those needs in being able to get evacuations out, but also looking at not just residential developments, but other types of developments as well. A B 747 is a new regulation that's not, it is required to be addressed by 2022, but we wanted to take an early step here to address what we could, and that's looking at the And unfortunately, there's not real good guidance by the state at this time. They're really leaving it to the jurisdictions to make a determination as to, you know, once you've identified those areas, to further investigate and look at how we might be able to improve those, those areas. The climate adaptation strategies that we're including can help to alleviate, you know, some of the emergency response that we need to see in place for those areas. Increasing our communication, whether it's through broadband, looking at ways, being able to get the information out to residents during an evacuation or an emergency situation. Those are just a few of the examples that we've included. But I think that the task that we have here is being able to identify those areas in need, look at ways that we can help increase information and resources, and then to assist folks through our other program efforts, such as the Emergency Operations Plan and through the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and to include those types of strategies to help alleviate and reduce some of the risk there.
So if it's a, if it's an area that only has really one evacuation route, the plan would be then to increase your ability to contact people so that the evacuation could begin earlier, sooner, faster? Is that what you're saying?
That could very well be one of the solutions that we could, you know...
There won't be any insistence on the development to develop a secondary evacuation route?
Well, for new development, that's certainly something that we ask the developer to incorporate. And we've got some requirements in place with CAL FIRE that help to address that secondary access point. In fact, we've got a strategy in the Sustainability Plan that speaks to that, to require development projects to provide secondary access.
Okay.
So that's one way we can address new development, but certainly with existing development, I think getting the information, the communication out there, being able to make those links. One of the recommendations that we also have in the Sustainability Plan that I know I've discussed with many of you, is to encourage existing developments in these areas to reach out to the Placer County Fire Alliance Group. We've got, I think it's the second-rated Fire Alliance effort in the nation, and here's an opportunity for the communities to come together, to work with one another, to increase their, the work that they're doing for fire clearance, educating one another to keep each other in the loop as to, you know, what we all could be doing as a community to help reduce our risk. So there's a number of strategies that we have that we're hoping can help assist with these efforts.
Well, I think that in the Paradise Fire, wasn't it communication was one of the problematic issues they had with reaching out to people and communicating? So is that something that we think lessons learned, that we'll be able to do a better job of those types of things?
Absolutely. And I'm hoping that with, you know, expanding the broadband, looking at areas where we can get communication to folks, but also just encouraging the community to work with one another, because we do understand there's a lot of homes out there that don't have internet access. And so looking at our capabilities through the Office of Emergency Services and being able to provide phone calls and text messages to be able to get that information out, I think is going to be critical.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And I just had a follow-up on that, including, because many of those areas also don't have good cell service, so you can text all day, but they may not receive, and when cell towers go out, then you lose issues in those areas as well. The other thing that I know I talked to Chief Estes about was about the shelter-in-place, because there, we have existing subdivisions in areas that are one way in, one way out, and how do we help through the Fire Safe Councils and other groups to work on those shelter-in-place alternatives for those areas? And we did a great one up in Alpine Meadows last year with that project that we approved. So a really good strategy for how to deal with that.
Thanks. So question I have, and/or maybe a request, I think of only because probably I started my irrigation yesterday for our pasture, but I was thinking of droughts and agriculture, so things like pasture, orchards, vineyards, of course, are perennial investments, and if you have horrible drought conditions, you could actually lose those investments in the infrastructure. Things like rice are annual, so they have more flexibility, and a lot of the valley floor is irrigated by groundwater, but a lot of the other is not, and it's usually serviced by Nevada Irrigation District or Placer County Water Agency. So this year, I think, might have been the worst pasture I've ever seen in my life, and it was because September and October, I think, were completely without rainfall. And then November actually turned cold, and we got rain at the end of it. And then through the winter, in my view, it was probably colder than average, but I don't have any data regarding that. And then we didn't get any rain for quite some time now. So people could have started irrigating, and some of the people on wells may have started irrigating much earlier than yesterday. So have we reached out much with our water purveyors in that regard? And, you know, right circumstances, I could certainly envision an emergency, but it might be something we want to think about, at least as we go forward, and kind of at least start having those conversations with those folks.
I can make a note of that. I do know that the county right now is working with, we have the groundwater sustainability plan that's being developed right now, looking at various strategies and mitigation options to address potential drought issues moving forward. But, yeah, I'll have to make a note of that, because I'm not fully aware of any other...
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, we're N I D customers and have been for 50 years, but, so they're usually good about letting people start using the water if they're up and ready early, and this year, a couple of days maybe is only. But I've never seen them extend the season later, so that might be something we want to talk about. But I don't think we have data, in my opinion, to substantiate this yet, but there is, as related, climate change discussions, that perhaps the rainy seasons are getting shorter or later, but those kinds of conversations, I think, would be well worth, worth having, because we could have a series of dry years, fairly dry years, but still have actually plenty of water to deliver, because it's adequate enough to carry us through the next year, and then we wait for the precipitation subsequent. So, thanks, appreciate that. So this is a public hearing, and I will open up the hearing at this time to the public. Is there anyone here in the room who would like to testify before the board? Seeing none, do we have anyone calling in? Please state your name for the record.
Michael, go ahead and unmute your mic.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. Michael Garabedian, Placer County tomorrow. I think we'll focus on the question, the fact that this county, Placer County, has the highest concentration of U E development of any county in the state, and some things we just talked about, about, talked about that would continue that or make, continue to make it worse. We'll focus on the Zoning Administrator Parcel Review Committee and the Development Review Many minor divisions go before that. I've seen many over the years, and they do not even identify in the agenda if they're in what hazard areas they're in. And I've never seen them put a limit on further, further development, most notably on Eagle Ridge, where there's a 25-acre parcel up there with a very view shed and fire dangerous home, that put it in A D U, and it was divided into two parcels, a second five-acre parcel, and so now there's potential for four units up there, four A D U's potential. And the Planning Commission and this board refused to limit further division, which is your, which is your right, create in a place where almost essentially, it should not be any further development on that highly dangerous location. So we really need to, this concern, the concern about lot splits or minor division is actually a serious problem that has to be addressed, especially on ridge tops. There is at least one subdivider who has considered changing their subdivision proposal to make it less hazardous and not interfere with a fuel, shaded fuel break, but the concerns of two supervisors about minor divisions are, sound to me, pretty misplaced. They want, we want to have some flexibility, but there are places where there should be virtually no flexibility, if any, that put people in harm's way. We don't want Placer County to become known as a place where it's dangerous to buy property to build or to buy home here, and that's what we're faced with. So there's some serious concerns here that have to be addressed. I think Supervisor Holmes hit the nail on the head. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment.
No further comments. Are there any additional comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you very much, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angel. Next is our 10 o'clock timed item, which is approval of appointment of two members to the Resource Conservation District. Leah?
Good morning, thank you very much. Leah Rosasca with the Board of Supervisors office. I am here this morning to ask that your board approve the appointment of two of the five applicants that are listed in your staff report to the Placer County Resource Conservation District Board. Both of these seats, seats five and seven, are currently vacant. The applicants are Amber Beckler, Evan Havastad, I hope I said that right, Kathy Johnson, Kristen Lance, and Jeffrey Miller. The Placer County Resource Conservation District is an independent self-governing special district that works in collaboration with local, state, and federal agencies to, and organizations, to implement programs that focus on natural resource conservation, including outreach and educational programs. The R C D also provides technical assistance to private landowners and operators, as well as community nonprofit organizations. Just a note about the information you received in your, your meeting packets and the staff report, on March 16th, our office provided all of you with information on these appointments and an application for each of the applicants. The staff report that was initially put together for this agenda today included a duplicate application for one of the applicants and omitted the application for another. So what the clerk of the board did was to correct that information, resend the corrected staff report to you, and then posted the correct information online. So hopefully, you had ample time to review all of this information. Also, I wanted to let you know the applicants were notified that your board would be considering this item today, and they, and some of them may be in attendance today, either in the room or virtually. And then Sarah Jones, the Executive Director of the Resource Conservation District, is here. is here, as well as the Resource Conservation District Board President Claudia Smith. I am happy to answer any questions you might have of me.
Thanks, Leah.
You're welcome.
I see no questions at this point.
Okay.
So I'll open it up to the public, and we are wanting to provide time for any applicant who is either here or wants to Zoom in to make a presentation if they can. So why don't we start with that?
Okay.
Seeing no questions or comments. And so Megan, can you help us with that?
Amber, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
So this is Ambler Beckler, the first applicant.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Amber Beckler. I live in Granite Bay in South Part of County. I'm interested in serving on the Placer County Resource Conservation District Board, really because of my passion for creating collaborative working agreements to move forward resource conservation and private-public programs that will benefit Placer County. Serving the public and managing these unique resources that we have in Placer County is important. And I also want to leverage my education, training in environmental management and GIS, and I have over 15 years of experience in the business world, to help influence and create these collaborative partnerships between private landowners, the Resource Conservation District, and then county programs such as the PCCP, so we can help engage and incorporate public awareness into some of the programs. Just a couple remarks. I think in a time where it's critical to manage the balance of meeting housing demands, which you spoke about earlier, preserving our ag industry in the business in Placer County, and then balancing those needs with the protection of our unique natural resources, it's important to have broad representation on a county-district board like this. When I attended one of the recent Board meetings, one of the Board members commented that it would be great to have representation from South County. So having a representative that resides in the southern portion of Placer County and who is knowledgeable about natural resources, ag, and the diverse stakeholders across the county, I think would be a great asset to the Board. I will bring value for looking at synergies across our commissions and with nonprofits such as Placer Land Trust, who I'm actively involved with, and also the business community to really help drive efficient ways so that we can, I think, pool resources, such as knowledge, grant funding, to move forward the goals of the Resource Conservation District. So along with the other Board members, Sarah, the Executive Director, who I'd had a chance to talk to, and key staff members, I'd love to be part of continuing to deliver successful programs, such as the chipper and fuel reduction programs, and also looking at other programs on the radar, such as the Dry Creek Watershed Plan and the Auburn Ravine Restoration Project. I think these are really critical for Placer County. So I would love to put my name in, and I'd be honored to serve on the Placer County Resource Conservation District. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Amber.
Evan, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thank you. My name is Evan Havstad. I currently work as the Site Director and Director of Site Operations for United Camps, Conferences, and Retreats, which manages the Jesuit Retreat Center in Applegate. We are very fortunate to be the recipient of a CAL FIRE grant for the diligent work of the Placer RCD. And we'll be having some heavy shaded fuel break work done on our property. So we're very grateful for that. And based on that experience, I'd like to throw my hat in the ring and offer my services towards the Placer RCD. Some of my education background includes a bachelor's degree in physical geography and experience with California State Parks, as well as over five years in managing properties up to and in excess of 1,000 acres throughout the state of California and across the country. So thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more presenters on Zoom.
So if you're in the audience, now's the time to come forward and state your name for the record, and we'll hear from you folks also.
Hi, I'm Kathy Johnson. And so I applied to be on the Board of Directors for the land, or for the RCD. Is, I have had 25 years' experience in the environmental field. I currently work for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And I've conducted numerous investigations on environmental actions. I understand all the environmental laws that are in place, NEPA, SEQA, the ESA, Clean Water Act. And I think my resume kind of speaks for itself. It's pretty thorough. I could stand here for a very long time and tell you all the things that I've done, kind of brag about myself. But I currently sit on the Placer Land Trust, our Community Council. I chair their conservation partnership. It's a pretty new formation of this group, and we're working on bringing together other organizations in the county to work together. And so I think I'd be a pretty good fit, because I'm really good at bringing people to the table, finding common ground. I work on some pretty, in the past, I've worked on some pretty aggressive projects. I work with pesticide companies. My expertise is in pesticides and their faint transport in the environment. And so I've done a lot of work with pesticide companies. So I know how to play nice within an adversarial role and not be overwhelmed or taken back too much by a big group, especially one that's coming at you very aggressively. And I don't know, I just think I'd be a really good fit. And I wasn't really prepared to make a statement. I wasn't even really prepared to be here. But I thank you for the opportunity and any consideration you can give me. Thanks.
Thank you. Suzanne, did you have a question or comment?
No, I'm just, I'm-
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board on this issue? Okay. Suzanne?
Yeah, I would like to give my endorsement for Amber Beckler. You heard her qualifications. I think she's highly qualified. And one of the more important reasons I think it might be important to appoint somebody from District 4 is that currently no one from District 4 serves on this Board. And I think just as we make a complete Board serving each of our districts, I think that would contribute to a more well-rounded representation if we were able to appoint someone from every district. So I would like to nominate Amber Beckler for one of the seats.
So is that a motion that we need-
Motion to appoint Amber Beckler to one of the available seats.
Okay, thanks. Second?
I would prefer to talk about the whole-
The whole first, okay.
The whole group, if we could. And then was there anyone else who wanted to address us? Because I know we had some representatives.
I opened it up with that in-
For other than the applicants.
Oh, okay. Maybe I wasn't-
No? Okay.
Perhaps I wasn't clear enough.
Well, no, I just wanted to double-check that. Well, first off, I think tremendous applicants for such a well-paying job. So, I mean, again, I looked at the applications and I had a really hard time, because everybody was so dedicated and qualified and interested in serving our great county. So I, you know, thanks to all of the applicants. And yeah, there's a couple of, if you look at particular districts or areas that aren't represented, there's a lot of our county that isn't represented in the current seats. But I don't think that's our intent necessarily. I think we're really trying to look at people that want to serve the community with knowledge and expertise and are willing to serve in these times. Because when I look at the Resource Conservation District, it's critical to a lot of the functions we're doing in fire prevention and wildfire. And working collaboratively with various partners is really very important, I think, in this situation. And so I'm really torn, because I think everybody was well-qualified, and I really commend them. And I just want to find more committees for everybody to serve on, when we have to make these hard decisions of people that are dedicated and wanting to serve. I was really impressed as well with, I mean, the folks that presented already. Also, Kristen Lance, she resides in District 2. I thought she had a great variety of background as well, and doing projects in a lot of other areas and bringing that level of knowledge. And it's great to have our local people who've also worked in other environments as well be involved. And I was prepared to nominate two different ones than Amber, just because I was impressed with both Kristen and Kathy Johnson, who's here, and then Kristen Lance. But I'll leave it to the rest of the Board to discuss if you had other thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Bonnie?
Thank you. And I agree with you, very good candidates and qualified. Kathy, I just have to laugh at your comment, and it's very true, right? How do you take adversarial situations and work together? Maybe you ought to run for the Board of Supervisors one day, because that's pretty much what we have to do. But I appreciate that, because, you know, you have to work together to get to consensus to move forward. And so I appreciate, appreciate that. You've got a very strong background. And as far as Kristen Lance, one of the other things that I appreciate is that she's worked for a COG, a Council of Governments, which means that she actually understands the, she's got some habitat background, but also how you work in a government structure, right? Which is, you've got to do things in a certain way. You may not like them, but you have to work within the constraints. But how do you be creative about that? So I think that that provides her some strong background, a variety of background in this area. So I'm, I think either of those two. And I'm also, I thought Evan Havstad, with his, just living near a fuel break and having that experience could be an option as well.
Well, I just wanted to add on to that. I agree with everything you said, Cindy. I think it's very important to appoint people who have the excitement and the energy about representing a Board. And so my concern might be for some of the other candidates that didn't call in, you know, to represent themselves. I think the three candidates who did phone in or appear today to represent themselves goes a little bit farther as to their commitment to want to do this.
Thank you. Jim, then Bonnie?
Yeah, I feel comfortable with Kathy Johnson, with her background, working with adversarial people that we're familiar with. And Kristen Lance, to me, rises to the top as well.
And, you know, I appreciate that, Suzanne. At the same time, I know that prior to me taking this job full-time, I was working at a job that didn't always allow me to call in or even show up. Now we can call in. But, you know, I think that regardless of whether or not somebody can show up, you know, they've all shown an interest in participating in the process. And I think that's as important. You know, unfortunately, we can't all show up in person or make our time available. So I would be happy to make a motion for Kathy Johnson and Kristen Lance to serve on the Placer County Resource Conservation District.
Okay, there's a motion, Gore, second, Holmes. No, just my notice that there was a prior motion that did not get a second, but Suzanne, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I know I'm new, and of course, I'm not sure how this all works, since I did make a motion previously for Amber to represent. I, you know, I just don't know how important this is. The current members are representing Districts 1, 3, and 5. And I think it's great. Kristen Lance would bring District 2 into the mix, but Amber would bring District 4 into the mix. And she is extremely well-qualified, and she's very high up in her organization. And believe me, she made the time today to call in. She's the fourth top in Blue Shield, so she's a very important person. So that, you have to commend somebody for making time. If it's that important, they'll make time.
Can I do apologize because I-
I cut off. So was there a second to the first motion? So I don't think there was. So anyway.
Okay. So seeing no other comments, we'll vote. And could we have a roll call? Megan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes. Motion passes. So we will now take up our 10:10 timed item, which is the Mason Trails Annexation. And Sarah Gilmore.
Good morning.
Good morning. We can, we can hear you, I think.
All right.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, I'm going to lean forward a little bit and make sure you can hear me. So good morning, Chair Wygant and Board members. This is Sarah Gilmore, and I'm here on behalf of Environmental Engineering Division to present the Mason Trails Annexation. As stated in the Board memo, we're requesting that the Board open a public hearing to adopt the resolution which is included in your staff report, to annex the Mason Trails property into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173 Dry Creek. Mason Trails is located north of PFE Road and west of Willerba Road in the Dry Creek area. And the development is consistent with the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan and land use zoning. The mechanism for payment of fees in Zone of Benefit 173 is via reimbursement agreements with the developer and property owners for construction of sewer facilities serving the area. The current reimbursement rate is $2,723 per equivalent dwelling unit, and Mason Trails contains 170 proposed lots. Therefore, Placer County will collect $462,910 from the project and disperse it to the CFD1 property owners, as required by the reimbursement agreement. Staff supports this request, and in order to move forward, we request that the Board open a public hearing and adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex the Mason Trails property into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173 Dry Creek. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, the Board members, at this time? Seeing none? Anyone from the public? Questions or comments?
No public comment.
No public comments. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Motion Gore, second. Gustafson?
Mr. Chair, would you first ask the Clerk of the Board whether any protests were received?
Thank you, Karen.
There were no protests received.
Thank you, Megan. Now, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll go to our 10-
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Oh, thank you, Sarah. We'll go to our 10:20 timed item, which is the Board Strategic Plan Update. And Todd?
Good morning. So we really, you know, I think this is a different one than the topics we usually talk about. We're kind of focused on individual issues. But I think this is not only equally important, but it really sets a foundation for us moving forward as we talk about the organization and key initiatives over the next three to five years. And so what I wanted to do is give a quick update of kind of where we're at from the 23rd of February, when we met individually and collectively as a group of Board of Supervisors, but the subsequent day after that, and the meeting with the Department Directors and elected offices. So let me tell you, you have a couple of materials in front of you. The first one is a, it says Critical Success Factors. It's probably going to be re-titled Strategic Planning Framework. But it is an initial document that we're going to be preparing for you all. So when we talk about reaching out with our, at our MAX, any outreach that you have with residents and citizens, you can provide some materials to them, and we'll have those available for each of you and your individual district directors. The outline of this really speaks to these eight Critical Success Factors, kind of the key initiatives, focus areas of the Board of Supervisors, and ultimately, the organization as a whole. Materials speak to that on the inside of the page. And then behind is kind of the county's overall county vision and mission statement that kind of commensurates with the Critical Success Factors. So I'm going to walk through quickly the framework that we had and a little bit about the outlines of the discussion that took place. The first effort that we did on February 23rd was the conversation with you all, and it was really about engaging dialogue. How do we work even more effectively than maybe what we're doing today? And then so I thought the conversation was really good. It kind of culminated in these eight Critical Success Factors, which I'll walk through in one second. But the second day was probably equally as important. And it was a virtual session with the Department Directors and elected offices. And the interest and input that they had was all about, based on those eight different Critical Success Factors, what are initiatives, key initiatives in each individual department that they felt were important as we work on aligning the focus areas of each of the departments and elected offices into the organization as a whole. So the first slide is really a timeline. So for- So for two of the five of you all were engaged in an initial strategic planning effort that we did back in 2018. And that was kind of set the stage. We spent time talking about formulating these critical success factors. But as we've had transition on the Board, I think it was really important to revisit this conversation. And that's what really culminated in the discussion we had on the 23rd of February of this year. So as we talk about it, and I'll speak to this towards the end of the session, is what does this mean? How do we ensure both accountability and an update to you all about individual initiatives? We have kind of four different areas that we're looking about, tracking these CSFs. They're kind of graphical representations, but some are under construction and consideration for you all, things that may be coming through the budget process, or maybe things that need to be discussed in a public forum. Others are kind of scheduled, so we'll be talking about when items are coming forward to either for decision-making or completion. The next one's kind of moving ahead, what's a work in progress? Will we be speaking to this on a quarterly basis? And then we also want to revisit, what are the good things we've done? Because there's a lot of stuff that's been completed. So that's kind of the framework as we talk about individual areas of these eight different factors. So let me start with the first one. They aren't in any priority order, they're just in sequential about how we have them laid out. So the first one's a critical success factor around strategic relationships and community engagement. A couple of different areas, this isn't all-inclusive, but it is key focuses. We are going to be looking at doing a countywide citizen survey, wanting to gather up feedback and input. We haven't done this for a number of years, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to kind of get a baseline about how citizens feel about not only the county, but the services we provide. The District Attorney, as you heard in his budget presentation, he's really making concerted effort about outreach. He's going to be doing a Citizen Academy. And so, there's a lot of efforts around strategic relationships and community engagement. I think one of the key areas that we're doing for 2021 is a redistricting effort, and that process will translate into how the changes take place in terms of elections and election filing for 2022. We also have done a lot of work around MAX, and I think we're going to continue to have that dialogue with you all. I think the efforts that have taken place around virtual environments and engaging people in different manners versus in-person has worked fairly well in this kind of unprecedented time. And the question is, are there other opportunities that we can engage our residents in different manners? I know the MAX has been successful up to this point, but I think there's other means that people may want to be engaged with us. So we're going to spend some more time talking about that. As we get into other strategic relationships, we're doing some stuff from an HR standpoint, employee volunteerism, community connections. This is a big effort and a focus that our employees have had. How do they be connected to our community in which they represent? So we're going to be talking about a volunteerism initiative. We also are talking about engagement and recruitment, school-to-career partnerships, HR. Our individual departments are how, reaching out and saying, how can a local government be a career for our younger folks coming up, or those that are looking to transition, career paths? Community engagement on county initiatives, again, kind of back to the MAX. And then obviously, the effort that we've most recently been talking about is our homeless efforts. We have two components. We have our homeless effort that's happening at DeWitt. And then we're talking about engagement on a more county-wide basis with our partner jurisdictions and how do we work together? So again, not all-inclusive, but some key areas that we're discussing. Let me talk on the second one, because it's really about the housing focus. And as Steve Pedretti spoke to you back when we met last time, you know, 37% of our housing and our building permits that took place last year were affordable or attainable housing projects. So we've done a lot of work in this area. I'm actually really proud of the effort that the county has done and the staff have done in this, and kind of putting a focus area around here. So we're going to continue to expand and identify opportunities. We'll get grant funding, federal funding for housing. We have our housing elements, we're doing some updates to our housing, our code amendments. A deed restriction program is in place, so we're marketing and advertising that. Again, we've changed some of our codes to allow for ADU or accessory dwelling units, tiny home housing alternatives. And then looking at opportunities for ownership in the event that someone may have a record that can be expunged, it gives them more opportunities to identify homeownership opportunities. I'd be remiss to say that Housing Trust is another key area that we put in place, kind of a private-public partnership. We are going to be talking about how do we work more and engage with them moving forward, because they have a lot of resources from a 501(c)(3) standpoint. They can do some more innovative and creative ideas with us. So item three is around public-serving infrastructure and amenities. And this really talks about roadways and transit and parks. And as you're going to see in the near term, we're going to be bringing forward the Parks Master Plan. This has kind of been a culmination of some efforts for the last number of years. So as we look at parks and putting together our master plan in place, we have a capital fee program that we're doing, and we're going to be updating that through our NEXIS study. We're going to be looking at regional infrastructure construction. These are Placer Ranch, as we have completed the EIR there. How do we deal with the infrastructure? Obviously, this week earlier, we were talking about baseline road and some of our major transportation corridors as we talk about development. And then, as Supervisor Gustafson alluded to, there's a lot of transportation needs up in the basin. So on a broader scale, I think this is a broader topic, but I think we're going to have some individual tactical items around this area. And then, speaking about that, how do you pay for it? In partnership with the Treasurer, our CEO's office, IFD or an Infrastructure Finance District is one mechanism to pay for regional infrastructure. And so, we're going to be bringing back to your Board that funding mechanism that maybe allow for some of this development to occur in a more expeditious timeframe. We also talked about how one initiative that was spoken to, transportation corridors. And then, obviously, infrastructure is a key component. As we're receiving stimulus dollars, we're going to come back to you and talk to you about some of those funds that are available. How do we address not only the needs in the county, but how do we deal with it from an infrastructure standpoint? And that's kind of some of our economic development efforts as well. So more to come in this arena. Talk about facilities, CIP planning, building, HHS. This is going to be a multi-year effort, but we're starting with the infrastructure to support it at the DeWitt campus. And then we'll be working, and your Board's going to be seeing a recommendation here coming up for a design-build firm as part of a RFP effort that's been going on. So a lot of good work coming on the infrastructure and development side. VMTs again, and then obviously, as I've spoken to, and I've been a big proponent of having good replacement plans for not only our building infrastructure, but our equipment infrastructure and our fire stations surrounded throughout the county are part of that effort. So we're putting them into our replacement plan as part of our budget effort. And it's just a continual component of addressing and maintaining the assets that are really important to us and to maintain effectively and appropriately. So let's circle back to economic development. This is kind of outcome-focused economic development. Really, I look at this as being proactive as we reach out. And so, we have a couple of things. Obviously, our planning efforts around tours and master plan. I think we've done a lot of good jobs, as I spoke to, about some of the silver linings around COVID. The opportunities for economic development partners in the cities, the chambers, and the county, I think has been unprecedented from what we've done previously. So we're continuing those efforts, those meetings take place on a semi-monthly basis, or as frequently as honestly as needed. But the efforts to continue to have good dialogue with our partners that are doing things that are complementary each other are really important. Placer, the California State University System, that South Placer Campus is currently in design efforts with Sacramento State. I think this is a tremendous economic driver for us in that southwest Placer area. And then obviously, we're looking at private and public investments. This comes down to working with the United Auburn Inn community on some transportation initiatives around the Placer Parkway, some things where we can work jointly together, not only with our public partners, but with our private industry as well. We're also going to be revamping and upping our Business Resource Center. And one of those efforts is identifying a small business revolving loan fund where we can invest in our small businesses with the money coming back in, and we can come out. And it's all part of the effort and the strategy around the Economic Development Committee around a business retention and attraction strategy. So you're going to hear more about this as we move along. But our effort is to not only grow internally in all the small businesses we have, and how do we identify expansion, but it'll also be a focus on attraction and bringing businesses in. You just approved the support of a TOT rebate program. But in the same vein, we're going to be having to go forward on a TOT renewal program up in the Tahoe area for that additional 2% there. And that'll be taking place next year. And then the upfront fees on startups. We're going to be looking at opportunities to identify businesses that are startups coming in the county, and how do we support them? Really tied in with the Business Development Resource Center will be providing support there. We're going to continue the efforts, as I mentioned previously, about some of the work with the collaboration. We also are going to be continuing to support small businesses by marketing with our chambers around shopping locally. That has been, was a really tremendous effort as we got through the holiday season. And I think there's a continued focus and effort to do that effort as we move along around economic development. Prudent comprehensive planning, we spoke to this. Obviously, a key component is to have a sustainable organization, both financially and operationally. So we're going to be looking at giving more information to residents around a budget and brief document when the budget's adopted as you go out and meet with your residents. How is the county investing the resources and the tax money that is entrusted to you all? We're going to be doing and enhancing that effort. We also looking at some of the funding that's coming in through stimulus money, but also looking at other grant federal dollars that are available to us so we can leverage the funds that we have. Bullet point three is really talking about that pension and the status we have around our unfunded liability. This was a great deal of discussion with the Department Directors, our Elected Offices, about setting a framework and a goal around a pension strategy. And we'll be speaking to you all a little bit more about that. It really ties into our budget process. And I really think we've done some tremendous work on the OPEB contribution. And as your Board gave direction to reallocate some of that additional funding that we are putting there to put towards our pensions, we want to have a real good game plan of how we move forward with our pension-funded status moving forward. So some really good work there. And then finally, one of our largest expenses outside of our staff is around our health and our benefits programs. And so, there are opportunities, we're going to have more flexibility, provide a really strong health and benefit-related package to our resident, or to our businesses, or to our employees that are providing services to our residents and our businesses. But we're going to look and have an exploratory community to see where can we have more opportunity to not only save costs, but also potentially do some cost containment, as well as maintaining a really strong benefit for the future. We're looking, obviously, at COVID impacts, capital projects. Not only looking at the capital projects, but what the operational costs of those are into the future. We've kind of put that in place. HHS is a focus. And then obviously, two of the five of you were here when we did an IZEA Accelerator Program a couple of years back. It kind of got a little squashed. Actually, Supervisor Gore, I think you were here as well. And it was really the opportunity for employees to give ideas about how they can identify better ways to provide a service, either save money, cost containment, or just better customer service as a whole. 62 requests when we rolled it out, I was shocked. But I think what it said to me was, having a forum for employees to provide input was really important. And so, we got some really good feedback. I think we had 14 of those ideas went forward. And we're going to kind of do a 2.0 version of that in the coming months here. Sustainable, fiscally-sustainable public safety services. Obviously, the core function of county governors are public safety. We're going to work and continue our efforts on our Placer County Fire Ad Hoc Committee. We are also bringing forth, and we'll be talking about a consultant, to look at the five different dispatch operations we have in the county and saying, is that the right model that we need to have as an organization? Or are there other ways to provide that service? So in partnership with our Sheriff's Office and the individual jurisdictions that have dispatch operations, really having a concerted discussion that is all about, how do we provide an adequate level of service at a cost? It's potential we can save money at the same time. Health crisis, obviously, we're dealing with a lot of behavioral health issues rolling out of this COVID era. And so, how do we do that most effectively? That's partnership with HHS and our public safety functions. Probation, another area that, as we see laws changing around probation and the time periods that folks will be on probation, how do we effectively transition them back in the community? And probation, I would say, is at the forefront of that effort. And we probably have some of the best probation staff and services around the state. CJPC, both Supervisor Gore, Supervisor Holmes sit on this. Obviously, we're going to continue to ramp that up, bringing forth all of our law enforcement partners to the table to talk about ways that we can support legislation and funding opportunities. Our prosecution unit will continue to handle those quality-of-life crimes. You've heard about that during the budget presentation from our District Attorney. And then obviously, as we talk about, ultimately, our goal is reducing recidivism. However you calculate that, and we need to speak to this, but our ultimate goal is to get people back where they're contributing to the community and providing those services and not being in our criminal justice system as much as possible. And so, there's efforts that we can do that, and that's in partnership with our law enforcement, but also our court system, and then our other non-law enforcement services, such as probation and some of these alternative incarceration programs. Innovative Integrated County Services, I spoke to some of these because they're very overlapping. But we did a lot of teleworking efforts during this COVID approach, and that was kind of on an emergency basis. But the infrastructure, from a network standpoint, supported that. We're going to continue to talk about how do teleworking arrangements work, not only within, throughout the organization. And it's not for everybody, and it's not for every service. But I think we've seen where we can do that and be effective. It's also recruitment and retention strategy approach as well. So we have a program in place that's much more solid. As we bring everybody back to work, we're going to be speaking more about this. Online service offerings, we're going to continue to work on our website. IT solutions, and then homelessness will be a continual effort that we have. We have some other areas around kind of rebranding our child support services programs. Obviously, number one in the state right now, we're going to continue that effort. But they're really looking at, looking the 21st century of how we work on child support services. Traffic solutions, that'll be a continual effort, both on this side of the Hill and then in the Tahoe area. Succession planning, as we heard from Mark Wright Out, we have a number of employees that have been here 20 and 30 years. That's just a testament to the organization. But what it says to me is, we need to make sure we have those folks coming up and programmed in, and we have a pipeline for folks to... It's not just the job, it should be a career for them, and the investment that we make, we need to make sure that those folks are able and have the opportunity to roll into those positions that come available. And then obviously, the quality-of-life indicators that we have. And the final item is really that balanced land use planning and environmental stewardship. We're going to be working on an update to our general plan. It's been quite a few years since we did that. So we'll probably systematically work through that plan. That's quite an endeavor to do that. Water forum renegotiation, we're working on water and water storage. And those are really important. Obviously, groundwater sustainability plan. You heard about some sustainability efforts earlier. And then wildfire prevention grants and fire-wise councils. With the formation and the addition of a Forest Management Coordinator that's going to be coming on the first week of May, this is just an effort to really collaborate around fire, wildfire prevention. CAL FIRE, the state, there's a great deal of funding. And then our councils are important there. And then to wrap up, our marketing effort around farm-to-fork. This is not only an economic development program, it's also about recognizing the historical significance of our agricultural community here. And as I mentioned, around the forestry health side. So you had a number of areas that you identified. I listed those in those last number of slides. But this is some of the priorities. I listed those in those last number of slides, but this is some of the priorities that you identified when we talked the other day, and as you've seen, that's one of a number of different areas. We just want to be really thoughtful and mindful about how we look at this. And again, many of these areas, we're looking between one and three and five-year horizons, so some are in there. Infant stages and others are kind of a little more mature in where we're at. So I want to talk about the next steps, because I think as I lay off this presentation, there's three different areas that I've spoken to, not only to the departments about how we're doing accountability and updates, but to you as well. We do quarterly budget status reports to you all, so that's the first piece. How are the investment that we're making and where we're spending those? But in the same breath, we'd like to bring forward the work plan update. Some of the items that we spoke to in this presentation are directly attributed to the financial costs attributed to doing each of those. So what I'd like to do is align the financial and the budgetary status with the operational tactical areas, and that'll be handled in the same manner. And then the final thing, which is new, and as we talked about during the budget presentation, is about monitoring and reporting and data. You get a weekly update from me, and in some cases, we have departments that provided a great deal of statistical information and timely operational reporting. I think every department has a lot of data they track. It's just more about putting in a more concerted organized format. So what we'd like to do is talk about a monthly quarterly monitoring report, it'll be individual data. My intent is to start that out with you all, and we'll put together the data from each of the departments. You'll receive that through the CEO's office to you all, and then we can talk about revising, enhancing if there's additional data that may have importance or interest to you all, we can make modifications at that point. But those are like the three areas I think really tie back to the strategic planning effort and also kind of align the direction that you're going as a board. So I'm going to wrap it up. I've spoken for a while now. I'd love to answer any questions you might have about what we've done up to this point and kind of where we're going in the future.
Thanks, Todd. Well done. Any questions at this time? Because we'll have a chance to hear from the public and then pass on any comments later. Anyone from the public want to address this item?
Mr. Garabedian, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thank you, Supervisors, for another opportunity here this morning. A couple, I guess, two areas of comment, one on community engagement and also on critical need for business development. The question is, on the first one, listening to the public and acting on the public's concerns. Some county leaders believe the public is not listened to at all. That's certainly not been my experience. But a particular example is the PCDP, that in spite of all the claimed opportunity for public input, hardly anybody knows what's in it, and we can't rely on Gold Country Media to really deal with the critical development issues we have. And on business retention, amongst the good things in this, I think it's important to specifically mention farm and ranch retention as part of a specific effort. It's really important to build the outreach for marketing, but there are other kinds of agriculture which that wouldn't necessarily serve in range, for instance. But yeah, so I think that a specific mention of agricultural retention is important under the business development. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment, Chairman.
With that, I'll just add, you know, in the 26 years I've been here, Todd, first of all, thank you for the effort. You know, we've had retreats and done different things, a lot of interfacing with county exec's office and staff generally about board strategy and influence on the budget, noting that a huge amount of what counties do is mandated, so you have more or less board policy discretion. But for sure, our budgets are more exacting now, so it's easier for us to consider recommendations that came from the staff, like giving a lot of our CARES Act money, I guess, a record in the state, to our businesses where we thought it actually would best apply to the emergency that we were in. So the work that you've done and built around this, I think, has taken a huge step that way, and also noting that some of the creative things that percolate up to board strategy are ideas by the board. Some of them are from staff, some of them are kind of a hybrid. The board, for example, may be struggling with something like homelessness, and then we get some maybe really good recommendations and/or diverse recommendations from staff, and then it comes up on our desk to deal with us. So I think we're just making a huge amount of progress in how that management is honed and run and the cylinders firing together. I love the idea of optimizing our outreach. All of us are supposed to be held accountable for our decisions and the effectiveness of how well we do or not. So for those of us who are elected, to the extent that the initiatives that we're working on actually representative of the views and concerns of our constituents, one that's measured, then if we're very good at it or not, it makes it easier for the voters to stay engaged, one feel like they're actually having an impact, and that'll either help them make different decisions or hire a board that actually can do a better job. And I just think all that's, 26 years I've been here, I think that's really coming together a lot better than it ever has been before, and I think a lot of that success has been reflective of a lot of the things that you've taken forward over the last few years, so.
Thanks.
I felt compelled to tell that. Cindy?
I too. I think this is a great effort, and I was really grateful to be part of it and to have us all contribute to the initiatives and to the changes in language and to really trying to refine what we're trying to do, because I think it communicates so well to our constituents. And I really appreciate everybody's participation in that, and it's been great with all the staff and department heads. And I am especially grateful that you're putting in these progress reports, because I really do think that that's an area where we can do a better job. We do a great job at communicating a lot, a lot of information to our constituents, but it's almost too much, and it's easier to track it in a more succinct form, format to allow people to know where we're making progress. If we're not making progress, why not, and why we may have switched priorities based on funding opportunities or different issues that have come up. So I really commend us for, you know, and your efforts, Todd, and your staff, to come up with those status updates that'll be meaningful to our public. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Bonnie?
Thank you, yeah. Great work. You know, to the comment, Mr. Garabedian, about ranches and agriculture, right, like that is very important, and I think that we capture that under item eight, which is balanced land use planning and environmental stewardship, right? And agriculture is important to this community. It may not be spelled out as a specific strategy by staff, but I think we've had a lot of conversation about the importance of preserving agriculture. We've got, Josh does a really good job of working with our local farmers to help them, assist them, and I think actually, through our economic development, like Placer Business Resource Center, don't we have programs to support our agriculture and our ranchers, our farmers as well?
Yeah, those services are there, whether it's financial, marketing, they're business, and we want to make them thrive and say, yes, they're available.
Okay, because I, you know, I appreciate that point, because I want folks to think, to know that we're not just focused on brick-and-mortar businesses, but that agriculture is a value of our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Jim?
Yeah, we do have an agricultural marketing program that's very effective, hanging out at our farmers' markets and just promoting the great agriculture component of our county. I really appreciate this, you know, it's kind of a roadmap. It kind of tells us what we've gotten done, what we need to work on, how to move forward, and so it's important to have those quarterly status reports and monthly organizational monitoring. So many times, we're working on things and all of a sudden, we stop and say, where are we on that? And so it's important to bring that back to the board so we know exactly where we're at. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so I noticed that all of the people are here for our item eight, which is the Placer Government Center Master Plan Issue. So unless there are objections, what I think I'll do is flip to it, because whereas I was so excited about being on time early on, we are horribly not now. So I think I'll go to that so that we can address that since everybody's here, and then we'll take up the 10:50 item later, and I think we're good to keep going.
Well, we have to wait at least 10 minutes before we can take the 11:30 item.
Oh, it is 10.
That clock is a slight issue.
Buttons are the time. Thanks, good point.
So we can take the department item if you want to.
Yeah, let's, yeah, I do. So let's start with our first department item, which is Health and Human Services Psychiatric Hospital Umbrella Agreements. Amy?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chair Weigand and members of the board. I am Amy Ellis, the Director of the Adult System of Care, here with an action item to approve an increase of $700,000 for a new maximum aggregate amount of $2.3 million for existing psychiatric hospital umbrella agreements with an existing term ending in June 30th, 2021. The adult and children's system of care continue to provide mandated mental health crisis services to residents of Placer County. During fiscal year 1920, ASOC and CSOC served 3,276 residents experiencing a crisis. About 50% of those individuals that received a crisis evaluation did require further inpatient psychiatric treatment. These private hospitals provide necessary inpatient psychiatric hospitalization for both children, for children and youth, and offer an additional safety net for adults requiring inpatient psychiatric hospitalization when our county contracted psychiatric health facilities are at capacity. Placer County uses psychiatric hospitals, our PUFs, as much as possible because we are able to build a federal funding source for their use. We've added several contracts to expand that capacity. Despite these efforts, our utilization of freestanding psychiatric hospitals has continued to rise during this past year for three reasons. The first being that our PUF hospitals have had to limit their, limit or stop acceptance due to COVID-19 outbreaks. The number of individuals requiring this level of inpatient care has exceeded, has gone up this past year. We're already over the total amount of inpatient hospitalizations from our previous year. And lastly, our length of stays have increased as we're seeing higher acuity in individuals. These placements are carefully considered and are a requirement. This year has brought additional utilization and placement challenges requiring this increased funding. The additional $700,000 in funding for this umbrella contract amendment includes 67% in federal and state funds and 33% in required county general funds. One half of the contract's balance is included in the department's fiscal year 2021 budget and available for any questions you might have.
Thanks, Amy. Jim?
Yeah, thank you, Amy. You know, this brings to light that apparently, we don't have enough of these psychiatric health facilities in the area, let alone in the state of California. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, it is. We always advocate to try to get more within our communities and across the state.
So if one of these individuals is in the emergency room, they are, the social worker declares them 51-50 where they need additional treatment, so they're in the emergency room waiting to try to find a bed in one of these facilities, and that can take quite a little while. So apparently, my concern is we just don't have enough of these facilities, and the state of California needs to zip it up and see if we can provide more of those facilities, because the issue ain't going away. And I move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, Holmes, second, Gusterson. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
Currently, no.
So the motion is to approve the increase of $700,000, so the aggregate contract amount is $2.3 million for psychiatric hospital umbrella agreements. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And let's go to our next department item, which is New Classification of Waste Management Operations Superintendent. Kate?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Kate Sampson with your Human Resources Department. Today, I'm requesting introduction of an ordinance amending your uncodified schedule of classifications and compensation ordinance in order to create a new classification of Waste Management Operations Superintendent. This request comes from the Western Placer Waste Management Authority, affectionately known as WATMA. This is a regional agency established in 1978 by a joint powers agreement, including Placer County and the cities of Lincoln, Rockland, and Roseville. WATMA owns, operates, and maintains a sanitary landfill and associated improvements, including the Materials Recovery Facility, or MRF, which is staffed by the Department of Public Works. WATMA recently engaged in a labor study with MRG Solutions in order to identify best practices as the complexity and regulations related to the solid waste industry have expanded over the past several years. The study recommendations addressed areas of capital improvements, policy and business development, and organizational support. In order to achieve the appropriate staffing to implement these recommendations, HR has worked with the Department of Public Works to create the classification before you today titled Waste Management Operations Superintendent. Duties for this position would include planning, organizing, and coordinating the WATMA Operations Unit, field operations and compliance, and administration of contracts, scale house operations, environmental control systems, and facility safety. Based on the scope of work assigned and relevant labor market data, the classification is recommended a professional grade 252 with an annual total cost of about $225,000, which can be accommodated by the Department of Public Works budget. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to field any questions.
Thanks, Kate. Bonnie?
Thank you, Kate. Both Supervisor Weigand and I sit on the WATMA board, and the labor study was very helpful for us to look at the staffing that we have. The operations and requirements have grown over the number of years, but our staffing has not. So I just want to clarify something, Kate, because I, my understanding is that most of this position would be funded through the fees that WATMA generates for the uses of the facility, right? Even though those funds are in the Public Works Department, is that correct? Am I correct in stating that?
I believe that is correct. I'm not sure if there's a Public Works representative more familiar with their budget who could comment specifically, but that sounds correct to me.
Right, I mean, it's not, these aren't dollars just taken out of the general fund, but they are dollars that we get from fees for running the operation. So I just want to clarify that, right? So we're just not adding extra dollars out of the general fund. So with that, I know we've got a take question, so I'll wait.
Any questions, any other questions, comments from the board members? Any public comments?
No public comment.
And now I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the motion.
Motion, Gore, second, Holmes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And now, according to my iPhone, not the clock on the wall, it is 11:30, and so we're legally able to go forward with item eight A, which is a request for an extension to the Placer County Government Center Master Plan Development Standards. And Paul?
Yeah, good morning, Chair Weigand, members of the board, Paul Breckenridge, Capital Improvement Manager. The item for your board's consideration this morning is a request from the DeWitt Community Complex for a time extension of July 1st of this year, sunset provision, the development standards of the Placer County Government Center Master Plan Development Standards, so a portion of the master plan itself. The provision requires a public hearing for projects within the mixed-use area that identify the removal of the theater building 315, and should your board be interested in considering a potential time extension, staff does request you have it returned to your board in May with options for your consideration. So we're asking for a little bit of time if you do consider that. Just a little bit of background, April 23rd, 2019, you were to approve the PCGC Master Plan Update and adopted resolutions, including the certification of the final EIR, which does, did identify, does identify the year of the camp. does, did identify, does identify the area of the campus where Building 315 is located as a mixed-use area where potential commercial and residential come together in a potential town center arrangement. The master plan currently identifies other potential uses where this building is currently located, as indicated in the graphic that is in your report, the staff report. Along with your board's adoption of the master plan, the development standards were also approved. At the time the standards were approved, a modification was made by your board to accommodate a potential nonprofit request for up to two years to raise, quote, "a significant amount of money" with the goal of restoring Building 315. Specifically, the amendment would keep this building from potentially being demolished until July of this year. The language that talks to that, projects within the mixed-use designation that identify the removal of theater shall be, shall be subject to a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors. This provision shall sunset on July 1st of 2021. And the county's expectation that was at the time, within the two-year period, a nonprofit organization interested in the building would develop a sustainable business plan that would, that does include capital improvements and ongoing operational funding sources. So a sustainable plan that would address the ongoing theater operations and the improvements associated with that. Just as a reminder, after the master plan approval in 2019, the plan's EIR was legally challenged. Almost two years later, on December 1st of last year, the Superior Court of California ruled in favor of the county on all counts, including the plan for demolishing existing buildings and Building 315. With the appeals period passed, the PCGC master plan and EIR is now fully entitled. As a result, subsequently, December 15th, your board approved plans and specifications and authorized the delegation of the construction contract for the demolition of, for the demolition project, which called for the demolition of existing buildings in and around the PCGC, but not including Building 315 based on that clause. The bid solicitation process resulted in REI being determined, the lowest responsible bidder, a notice proceed was issued, and the demolitions are ongoing, progressing currently and are ongoing outside of Building 315. So more recently, the DCC transmitted a letter to the Clerk of the Board requesting the following. A three- to four-year time extension removed the possibility of demolition within this time period from the design standards. Recognition that the DCC is a viable nonprofit organization documentation of county support. Establish a county contact to work with on theater restoration grant applications requiring county support. Again, should your board be interested in considering a potential time extension to better consider the request and potential ramifications to the county's implementation of the master plan, staff is requesting additional time returning to the board next month. Staff does not recommend action on the two, the second and third requests. Just to clarify there, the county must follow applicable competitive proposal and solicitation requirements and cannot at this time recognize one organization over another who might propose, should the board wish to authorize such a process in the future. So with that, that includes, concludes my comments. I believe we have 10 minutes for the DCC and their presentation.
Thank you. Paul, Bunny has a question or?
Well, just a quick question, point of clarification. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Sure.
The one item in the staff report says that the, the county anticipated a sustainable business plan that identified capital improvements and ongoing operation costs, a business plan. I, I don't recall that as part of our conversation when we allowed for an extension. I remember primarily the focus on making sure they were able to raise dollars.
Yeah.
And so I just want to clarify that because I think obviously if we move forward, we would need that, but I don't know if that was the expectation that we would have that within those two years.
I think at the time, you're right. The expectation was that it was the funding, the finance side of it that was the expectation. So I think that's more on the facility side, that our expectation was that, you know, the project would entail all these other things. So what are the thoughts and ideas behind what those things would be?
Right. So that could be something we do in the future.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
I see no other questions, Paul. Great presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Please go. State your name, of course, for the record.
I don't think I can do very well with that today. So, okay. My name is Ramona Brockman, and I'm the President of the DeWitt Community Complex. Oh, and before I forget, I do have materials to hand to you. So there are my comments as well as our preliminary business plan. Okay. So again, I'm Ramona Brockman, President of the DeWitt Community Complex, and I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to comment on this item. And so on, on the note that, and for public information and public record, I'd like to summarize our request in support, as the supporting documents were not included in the staff report. Or at least not easily found, I guess, in the, well, no, they weren't included in the staff report, not easily found on the agenda. So we, again, we are requesting a three- to four-year time extension to the sunset date due to COVID-19 impacts, eligibility requirements for grant and foundation funds, and a catch 22 scenario created by the vague wording of the language added to the development standards. As you can imagine, nonprofit arts organizations and arts organizations were disproportionately and negatively impacted by the COVID-19 shutdown. Thus fundraising and outreach, as it were, it's have been severely curtailed for us over the past year. However, in recent months, we were able to hold three fundraising events, with the last one being on March 26th. We have learned that most grants, foundations, and major fundraising events, such as the Big Day of Giving, require nonprofits to be in existence for a minimum of two to three years before being able to apply or participate in funding opportunities. The DCC itself became a nonprofit in February of 2020. The provision added to the department, development standards is worded in such a way that there is a constant threat of demolition of the theater, which gives the impression that the county is not serious about the theater restoration. If the county retains the opportunity to demolish the theater at any time, interested parties will simply not invest in the theater. For example, in a letter the DCC received from Placer Arts, they identified the threat of demolition and lack of clear county support as the sole reason that the DCC was not awarded grant funds from their organization. Thus, our catch 22 is that the county wants substantial amount of fundraising to have occurred in the past two years to show that the theater restoration is viable. However, potential donors grant applicants, applications in highly recognized fundraising events want an organization to be in existence for several years so they can be assured that the organization is viable and has established a good reputation. Therefore, we are requesting that the county formally support the theater restoration project. If a time extension is granted, we need the threat of demolition to be removed and have it coincide with that time extension. The county has emphasized that the public and not the county is to provide community uses and facilities, such as a community theater, event center, or senior center. If this is the case, then the county should at least formally state that they support the community's interest in saving the theater. I would like to emphasize that the DCC has received strong support for our mission to save the theater. At the hearings for the Placer County Government Center Master Plan, a petition with nearly 1,000 signatures was presented, and it's noteworthy to mention that these signatures were collected in only four days. So that's quite a bit of interest in a short amount of time period that we had to put that together. In addition, the DCC has received formal endorsements, and over 60 of the most recognizable individuals, businesses, and community leaders are on our endorsement list. We have also received numerous letters of support and have been contacted by several interested clients. These letters have been sent to your board over the past year, along with our endorsement list, and they are also included in the business plan that I just provided. The materials we submitted also show that the theater is in good condition. Based on a 2014 DeWitt Theater Structural Building Assessment and Evaluation Report prepared for Placer County and reviewed by our architect, Dave Peaches, the theater is in good condition and a strong candidate for restoration. The renovation cost estimate ranges between $600,000 to $759,000. The major cost of the renovation is to construct new ADA compliant bathrooms at about $196,000 in electrical upgrades to handle the demands of a multi-use theater. The building restoration costs are relatively minor because the theater was well-constructed and adaptively used, and, excuse me, actively used until the lease was terminated in 2015. The lease termination was prompted by the Costco project and not because of poor building conditions. Finally, our request also provided information demonstrating the financial benefits of a theater. Here's an excerpt, or I'd like to quote an excerpt from a 2015 county study that was prepared that indicates a vibrant arts community not only helps, keeps residents and their discretionary spending close to home, it also attracts visitors who spend money and help local businesses thrive. The typical arts attendee spends $24.60 per person, per event, beyond the cost of admission. Additionally, I would like to clarify several points related to the staff report prepared for this item. First, while the staff report identifies the area of the DeWitt Center where the theater is located as mixed-use, the master plan does not actually identify another specific use for that location. A theater would be a land use consistent with a mixed-use development. It would also be a feature frequently found in a town center design. To date, the public's opportunity to save the theater is the only specific land use proposal that has been submitted for a property within the mixed-use designated area of the site, as the county is still working on a visioning study. And as Supervisor Gore discussed, when the master plan was approved, the county did not define what substantial progress meant. The DCC subsequently met over, over the last year with several supervisors regarding the issue, and a clear definition was not provided. Obviously, this has been a major issue, particularly since the pandemic hit, just as we are starting our outreach and fundraising efforts, and a business plan was never mentioned. However, we completely agree that a business plan is important. Thus, during public comment at the January 12, 2021 Board of Supervisor meeting, I noted that a business plan was being prepared as part of an update on our group's progress. Today, we are submitting our preliminary business plan. Please note that it has been difficult getting marketing information as the pandemic has resulted in the temporary closure or limited uses of many venues. Also, due to some health issues of one of our board members, what we are providing today is a draft version, and it will be finalized as soon as possible. Third, the DCC did not initiate litigation with the county. The suit was filed by a separate organization, which was not properly identified in the staff report. To be clear, the vast majority of DCC members are not in any way involved in the lawsuit. They were not in any way involved with the lawsuit. Fourth, per the comments in the staff report regarding our request for county support, we would like to clarify that we would like the county to support the theater restoration project and not necessarily the DCC organization. So we will amend our formal request. Fifth, the staff report did not contain the formal request and supporting materials that the DCC submitted to the Clerk of the Board. Instead, the staff report notes that these items are on file with the Clerk. Our request and supporting documents consisted of only 17 pages. And in today's electronic age, I don't necessarily think the size of the document matters whether or not it can be attached. We would like to understand why our formal request and supporting materials were not included with the staff report, as is customary. We received a few inquiries from people in the community asking for information about the meeting as the agenda was posted late on Friday afternoon, and the Clerk's office is closed on the weekends. Thus, the community has had very little opportunity to review materials for today's meeting. For anyone to get a full picture, they would need to see our request and supporting documents. If this item is continued to another meeting date, our formal request should be included in the next agenda. Before I leave the podium, I would be, it would be very helpful if I can get an explanation as to, we could better understand the reasoning behind our request not being on file with the Clerk of the Board. In conclusion, the renovation of the DeWitt Theater is a viable project that is strongly supported by the community. It will provide a financial benefit and be a demand generator for the area. The building is in good structural condition, and there is a regional need for a smaller community theater. While we are here for the theater today, I would like to also note that we see similar great potential and community benefits in restoring the Red Cross Auditorium at DeWitt as an event center. Our interest is to work with the county to preserve these unique and historic buildings and to bring them back to their original uses as a win-win by offering the community entertainment and recreation opportunities and helping support local businesses. Thank you for your consideration of our requests.
Thank you. With regards to the one question, Megan, would you respond to the notice at the clerk?
I can respond that the documents were provided and requested to be on file. For the Clerk's office, what that means is we do not include them in the agenda packet. We do link all on-file documents online. So while the agenda did post late on Friday, the on-file documents were online over the weekend, and, you know, as far as why that was done, I'll defer to Paul.
Thanks, Megan. Paul?
Yes, I can, I can respond to that. And I think it's, there was, there was nothing intentional. I think it was an oversight on our part. So we intended that to be part of that. The report, it didn't make it. We apologize for it. That will not happen again as it relates to this item. So I think it's just an oversight on our part, and so it is on the file on the clerk.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Okay, and then you have some more comments, Paul?
Yeah, yeah, I can respond to, to a few of the items. As far as kind of in the, the notion of mixed-use in the theater, yeah, that, that is definitely a town center kind of a component that could be a potential. Do want to remind the board that kind of those functions, kind of, as far as the master plan goes, were kind of redirected with the, the notion of the community center. And the theatrical component and the seniors and other things were kind of set aside with the land for what is at the heart of the master plan, which is a potential future community center. So that, that was at least some of the thinking there as it relates to that function and kind of bringing together more elements of the community. This, this came out of the multi-generational community center study and identified that as a need, but kind of more broadly looking at other needs coming together with that reservation of property. Let's see. As far as the condition of the building, I, I think we just have a difference of opinion. The, the existing buildings that are coming down in the demolition process are coming down a lot faster than we had even anticipated. We're ahead of schedule with that. So, you know, as far as the, the facilities and, and their construction, the World War II construction is, is just a lot, there are a lot of inherent issues associated with that type of construction. Yes, I would say that the theater may have probably some additional structural components to it than the, the buildings that have come down recently, but not a lot. It's still vintage, 72, three, four, five years ago in its construction. So when, when you see the demolitions that are happening out there, we've, you know, not a sticker of rebar, if you will, it's just bricks held together with, with mortar with those existing buildings. So I think there, there's just a difference of opinion as to the condition. Now, with that building, the systems, and I think that's where the costs have gone with their, their study, is just all those systems that need to be upgraded. There, you know, everything from electrical to ADA, restrooms, roofing, I'm, I'm not sure on the roofing, but just a whole plethora of things that need to be addressed on that facility that's just going to be very, very pricey. And then you end up with a certain size of theater and certain size of backhouse and, and, you know, there's parking that goes along with that. So there are other considerations to think about with that. Let's see. On the, I think on the business plan, I, I just want to mention that, yeah, while it wasn't called for in, back when the, the standards were put together, I think from our perspective that, again, that those are things that should be in a plan and, and, you know, looking at both the operational, the ongoing, you know, rent and utilities and maintenance, all those things associated with those older buildings is, is not going to get any better over time. And then on top of that, you've got operational costs that go along with managing a theater. So, you know, just, I think in, in general, general terms, that's kind of what our anticipated information back would look like to give us a good sense that- information back would look like to give us a good sense that, that they've thought through all those things associated with the, the, the large funds that's going to have to go along with the theater. I think that's, that's it for now. Any other questions, I'd be happy to, to take up.
Board member have a, Cindy?
Well, there might be, I didn't know if there was any other public that wanted to comment, and then maybe I would have more questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have any questions for you until I hear from.
Is there anyone else sent from the public who'd like to address the board on this issue at this time?
My name is David Allen. I'm the treasurer of the DCC, and I, I really don't have a whole lot to say other than the fact that I think some of his comments are probably a hundred percent incorrect. If you review a lot of these, these reconstructions, et cetera, they come in at a much lesser cost than flattening everything and starting over with a new plan. And once again, as I said earlier, I don't know, a year, a year ago or more, that when these things disappear, they are gone. You know, many of you don't live in the Auburn area. You don't understand the community as much as those that do, those that grew up in, oops, those that grew up in this area. But it's, it's very important to keep some of these historical elements alive. Yes, we do have issues. There's always issues. There's issues with brand-new buildings. One of them happened to be major cost. And the fact that as you lose the culture of this area, which is incredibly important, the thing is it takes vision to see some of these things, and that's what you need to have is a vision to see what's going on. Yes, it is a leap of faith, but it's still there. The opportunities there, the group that's been put together is very good, very well-versed in what's going on, and they're just starting to grow. And the fact that some of, some people seem to think that the best thing to do is flatten everything and start from scratch, you lost it. Simple as that. It's gone. And that's one thing that we're, we're concerned about. There is something here in North Auburn, and we're not just an area that feeds the county. There is, there is culture, there is community here, and the fact that Plaster County has a couple of areas that are unincorporated, Tahoe City, North Auburn, et cetera. We are, yes, we are part of the county. We are managed by the county. We are managed by you. But the thing is you represent the whole community, and we don't have enough representation here to take care of some of this. So I think it's very important to look at some of these cultural resources that are still here and do something about this instead of just flattening and starting over. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, Paul, I think might have some more questions or comments.
I, I had a couple of questions. So as you know, I joined the board just as this was coming forward for final adoption, and I know quite a bit about the, the location of the multicultural or multi-generational community center at the other end or toward the center of the campus. But certainly, this area being mixed used and near the housing could also be a community center location, correct?
Absolutely. That area is set up for a number of uses through the land uses and the development standards, including what could be those things that are community-oriented. I, I think, and, and again, that, you know, graphic that is the master plan, it's a snapshot. It means lots of different things, and it's just a suggestion.
Yeah.
So, and that's, that's, but, you know, I think, again, getting back to kind of the, the thought on where the board was at the time and kind of looking to that future use that kind of brought together all those partners, you know, that, that's kind of where we landed at that point.
So as, as we're talking to potential partners for development, design, build, and all those thoughts we've been having, this is certainly something that could be included in options that they would present back to us for concepts. So how a theater being in that location might build into mixed use opportunities spurring dining, shopping, other types of services in that, in that, that area?
That potential is there.
Yeah. Well, you know, I told the group, I, when I met with the group, I strongly support giving them more time, but with measurable goals. And I think that's, and, and so it's kind of a chicken or the egg, because again, today I heard a little bit of animosity, and, and I want to get that dropped and really look at partnering, because this is county property. We need a partnership attitude in, in how we develop that. And thank you for admitting you failed to give that. We were very clear, they were coming forward, and they've all, and what they were asking. So I, I support giving them more time. And the other comment I had made to them is that the, what I've learned from sitting in this seat is the county gets a lot of requests from a lot of different communities, and we don't fund theaters. So don't rely on us for O and M, but you really have to find a partner who would be able to do that. And whether that is another nonprofit or whether that's a governmental entity, other communities, and I shared with them why a T-Bid was formed, a Tourism Business Improvement District where businesses assess themselves, and then that's a sustainable funding stream for these sorts of projects that enhance the community and enhance tourism, and, and looking at those kinds of opportunities that would really be long-term sustaining funds. Because I've served on nonprofit boards, and I realize how darn challenging it is to go out and raise money year after year toward the obligations. I am far less concerned with them being able to raise the money to do the project as sustain the project. And, and so that's my concern, is making sure that they have a sustainable model with partners, because I think they will need partners, just from my experience. Maybe not in the first five or ten years, everybody's excited, but as time goes on, needs change, and, and then you need to know that if, we don't end up with something that, again, we're faced with a challenge of maintaining. So I'm certainly willing to give an extension. I'd like to see some measurable goals that are reasonable. And one of the questions you asked was, you know, because you have to be a nonprofit for a couple of years before you can apply for some of the grants, you know, you can, I, as one board member, would be willing, depending on the, the businesses, to trust pledges and commitments of funding based on getting to a certain level. So I don't necessarily need to see the cash in hand as much as I need to see the pledges and commitments, and, as well as you could partner with another nonprofit who has been in existence more than two years to make your applications for the funding. So I think those are just some ideas I have for the group. I know I get into the weeds because I've helped start nonprofits and tried to run them and helped them over decades, so I know it, it is challenging. But I welcome a partnership attitude here on both parties to see what can, what can happen in, in, in moving forward and adding this for the community. And also, just out of a request, I'd also love to see the 501(c)(3) application, because I know in there you have to submit what your mission is and your purpose to the IRS, and so love to, to review that, just so I'm real clear on where you all are headed to. Those are a couple of comments.
Thanks, and a great framing, actually. Jim, then Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Appreciate. Yeah, that's been my concern, what Supervisor Costas stated, that not only the restoration of the building, but parking, ADA compliance, and then the ongoing maintenance and operations, and then the sustainability of the theater, if it does go into effect, how are we going to maintain that, the long-term operation of that? And so those have always been my concern. If the, if the DCC can come forward with that, I'd be more comfortable. I look forward to reading the preliminary business plan as we go forward, and then when you come back, we'll have more information about, about that. And so I have no problem extending the time.
Suzanne?
Thank you. Hi, Paul.
Good morning.
I'm wondering if you could refresh me on the progression, the plan for the buildings that are going to be built. Are you going to demolish everything before you start building anything?
The ones that are identified in the master plan do have kind of a, well, they are, they are targeted for demolition. So those, depending on, there's no set kind of parameters for when and how. It says the, we have availability. We still have some county uses in some of those existing structures that would need to be moved and relocated to allow for future demolitions. So it, we don't have, it's kind of an evolving demolition schedule, but it, it just is dependent on, you know, where we are in the process for finding homes for those things that, that are in it. So, you know, as far as the, the feasibility study and, and we'll be back to the board to talk to you about some of those findings. But, yeah, no set demolition schedule at this point.
Okay, so is the theater building, is it holding you up from anything?
Not at this moment. Not at the, yeah, not at this moment. Over time, it could, and I think that's where we want to go back and take a look at where we are in the process, so we can come back and give you some further feedback.
Right.
In particular, as it relates to that piece.
Right, right. Do you have a crystal ball?
Yeah, it's, it's been interesting with COVID and trying to figure out how, you know, where, what the best fits are for uses coming up, but we look forward to coming back to the board with some of those thoughts and ideas.
Okay. My question is, on the original agreement with the, the theater group, was there language in that agreement that said that the county could decide to demolish that building even before the end of the agreement period? The theater group is indicating that there was some kind of language that said that the county could decide.
Right. What happened during the hearing and hearing the comments, there was this additional provision put into the development standards. And what it states is there must be a public hearing before a project that proposes to demolish the theater goes forward. So yes, it was anticipating that we'd have some project that came forward that needed that space and would need to propose to demolish the theater. And not every use within the master plan would necessarily have to go forward with a public hearing. It, it would depend on the zoning and the type of use. This automatically placed it into a public hearing venue in order to allow the folks to give their comments.
So then, if we were to grant them an extension on the agreement, is it still hold that we could preclude that agreement and move forward with demolition, or is it possible to leave that?
Well, just for clarification, there is no agreement with these folks. This is a development standard in our master plan that would have to be complied with if there was a project coming forward. That provision can be extended with its current language, or if the board wants to give direction on different language, then we can do that. I remember at the time quite clearly that the, the thought was that two years, probably not much would happen. We knew about the HHS building because we analyzed it at a project level, but we knew where the HHS building is, and we thought, you know, over there, there's probably not much that's going to happen. You know, famous last words, we didn't think mercy would happen for a couple of years, but they turned around and got their tax credits, and we have almost a finished product. So things move quickly in terms of the type and potential opportunities, especially in the public-private partnership sector, with the government center in being that, that is, the focus along with obviously community use is that the notion was two years seemed to be a safe period of time for things to get rolling. But that's open and up to the board to decide, for example, you know, if you decide you want to give an extension, if the majority decides that, how long? What would be, would we continue with the current clause, which still allows the county flexibility should be a project come forward? So those are questions for you to think about.
Right. I'm, I'm just curious if it's possible to try to purposely not include that kind of language that would give any prospective donor or partner to think that, that the county might come in and say, well, even though we, you know, we're giving you this extension, we've had something come up, and now it's, you know, we, we want this building kind of a thing. It's, it's given the impression to this group that that has been a hindrance to getting people to partnering or donating money.
Well, I'm not going to speak to that because I'm not in the business of nonprofits and fundraising. But what I can tell you, and Paul's going to have to make sure I'm correct, if I'm not mistaken, the theater was identified within the demolition zone originally.
Absolutely, yeah.
So remember that we had, we have that zone, and that's where the current demolition project is going. But in consideration of this particular provision, the theater and then later the hallway from the theater were excluded from that demolition project. So when this provision was put in place, we were operating on the proposal that was analyzed in the IR as to the particular zone that would be demoed, and it did include the theater. So that was the backdrop on how this was structured and the way it was structured at the time. But now we're two years later, and the question is, what would the board like to do with it now?
Right, right. And I'm thinking that out of that two-year extension of time, or agreement of time, we've lost pretty much one whole year to COVID, as far as really anybody being able to get out, meet in person with people, prospective donors and partners. And even with the thought of extending this timeframe, although the governor says we're going to open up in June, what if things happen and we don't open up in June? Are we going to lose another six months out of that time for them to proceed and, and do anything with this? So I, I'm in favor of considering all those things when, when we're considering the timeframe that we would be willing to grant them to, in all fairness, to give them sufficient time now that they're 501(c)(3), I think their time limit is coming up, to allow them to Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, Paul, the only thing we really have ready to go is the Health and Human Services Building at the DeWitt Campus. There's no other projects in place. We're going to have a, an agency look at the proposed development throughout that whole campus, so that's going to take a couple of years probably anyhow before we come to any conclusion as far as where we're going to go next with the campus development. Is that a fair statement?
You know, the, the site has been entitled on both the public and the private side of the campus for a project-level review, EIR. So it does have some level of review for various uses on the campus. So as, and then to go along with that, the standards and the guidelines do give kind of the ability for projects as they come in to go through even more of a simplified process for areas of the campus. And, and so there may be some additional environmental review for various projects as they come in, but it's been reviewed at a programmatic level, so it does have quite a bit of coverage with that.
Okay, all right. Well, again, I don't have any problem with the extension of the time. It's just, I'll just soon give you direction to come back with some kind of a feasible plan that it works for everybody.
And, and if I could add to that, I agree Supervisor Holmes, I'd like to see a little more formal agreement, because I do think that sometimes when we don't have a written agreement, things get confused, people remember things differently, and I'd like to see measurable goals at the end of each year on that agreement, because I think that'll also help them with fundraising. When you have a deadline, it helps secure those pledges or commitments. And the third thing I'd like to ask from county is when we're working with the design-build concept and, and looking at what could go there, let's make sure there's an alternative that includes the theater so that, so that we see how that could fit into the pieces of what they're considering for that site. So that would be on our end, and then I would ask that we try to get an agreement with some measurable goals for them that are reasonable, because I agree it's been, it's been a tough time to do that, but I think, I think that'll build that partnership feeling that we're in this together, but we do need to see opportunities for movement forward and progress, and which I think they've done. I mean, I think the architect's renderings and the business plan, I don't think has made it around yet, but I'll take a look at that as well, so. So I guess that's a, I guess, you want to make the motion?
Do we need a motion or?
A direction?
Just direction.
Okay.
For clarification, one thing I want to make sure I'm understanding, there's once again, no agreement here.
I'm, I'm asking that we've, I think we should have a little more formal agreement so that we don't have any confusion. You're saying no?
And we would have to go through the, the public, we would have to go through the public process and the RFP process to do that. That's how you would get a formal agreement.
Oh, I see, okay, for this group versus another group.
Correct. We can't just pick one group over another. We have to go through the process. Now, what I can say you can do with the development standard is you can put generic provisions in it, but they will be fairly generic as to benchmarks. If there is a proposal to preserve the theater, we'd have to, I'd have to sit down with staff, we'd have to work out what that would be, but we could, but it- we'd have to work out what that would be, but we could, but it is going to have to be generic. That's the only way to do it unless you want to direct an RFP to be done, in which case then we enter into a completely different venue. So development standard-wise, you can, for example, we can extend this for, say, two years, but at the end of the one year, there's a review of X, Y, and Z.
And we can open that up to any group that would want to propose to restore the theater.
Exactly.
And we could say any group interested in restoring the theater for theater purposes, open to the public could, would need to do these things.
Or you can make it generic. You can make it generic and change this to say, the theater shall not be demolished for two years commencing on July 1st. And put that in your development standard. And I'm just throwing this all out for the board's consideration, it could be one year, it could be two years. I think staff does need to come back with what might be potentially standing in the way of that. For example, does any of the infrastructure that has to be extended to serve the HHS building, is it anywhere near this? I don't know that. So that's things that staff would have to bring back to say, would this work for, say, a two-year period of time? Would it work for a three-year period of time? I just don't know that. But that's how you could structure a development standard. It would take out the, the issue of, you know, if a project comes forward for demolition, it would take that out and simply state, theater will not be demolished for X period of time. That's obviously something the board can always extend through the process, and the process for doing this will also be part of what staff brings back, because it's a development standard, part of the master plan, it does go through a public hearing process, so.
It seems like we're dancing around a lot of things, because there, at least when I met with the group, their sense was, it was hard for them to fundraise when we had a development agreement that indicated we might tear down the building at the end of two years, even if they'd raised money. So unless we include our commitment in some formalized manner, so I, I'm almost feeling like we have to get into a formal agreement, but I, I. Or, or something that's more clear on the public record so that they can raise funds or commitments to funds.
Well, if you have a development standard that says, the theater shall not be demolished for two years, then what that means is unless it comes forward by, and because it's the county's project, it would most likely be the county coming forward to try and change it through the public process. So it does put an extra hurdle onto it if you have it that clear. Now, I'm not saying that's how it has to be. If you want to direct the RFP process, then we enter into a completely different process.
How long does an RFP process take? I mean, there's probably not a lot of people out there interested in restoring the theater.
I think it could be done in probably two, two months maybe, by the time we're all said and done, yeah, two and a half months.
Because we have the July 1 expiration. I'm just trying to figure out a way to give some more, we could extend it while we develop an RFP and then enter into an agreement.
You made a comment about sort of blanket development agreement, right? So if we were to work with a nonprofit, then they would have to meet these standards. You mentioned something like.
This is not a development agreement. This is a development standard. And that's all it is. There's no agreement here, period.
Right, I understand. So what I'm trying to get at is if, if we were to allow other nonprofits currently to take a stab at this, not going through an RFP, I'm trying to, I'm trying to avoid an RFP in that time and energy, but allowing others to, you know, maybe there's some nonprofit out there that thinks that they want to do this, which is not likely, but maybe that there is. We get around having to do an RFP, but allow people to have a process to make suggestions to the county. I don't, I don't know. Just trying to find a way to not have to go through an RFP, but allowing others to have input and an opportunity to make a proposal to the county.
But to add enough to their ability to go fundraise with clear, that if they raise this money, we're going to honor that commitment. And that's clear to me, that's why we gave the extension, that's why we took it out of the demolition plan, that's why, you know, we moved forward the way the board chose to back then, that we were giving them that opportunity. So if they do need more time and they need something more concrete, I guess, we can't figure this out today. It sounds like we need the staff to come back with a recommendation on how best to meet our multiple goals here. Is that, I mean, that's just what I'm sensing. I don't have a good resolution, because if we go, I don't want to put us through a lot of additional work and time, but I want to give people the opportunity to do this in good faith. And good faith on our part is giving them the tools so they can raise the money.
I think we've got the information to come back to you with recommendations from what we've heard today.
Great, thank you, Paul.
So you have enough?
Absolutely.
And then you'll work with county council to come back or something?
Yep, we sure will.
All right, good, that's all I need, thanks.
Okay, and we're good, Karen? I have to apologize to Tim and Steve. We have a one o'clock, it's not 10:45, it's 12:15 or something like that. We have to be back here at 1:00, so we're going to break for lunch and some closed session to the extent that we need more time, we'll deal with that later, because we have, Dr. Parsonette is on at 1:00, and she has a class scheduled to accommodate, so.
Mr. Chair, do we have time to take Brett's stories?
I think we really need to break to, to make sure we can get back here at 1:00, because there's not that much time.
So if we're going in. If we're going into closed session, I do need to recuse on, I'm not going to remember all the numbers, Karen.
We'll go through that as I read it out.
Okay.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider two items of existing litigation. One item of initiation of litigation, which is 2A, to which Supervisor Gufferson will be recusing herself. 2B, which is potential exposure to litigation to potential cases, conference with labor negotiators, and conference with real property negotiators.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
We have the right people here today if you want to ask those questions.
Okay, the board is returning from closed session and county council will report out to the extent that we completed closed session.
The board was able to consider in closed session, the conference with labor negotiators. The board heard a report, no action was requested and none was taken. The board conducted a conference with real property negotiators. The board heard a report and provided direction. On one of the two items of potential exposure to litigation, the board heard a report. No action was requested, none was taken. That concludes this portion of closed session report out.
Thank you, Karen. So the board will take up its one o'clock timed item, which is an update of our seroprevalence study kicked off by Dave, followed by Dr. Parsonette.
Yep. Good afternoon. Dave DeFonte, Deputy CEO with your county executive office. So I am here today, as noted, to introduce a presentation to your board on the outcomes of our seroprevalence study. And Dr. Parsonette is here on Zoom to give the presentation today. So Stanford has completed the study or is really winding it down right now. And Dr. Parsonette is here to present the outcomes and then answer questions should your board have any. So Dr. Parsonette, and I'm going to read this because it's tough every time, is the George de Forest Barnett Professor of Medicine and Professor of Epidemiology and Population Health with Stanford University. So she's led, and she can elaborate on what that means if you so choose. So she's led the study since its inception, been a fantastic partner, has helped us along the way, kept us very well informed, and will again present the results today. She's been to your board twice in the past and we are graced with her presence yet again. So unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Dr. Parsonette.
Okay. Can you all hear me?
We can. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much for inviting me today. It's really a pleasure to be here for the board supervisors one more time and to present the results of this CERO survey that you asked us to do. I'm sorry, my dog, when she hears me say hello, she thinks, oh, she thinks she's joined in the conversation. So, all right, I'm just going to share my screen here. All right. And I assume you can all see that. So as you know, we were asked to do this CERO survey. And I'll go through in the beginning of this, a little bit about the background of what this CERO survey entails. I'll then go through the methods that we did, the results, how I interpret them and some more thoughts moving forward. And the first thing I'm going to do is open my door so my dog stops barking. All right. I thought I could lock her out, but that didn't work. All right. So in terms of background, in, as you know, we've been having this bad pandemic for a year now, over a year. And we were asked in May, we were approached by the county to talk about how to measure the amount of disease going on in Placer County. And at the time, I have to say that things were not terribly bad in Placer and there was a lot of concern that we were being over, that the public health and the country was being overly cautious, overly restrictive about this disease. So we spent some time going back and forth on how some kind of survey might be able to be done. And finally, we set on a CERO survey and we signed a contract with the aim to estimate the seroprevalence of SARS-CoV-2 in Placer County, extrapolating from a representative sample of 2,000 individuals. And I will say that a CERO survey, just to remind people what the difference is between a CERO survey versus those nasal swab, brain biopsy swabs that people get. The swabs tell you what's going on at a given point in time. So you're infected right now at this point or you're not infected. A seroprevalence study tells you whether you've been infected over the past period of time. For some CERO surveys, it can tell you your lifetime exposure to infections. For SARS-CoV-2, we don't know how long antibodies last, but we know that it can reflect at least six months of prior exposure to SARS-CoV-2. So what we're seeing when we look at CERO prevalence is cumulative incidence or the proportion of people over that whole period of time who've experienced an infection, whether it is asymptomatic or not symptomatic enough to get you to the doctor, or whether it's symptomatic. So to get these 2,000 people, we, that we said we wanted to sample, we sent out 20,000. We sent invitations to 20,000 addresses, 5,000 to start on October 25th, and that was our training exercise. So we got to see where do people respond? So if we send out 5,000 random samples in the county, are, is everybody going to respond or are certain populations going to respond more than others? Then on November 25th, we sent out 10,000 more because we want to focus our attention on those areas of the county that didn't respond effectively the first time around. So we, the ones that answered, responded to our surveys, we, the census tracts that responded well to our surveys, we did pure samples there. And we put the burden of the next mailings on areas where we didn't get a great representation. And then we did the same thing on February 4th. We weren't initially planning on doing that, but because there was a big surge in disease in December and January, we decided to do one final mailing to try to pick up that surge that had happened and get a better picture of what's going on right now. And then we closed our database on March 5th for this presentation. We are continuing to get data in, people are continuing to send us samples, we're continuing to get results. But we had to at some point say, okay, we're going to close it right now and so we could do this presentation today. We are still analyzing those data. We are still going to give those people those results and we will eventually, when we do our final report, it will be all the data, not, not just the data up to March 15th. So why, why do we do this? We do it to see in an unbiased way who's been infected and what populations are at risk. And when I say unbiased, I mean, when we do other sorts of surveys, if you have people who, if you take it from leftover remnants serum from hospitals, for instance, or blood bank serum, those people are very biased and we don't, we don't, they're biased in that we don't know how they represent the county at large. So we want to try to get everybody in the county and we want to know how they represent the county at large. So because we've done this by mailings, we not only can, we can fix the biases that we find. We can say, oh, well, we've got too many people here. What would this look like if we adjusted it for what's really there, the population that's really there? So that's why we do the mailing is we feel like we're more likely to get an unbiased sample and to get every kind of group that lives in the county. We did, we wanted to do this because we wanted to get asymptomatic infection rates. When you just do swabs, you're really focusing on people who are symptomatic, not asymptomatic. We wanted to estimate the infection fatality rate. So the only way to know what proportion of infected people die of the infection is to know how many people are actually infected. And not just the symptomatic infections, but everybody that's infected, symptomatic, asymptomatic and mild symptoms. We wanted to determine where vaccinations might have the greatest impact. And after vaccination started in January, really, we wanted to see their impact on population immunity. So this is a summary of who we contacted. In the first mailing, we sent out these 4,990 mailings. You could see that we had about a 9% response rate. And of those, we had more than one person per household that on average give us a blood sample. And then some people gave us a blood sample but didn't answer the questionnaire. So these group at the bottom that gave us a blood sample and a questionnaire are the people that we are really interested in. And this is the total. We said we wanted to get 2,000 and we got 2,000. So we're very happy with that. We actually have more because we have some people who have not, who we have come in since then. And we also have some people who answered questionnaires, which are very valuable in and of themselves, but did not provide blood. And we have some people who provide blood samples but didn't answer the questionnaires. And this also does not include the 38 children who participated in the study. We excluded children from the study, but people included, people sent us blood spots from their children anyway. We gave them their results, but they're not included in the data that we present here. So this is where we reached them. And there are two graphs here, and I'll talk about the one on the top left first. The one on the top left just shows of all the people that we sampled, what, what percent were represented in each census tract. So each of these areas is a census tract. And the main point I want to point out in this upper left graph, the purple one, is that the color is pretty uniform across the entire thing. So across the entire county with one exception that I'll get to. And it's indicating that we hit every census tract and we hit them pretty proportionately. So our strategy of mailing out more to certain counties was good in that from each census tract, we have a similar number of people in each sense, a similar proportion of people in each census tract who have answered, which is exactly what we were trying to do. There is one exception, which you can see up here, which is in the Kings Beach area. And the reason that one is high, we're not quite, we're working with MSG, our marketing firm, to figure it out. But those were largely post office boxes rather than addresses. And my sense is that a lot of those people actually lived in a different census tracts than where their post office box is. So actually, some of these areas are, it's a little bit hard in that particular area to know exactly precisely the geolocation of the sampling. The bottom right graph is the response rates. So I said that we got a fairly even response across the county in terms of number of people. But that doesn't mean that within each census tract, the same proportion responded. And the lighter areas are areas that we sent a lot of, a lot of requests, a lot of invitations and had a low response rate, but we still ended up with a good number in the end. And I want to point out that a lot of these represent areas of Hispanic ethnicity. We knew that we were likely to get a lower response, even though we sent everything out in English and Spanish. We were concerned that we might get lower response rates in certain socioeconomic groups in, in, in the Latinx population potentially, because that's been seen in other studies. And in some areas in which the socioeconomic status may be somewhat lower. And so we tended to get lower response rates there, but because we flooded them with invitations, we ended up with similar numbers in those census tracts as in other areas. But there are still biases and on the, here you'll see on the left column, sort of the strat, the various strata that we looked at. In the third column there, you'll see this, what's, what the Placer County census looks like. And then what our sample looks like in the next column. And you'll see the ones that are circled in red are ones that we have, that we were really off. And so we have an oversample of the elderly. They responded more to our, to our requests than, than the census. Now, we also asked for more of them because we want to get more data on the elderly. So I'm not surprised by that. We have somewhat less in Hispanic Latinx population than is represented in the county. And the biggest difference, I think, is in education level. The people who tended to respond were more likely to have a bachelor's degree or a graduate degree. And then the population that, that didn't, that did not respond. So, but again, because we have the data of this very granular data from the county and because we're working with the marketing firm that provides us with this data, we are able to adjust for those. We've started doing that. The data that I'm presenting to are unadjusted for the county. But we have done some of it and I'll show you that it does change things, but not very much. Just so you could see which areas, the yellow or South Placer, or like the bright green or mid Placer and the dark green or East Placer. And forgive me if we put some of these cities in somewhat wrong spaces. But you could see that we've hit every town, we've hit them proportionate, more or less to their size. And you could just basically see where we have seen infections. And I'll get into that in a little more detail as we go forward. And, oh, by the way, these include not just natural infections, but some of these people have been vaccinated and their antibodies are positive because they've been vaccinated. I just want to digress one second and say that the antibody test that we are using does detect vaccination. That's not true for all antibody tests. So there are some antibody tests that other people do that look for the nucleocapsid. Those will differentiate between vaccination antibodies and natural antibodies from infection. Ours does not do that, but we do ask people if they're vaccinated. So we know which is which. So just to give you a sense of where these, where we found antibodies, and these are all antibodies, including vaccination. Didn't really seem to matter much whether you were in the east, the south, or the middle part of the county. You're all about the same. It looked like over the entire period of time from October through middle of March, about 10%, little less, 9% of the population had antibodies. And I will say that that's pretty darn low. So anybody who is hoping, you know, at the end of 2020 to have herd immunity, we're way below that. But I also point out that this is from the whole period and what we're really interested in is what is the status now? And I'll give you that information moving forward. So looking at who is seropositive among this entire group, it really didn't matter whether you were male or female. Female slightly higher seropositivity rates. If you look by age, it's slightly, there is a U-shaped curve where the younger population is, seems to be somewhat more likely to be in, have antibodies and the older population. This is only unvaccinated, by the way. Unlike that past graph, which was vaccinated, unvaccinated. This is only unvaccinated people. You could see only 3% here is pretty low. There is a slightly higher rate among Hispanic Latinx population, but the numbers here are too small for us to really say that's statistically significant. The most, the most pronounced difference is by education again, that the lower, the lower education, so less than or just, or high school education was the highest rate and those who have graduate degrees are the lowest rates of infection. Looking at when people became infected, this is why I think we need to really focus on 2021 rather than 2020. Most people acquired their infections in February and March, or acquired their antibodies in February and March. They actually acquired, this line is the, the line of the infections that have been reported in Placer. The scales are different, so don't pay attention to the absolute numbers when you're looking at that darker blue line. But you could see that the big peak of infections happened in January, starts to really go up in January and continue December and January. And you could see our lines of antibodies starting to go up, happens a few weeks later. And that's the truth about antibodies. They occur about to, start to really build about two weeks after infection exposure. So you could see that the antibodies are lagging a bit behind the actual infection rates. But again, we go from having, you know, very few in October and November to having 12.5% of people have naturally acquired infections in March. So there was a big bump. So looking at those, oh, I just want to mention one other thing about this. This is where I can mention about the adjusting. When we adjusted for the county. So we took it and we said, okay, we studied these people, but actually the people in the county are different and if we adjust for that, that 7.2% in February that you see there, it would have been 7.1%. And the March would have gone point 12.5 to 13.3. So they do change, the numbers change by, by adjusting for the county, but they don't change a lot. So we then tried to estimate what is the, the underreported infection rate or the unreported infection rate. So by March 1st, when, when looking at Placer, the public health department had reported close to 20,000 diagnosed cases of COVID. We observed that, looking at that 12.5% number I gave you, that there were close to 50,000 real cases based on antibodies. If we extrapolate that 12.5% to the 400,000 people that live in, in Placer County, we would have ended up with about 50,000 cases. We also know that our test is imperfect and that it may miss up to 20% of cases because their antibodies haven't occurred yet or they're just antibody negative. Some people never develop antibodies. And with that, we estimate that there might be 62,000, have been 62,000 cases in Placer County. And that means about 68% of cases would have gone unreported. So again, that's 19,000 diagnosed cases and 62,000 cases that actually occurred. That number is pretty consistent with what we've seen on a national level. So on a national level in July, there were 86% of cases were underreported. In January, it was 78% underreported. But as we've gotten much better at diagnosing, have people more likely to come in and get surveyed, these numbers are continuing to drop. So the 68% that's seen in, in Placer County is pretty reassuring that we're, we're pretty much on target with what might be expected in, in the county. So I think that that's the real number, about the real number, about 62,000. To look at the infection fatality rate, by March 1st, Placer had 232 deaths. If we have those 62,000 cases I just mentioned, the infection fatality rate is about 0.37%, meaning about 1 in 300 people with this infection would die. And again, looking nationally and internationally at what that is, this is the model on the bottom left is the IHME model that looks at what they think the infection fatality rate is by age. And if we assume that this population on average is about 40, then we're right on target with what they're saying the infection fatality rate should be. They have it about 0.5% and we had 0.37%. And in Sweden, in, in US, it was 0.65% in September and in Sweden, 0.58% in December. But again, we're getting better at treating this. We have monoclonal antibodies, we have better hospital care, we're detecting people earlier. And so this 0.37% is again reassuring that we have pretty much on, we're, we're, the CERO survey is probably pretty close to what we would expect to see. So I just want to, now I want to show a little bit about the antibody titers. So on this graph, you see the, the titer of the antibody. And you'll, at the bottom, you'll see this optical density, which is representative of the amount of antibody that people have. And in general, there is some correlation between, not perfect, but there is a correlation between the amount of antibody you have and your ability to actually neutralize the virus and keep it at bay. The red line that you see in the middle is the, where we have the cutoff for positive. And you can see the great, this is everybody again, the 2,000 people that we studied. The vast majority of these people are over here. They're not immune. They don't have any identification of having any antibodies. And then here is this 9% that I talked about, which is over here. And what I do want to point out is that a lot of these people are vaccinated. And so the blue dots are people who are fully vaccinated, which means they're more than two weeks after their second vaccine. The dark green dots are people who are between their first and second vaccine. And the light green dots are people who are early post their first vaccine. So I also want to point out that when you are early after your first vaccine, you are not likely to be immune. And this is the same thing again, but this is now looking only at the people who could have been vaccinated. So this is after January. So you'll see a lot less gray dots here because these are only people after the beginning of 2021. Instead of 2,000 people, there are 776 people here. And again, what you notice is, and here, there's actually something different, which is that there are these triangles. And these are people who were diagnosed with COVID. So they told us in their surveys they had COVID. And you'll see that there are a lot of triangles that are very close to this line or even below the line. So there are quite a number of people diagnosed with COVID who have had a positive swab, whose antibody titers, they may be close to the line, but they're not really high. There's also a lot of people who are, have a single dose of vaccine and even some with early, later, after the first one and before the second or early after the second, before they, we think they would be immune, that are below this line. before they, we think they would be immune, that are below this line. But again, every blue dot of the fully vaccinated people is up here. And I'll also point out that the vaccinated people have much higher antibody titers on average. These blue dots are much better than anybody who's had natural infection, except for the people who have natural infection who've also been vaccinated. So these, these vaccines work really well. They're producing high antibodies, but they don't work really well early on. And people who are early on, this is just again, another warning that early on, after vaccination, you have to take the same precautions that you did without vaccination. Just to show you what vaccines have done for the county, they basically doubled the proportion of people who are immunoh, who are, have, who are seropositive and potentially immune. So the vaccination is doing pretty well. If we adjust for the county here in March, it actually goes from this about 24% to a little over 26% in, in March that might be considered having antibodies. And at the rate people are infecting, we're, we're doing better and better and better over time. So the vaccination is working well and certainly working much better than had we waited for herd immunity naturally. And this again shows you the sero status by whether you've gotten one or two doses. These are people who've gotten two doses, all of them look great. These are people who've partially vaccinated, so they've gotten one dose and they're more than 14 days after their first dose. These are the people who are early after their post-vaccine. And these are people who are not vaccinated. So I also just want to mention here that, looking at the time, these are by month, and you can see that all these really high numbers are people who are recently. And again, this is because these are the people who are getting vaccinated, who are the squares and the triangles. So the real immunity that we're seeing now is vaccine-induced. And that's what's helping, it's going to help suppress infection in Placer County. So here are some of the less positive things. You're not necessarily vaccinating everybody. So looking at who gets vaccinated, here you see the blue is one dose and the red is two doses and everybody else on these is, is gray. And this is only going up to 20% on this graph, so you have to imagine the whole 100% goes up a lot higher. And people who are highly educated are getting vaccinated. People who have less education are not getting vaccinated. And if you again look at the Latinx Hispanic ethnicity, you're seeing that their vaccination levels are also considerably lower with only a very small percentage, I think it's 3%, have gotten one dose of vaccine. Now again, the numbers here are small. We had only about 80 people overall who were vaccinated, but these are very highly statistically significant differences. I'm just going to end by two other slides. And one is just, this was not part of our mandate, but something, we asked a lot of questions in our questionnaire that are a little bit orthogonal to the, orthogonal to the original plan. And one of them was just looking at behaviors. So we asked people how they were behaving. And I will say that people are behaving pretty well. They're trying really hard. And I think if you look at masking at the upper left, if you look over time, people are really masking all the time. Now again, March is a small number, but if you put March and February together, you'll see that almost everybody who we surveyed was masking mostly or all the time. If you look at activities, there was a bad little blip here in November where you see that people did not severely restrict their activity as much anymore. The severe restrictions are blue and green. They sort of opened up a little bit, and that's probably about the Thanksgiving holiday. And maybe people are getting a little tired and they're, they're less severely limiting their time, but their activities. But they are, they're, most people are still trying hard to restrict their activities as much as they can. And those are really important. And hand washing is, you know, has not changed too much over time. I do want to mention though, that I also looked at some of these activities by age and by vaccine status. And the interesting thing to me is you would think that the people who are vaccinated would be the ones who are lightening up and being more active and masking less. But in fact, that's not so. When we looked at the data, it's the people who are not vaccinated who are really doing less masking and they're doing more activities. And when we look by age, the elderly and the older populations, they are still masking and doing all the right things. But it's the younger age groups that people are really being more cavalier about their activities. And I'll point out that these are the populations that are not getting vaccinated. So you have this combination of the unvaccinated people being at higher risk for not doing the protective behaviors recommended by the health department and are also the ones who are out and about. And that is, I think, a problem and a real reason why we need to expand vaccination and really push harder on accessing populations that are more resistant to vaccine right now. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of interpretation and then some final comments. As of mid-March, Placer County is nowhere near the threshold for herd immunity. And I'm going to come back to that in a minute. The county is making good progress since vaccination was initiated. And I'm sure that if we surveyed again today, we'd even see it being much better. People are vaccinated on average, have much higher antibody titers, indicating a higher probability that they're immune than people who acquired infection naturally. There are certain subsets of the population as of mid-March who are not accessing vaccination. And specifics of these data, but not the major thrust, are going to change as we adjust for county demographics. And the changes so far have not been terribly pronounced. So I want to stop by just mentioning herd immunity because it has become this word that everybody seems to talk about. And my recommendation is people stop talking about it. Herd immunity is a, is a theoretical concept that's been devised by modelers and epidemiologists as an exercise to try to understand how vaccines would work and how population interventions will work. But what we really want to do, the whole goal of all of this that we're doing is to try to reduce the number of susceptible people in a population. And if you reduce the number of people who can get infection, then the infection will disappear. And one way you can reduce the number of people who are susceptible is to put on a mask. Because if you put on a mask, you reduce how susceptible you are. And that reduces the risk for everybody in the county. Every time somebody wears a mask, it reduces the risk for everybody in the county by reducing the number of susceptibles. By staying home more, you're reducing susceptibility of everybody in the county. And by vaccinating, you're reducing the susceptibility of everybody in the county. And every single person who does that reduces the risk for the entire county and raises the probability that the disease will disappear and continue to disappear over time. So in the end, I will just say that there are really some optimistic signs that Placer County is going the right place. And there are some signs that there are portions, portions of the population that are not as receptive to the messages and are not getting vaccinated and are not as receptive to the public health messages. And I think this can give you some ideas of where to push and moving forward. And I also do want to mention that along this entire time that I've been working with Placer, I've been very impressed by the quality of your public health group. And I think, again, I'm very happy to see how hard they've worked, how effectively. And I'm looking forward to seeing how this improves as we go through to the summer. So thank you very much.
Well, again, Dr. Parsonet, thanks. Yeah, I know you went above and beyond with your colleagues and staff to have, we started out as a three-county effort and I guess we got kind of broken up because we were aggressive about wanting to continue and you did a great job in responding. And then on behalf of the board, I want to share with you our high regard for our public health staff. We think they're the best and have done just a fascinating job, excellent job. And in fact, we opened up vaccinating to 16 and above age on Sunday, I believe. So we're happy about that. But it sounds like a couple of obvious takeaways are, one, the vaccine literally is a godsend. And then two, it sounds like we have a couple of demographic tiers that we might, could focus down, focus on more intensely as it relates to communicating to them the vaccine and opportunity and the importance of that. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, I think it is accurate. And I, I do think that there is a sense that, that I hear in my own personal life here, working in California, in the Bay Area, that especially young people do not need to get vaccinated because they don't get that sick and they don't die. And there's no question that vaccinating the elderly is the best way to reduce death. But vaccinating the young is the best way to reduce disease. Because they're the people who are out and about and they're transmitting it. So when I mean young, I'm talking about young adults here. They're the ones who are really circulating the most and transmitting disease the most. And I will say also that we are seeing a lot of significant disease in the young. We're not seeing deaths as much, although we do see some. But we're seeing a lot of long COVID and we're seeing a lot of people missing work and a lot of people not being able to go back to work. It's a pretty striking how sick some of these people are. So many people I see in our clinical trials say, I just never expected to be this sick. And so I, I do think that for the economy and for reducing transmission overall, it's going to be a challenge, but it's really important to convince young adults that just because they're not going to die doesn't mean they're not going to benefit from vaccination. And certainly the encounter, every single person who's vaccinated will benefit everybody.
On the last, on a personal note, I'll say that we're still pretty enthusiastic agricultural counties. So the cow picture on, on the very end was very much appreciated. And with that, I'll open it up to any of my other colleagues who might have something to say or questions to ask Cindy.
Thank you, Dr. Parsonet. I had a question on, were you, when you were doing the testing, were you looking at the variants? Were you able to detect any variants in those measurements or?
We, we can't look at variants. Antibodies cannot detect the difference in the variants.
Okay.
We do them in Stanford with the medical swabs, but we can't look at variants.
Okay, great. And then when we talked about the demographic groups that weren't getting vaccinated, the study itself was skewed to higher educated folks as well in our sample size, correct?
Yes, and again, we do adjust for that. So we, we wait individuals, and that's why I gave you the corrected numbers. We can wait the individuals in a certain way so that it represents the more, the county more at large. But yes, we do have more educated people. You have a very educated county to begin with, I have to say.
We like to think so. Thank you.
We think we're all above average. Any other questions or comments? Well, seeing none again, thank you very much, Dr. Parsonet. It's been great working with you and appreciate all the work that you've done. And we'll now transition into an update from Dr. Oldham with. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Our clerk of the board has reminded me that we need to take public comment. Is there any public comment, Megan?
There is none.
There is none. So now, Rob, you can continue with your update for us in the county on our COVID policies.
Thank you, Dr. Parsonet.
Great, good afternoon. Thank you Chair Wiegand and members, and thanks to Dr. Parsonet. This is Rob Olden with Health Human Services, doing our monthly HHS COVID response update. And I can bring up the slides now, please. All right, and the next slide, please. So I thought following up on Dr. Parsonet's presentation, I'd start by going over the bad news first, which is our tier assignment is still in red as the result of a modest increase in our case rate here in Placer County. The good news is the rates of hospitalization and severe illness remain relatively low. And so, and actually, that's really good news, the really good news for our businesses is the state has recently announced that counties will not generally be required to move backward toward more restrictive tiers. And also has announced plans to move beyond the statewide blueprint as soon as June the 15th. And so both of those things, not moving backwards in the tiers and moving beyond the blueprint, being contingent upon a few things, including continuing to make good progress on vaccinating the public, which I think we're doing. And then not seeing significant increases in severe illness and hospitalizations, which again, so far looks encouraging. And the final thing is not seeing large numbers of cases of severe illness among people who have been vaccinated, so-called breakthrough cases. So for people who've been vaccinated who get really sick. And so none of those things look like they're, they're happening right now. So that's good news both for, because I know we have had some neighboring counties who have really, you know, their case rates would, would have moved them back to the purple tier. And perhaps we were, you know, our case rate going up as well. So I know there's, nobody wants to go back to the purple tier and looks like that that's probably not going to be happening. And then this, this idea of moving beyond the blueprint in mid-June also looks, looks encouraging. Next slide, please. And so the, the main reason, I think I'm, you know, I can say pretty confidently that things are moving in the right direction is really related to our progress towards vaccination of all of Placer. So on April the 1st, we opened up vaccine eligibility to all people aged 50 and older. And really just this week, as Supervisor Wiegand was saying, we've opened up to everyone's age 16 and older. So we're approaching 250,000 doses county-wide administered. And actually, over now 65,000 doses at our county-run clinic, the HHS clinic at The Grounds in Roseville. Also, recently, we've added some, actually some new providers through the federal partnership and other providers coming on, including big, big providers like Walmart and Costco. So our hope is that that's going to make our system less dependent upon our county-run clinic in the future. And then again, continuing the theme, for most of Placer County, our vaccine administration capacity greatly exceeds the vaccine supply. Although we have hope that this month in April and certainly by early May, vaccine supply will continue to ramp up. But speaking of vaccine supply, you may have seen the announcement from the federal CDC this morning of a nationwide pause on the administration of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine to allow an investigation of six cases of blood clots, these dangerous blood clots in women aged 18 to 48. And it, we haven't seen any of those cases among people who received the J&amp;J vaccine in Placer County. And I think it's important to point out, there's been over 7 million Johnson &amp; Johnson doses administered nationwide. So these six cases, although serious and should be investigated, do represent a very rare event. So this, there's a short-term, short-term pause on the, in the administration anticipated. They're talking about potentially just a few days. And if it just remains a short-term pause, it really have, we anticipate minimal impact on the county's mass vaccination clinic at The Grounds, which has primarily leveraged Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. But some targeted operations in hard-to-reach communities, including some that, you know, Dr. Parsonet was talking about, those could experience greater impact. So it's something we are monitoring carefully. Some healthcare partners, particularly pharmacies who have received federal allocations of Johnson &amp; Johnson, could be more heavily impacted than our clinic at The Grounds and some of our other operations. And so, but overall, we don't think that this is going to have, at least a short-term pause won't have too much of an impact on, on kind of the overall county-wide vaccine distribution effort. As you may remember, we had to adjust to a similar pause on a batch of Moderna vaccines back in January to allow time for investigation of reports of anaphylaxis. And at that time, we actually had a lot higher percentage of our vaccine supply impacted by that pause. So we're really hoping for a similar outcome with this pause on the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And we see a lot of value in this one-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, especially for the hard-to-reach population. So we'll have our fingers crossed and let, let's report back on how that goes. So next slide, please. Okay, so back, back to the good news. This slide shows the progress that we've been making on vaccinating older adults. So you'll see here for both, you know, 65 and older and even the older, older adults, over 75%, over three-quarters of those groups have received at least one vaccine. So that, that kind of gets back to the question of, you know, are we going to, do we anticipate another surge in hospitalizations or severe illness? And really, it's that group of people 65 plus who are driving much of the surge in hospitalization. So that's why, as long as the vaccine continues to be, you know, effective, and I know we have. have different variants that are circulating, and so there's always caveats. But right now, it looks like that so far, we're not seeing a lot of breakthrough cases. And so hopefully, we'll continue to, you know, we'll probably continue to see lots of spread and like we're seeing areas that have increased cases from time to time, but hopefully not see another surge in hospitalizations like before. A lot of that is focused on the older adults. And so just a reflection on the different tiers and vaccination eligibility, you know, starting with healthcare workers and then, you know, back in late December and early January. And then had a federal partnership. We actually, the county vaccinated a lot of the long-term care facility workers and residents, but also a federal partnership to do so. And then moving into other high-risk groups, you know, older adults and other employment-based tiers for essential workers. So really, the focus on younger people has really just got started. And so, we're encouraged and hopeful that we can have enough vaccine now to meet the needs of younger people. But more importantly, and I'll talk more about kind of addressing, making sure that, some of the data that Dr. Parsonett was showing, the attitude towards vaccination and addressing vaccine hesitancy. All right. Next slide, please. So as I said, we still have a lot of work to do to get more people vaccinated and especially people who are a little hesitant. So public health has a role in that. Certainly, we're going on the record whenever we can to talk about the science that demonstrates that vaccines are safe and very effective, actually. Some of the most effective vaccines that I've seen in my career coming out now with these COVID vaccines. But we also really appreciate other trusted voices who can help us in that messaging. So through our Sleeves Up Placer campaign, we're partnering with other trusted voices in the community to get the word out to everyone in Placer, including those who may not be too eager to listen to government public health officials, that everybody gets the message. And it's really going to take a whole community effort to get everyone vaccinated. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for organizations like the Placer Community Foundation, the Latino Leadership Council, and really many others that have been tremendously valuable partners in this effort. Next slide, please. And on this slide, you'll see some examples of the messaging shared through the Sleeves Up Placer campaign. This campaign recognizes that the reasons why people want to get vaccinated are as diverse as we are and should be understood and celebrated. And at the same time, there are some common themes around those reasons for being vaccinated, like the theme of protecting our loved ones. And those themes can resonate with most of us, even across our differences. Our Sleeves Up campaign has well over a million advertising impressions, has done targeted mailing to over 11,000 households, and is hosting vaccine informational town halls conducted both in English and Spanish. In addition to encouraging people to get vaccinated, we as a community have a lot of work left to do to make sure that everyone who wants to get vaccinated can navigate the system in order to do so. We're hopeful that with the expansion of eligibility to everyone age 16 and older, that a lot of the confusion over who is eligible will go away. We're also hoping that as vaccine supply becomes more available, that appointments will not, will be taken within minutes of being opened up and that the days of people having to scramble to get an appointment are maybe coming to an end. We do anticipate that most providers will continue to schedule most of their appointments online. But calling two-in-one to schedule an appointment is an option for folks who lack internet access, who have trouble navigating the internet. I appreciate the many community partners who've been helping to connect their eligible at-risk clientele with appointments. One example from the Latino Leadership Council is Selena Salas. She's someone who's really just gone above and beyond to help folks connect with appointments. And, you know, there are many others, just naming one as an example. In addition to the outstanding support of many of our community-based organizations, we've also heard of individual community members taking sometimes heroic efforts to assist in vaccine messaging and navigation. And I feel compelled to call out one particular heroic community member, Julie Cortez, who helps run a community-based COVID-19 Facebook page. Julie has spent many hours of her own time connecting residents to appointments and reliable information on vaccines. Julie even helped a local senior trailer park organize a pop-up vaccination event with our partners at Safeway. So thank you to Julie and to many others. As much as a hero as people like Julie have been, you don't have to devote as much time as that to support vaccine uptake here in Placer. If each person just encourages one or two hesitant friends and family members to get vaccinated, or helps one or two technologically challenged loved ones to connect with appointments, we'll be in really good shape as a county. So I want to conclude and get us back on schedule, but in closing, just wanted to take a minute to once again recognize the tremendous work of our HHS team, of all of our partner departments and organizations, and of the community in general in coming together to overcome one huge challenge after another. This pandemic has resulted in me having lots of outstanding IOUs in this department, in HHS and in this community. So look forward to, you know, as we're hopefully on the last leg of this pandemic, to starting to work to pay back some of those debts to so many of you. So thanks again for all of your support, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll kick off one quickly, Rob. So again, thanks to you and your staff, we're the ones indebted. But as a vaccination customer of The Grounds, and again, I was very impressed personally, and everyone that I know who went through that system was also very impressed. But how are they holding up? How, it's been a long haul already with quite some time going forward. Any thoughts you could share with us?
Yeah, no, it's, you know, it has been now, we've been at this for over three months of doing mass vaccination, you know, five days a week pretty much for the past, you know, coming up on four months now, you know, it was late December we started doing these vaccine clinics. But we're unfortunately, you know, rotating out some staff, and so it's all now almost exclusively part-time temporary work. And so, we've had a lot of success in recruiting folks and been able to staff and actually ramp up staff so that we were, you know, at times, we had some days where we were doing close to 2,000 doses a day. So just huge amount of volume going through there. And yeah, it has had some wear and tear, but just I think the staff are hanging in there and are very mission-minded and, you know, I think everyone's wondering, I think the question across the state is how much longer will we be in this mass vaccination game? Actually, the announcement today from CDC around the Johnson &amp; Johnson, kind of bringing that up again, I think, you know, we don't know. We're going to be there as long as we need to be. Certainly, as other healthcare providers build more capacity, our role may change and we may be doing less mass vaccination and more targeted, you know, outreach into some of the hard-to-reach communities. So trying to keep things fresh and moving, but yeah, that group, they've been tremendous, the folks at The Grounds. But again, the whole, all of HHS and all of our partners have really been tremendous and very mission-minded. And so this pandemic has provided a lot of challenges, but also lots of opportunities for people to come together and do, you know, special things.
Thanks. Bonnie, then Cindy.
Thank you, Dr. Oldham. Appreciate the update and we're making good progress, which is wonderful. I need to ask you a point of clarification about the vaccines, because I've heard a couple of things, and so I wanted to just ask you to address it. I've heard that the vaccine provides up to 95% immunity. And then I've heard that the vaccinations just keep people from getting as sick, keeps them getting less sick or out of the hospital. So could you address that and just clarify the efficacy of the vaccines and what that actually means?
Sure. Yeah, I'll try. It's a little bit of a complicated question, because it depends on lots of things, including which vaccine. But I'll say, in general, you know, the initial data coming out for at least the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, those are the first to get emergency use authorization, were really on their ability to prevent, you know, moderate to severe illness, kind of the illness that requires people getting, seeking medical attention. And so that was the one where it was, yeah, the 95% effective in preventing the severe illness. There've been, so that's what they were approved to do. Subsequently, when we've had other vaccine, you know, the Johnson &amp; Johnson hit the market, we've had new variants. So, you know, in some ways, it's a moving target. So it's tough to compare kind of one vaccine to the other because, for instance, the Johnson &amp; Johnson and subsequent vaccines came about in a world that had variants, whereas Pfizer and Moderna, pretty much, you know, they weren't tested on at the time where we had a very prevalent variant. So it does keep shifting a bit as far as the numbers and the effectiveness. And then also, as more data comes out, we're finding that not only are the vaccines effective in preventing kind of moderate to severe illness, but also in actually preventing you getting enough, having enough vaccine, enough virus in the system to transmit to someone else, which, so that's really the most encouraging data from a public health perspective, is that not only is, you know, success in vaccination curbing, you know, hospitalization, but maybe to a lesser degree, but still to a significant degree, is slowing the spread of illness as well. But they're not, not quite as effective at slowing the spread, so they're, you know, but they're certainly are effective at that and are highly effective, some of the most effective vaccines that we've seen in stopping severe illness.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Cindy.
Thanks, Dr. Oldham. And I did what everybody said about incredible staff and the efforts at The Grounds. And so I hate to ask more, but here it comes. Based on Dr. Parsonett's comments, as well as some of the, our more disadvantaged communities, transit-dependent communities, our Latinx communities, have we considered any pop-up clinics in any of those pocket areas? Or have we mobilized a mobile potential?
Yeah, so far, we've actually had, and by the way, some of the data I may share, you know, from our most recent report, you know, we have the monthly report from our epidemiology team, shows that we're, maybe things are looking a little bit better in the, for the Latinx community than I know the data that was shared earlier. So we are making some headway there. We actually, and I mentioned Latino leadership and other groups that we've partnered with and getting people actually to, not just our clinic at The Grounds, but in other community pharmacies. And so lots of strategies that have helped. And we've been very, you know, hesitant to, you know, from a workforce standpoint to do the, you know, a mobile clinic where we go out. Actually, we were hoping with the Johnson &amp; Johnson that that might be a vaccine with a vaccine handling that would be more amenable to doing those kind of, the things that you see sometimes with the flu, and we used to go to the Mandarin Festival and that sort of thing. So don't anticipate, you know, with Pfizer and Moderna, those types of outreach, but potentially with Johnson &amp; Johnson in the future. But I'll say, we've been, you know, pretty successful in partnering and getting, you know, doing outreach just to get people to, you know, we have lots and lots of, I think, 20-plus now, maybe 30-plus pharmacies online, plus lots of other providers. We've been supplying vaccines to our pharmacy partners like Safeway that have also stood up some community-based clinics. I mentioned the one that Julie Cortez helped to stand up. So there are some of those through the pharmacy partners. And I do anticipate public health doing more of that in the future. But right now, I mean, I think there's still a huge demand for us to stick to the mass vaccination for a little bit longer.
I appreciate that. And you're tracking those geographies and populations, so you know. But I just support any efforts, especially in our Kings Beach community up in Tahoe, where I want to make sure those folks have an opportunity. They work throughout the community and are so critical to our economy, and yet, most of the clinics are not giving Saturday vaccinations, so, weekend vaccinations. So Tahoe Forest is midweek as well, so just making sure we're doing that. And then just as in general, our J&amp;J, what was the percentage of vaccines of Placer County received that were J&amp;Js?
Yeah, I'm trying to do some quick mental math. I would say less than 10% for sure. I think less than 5%. I think we just had like 300 at The Grounds this week that we're rescheduling, I believe, over to Pfizer. I believe, you know, we were allocating some of that to individual clinics. I know our jail medical provider, so I believe the total allocation for the week was about 700, so maybe it's about 10% or so of our, of the allocation with Johnson &amp; Johnson. So not a huge, not a huge percentage.
So you've been able to reschedule those folks by and large? Do you know, I mean, you've probably just, I mean, we all woke up to the news, so.
Yeah, no, no, actually, they don't need to reschedule. We're just replacing for those who were slated to get, at least at The Grounds, who were slated to get the J&amp;J, what I believe will be getting either Pfizer or Moderna. I'm not, I'm not exact.
Yeah, so you're making that, and we just don't know if any of the other providers had to cancel appointments and those people are scrambling.
I haven't heard of anyone that's had to yet. Again, it's been very, very few providers that have been getting Johnson &amp; Johnson. The one, I mentioned some of the big pharmacies that have federal partnerships, so we're not a party to that federal partnership, and they, I think some of them were getting Johnson &amp; Johnson. So those will probably be, we haven't connected with them yet today, but those are some of the ones that are, that might be more impacted. But most of the other healthcare providers were like the clinic at The Grounds, where J&amp;J was only a small percentage. And they, my team, as I'm talking, have confirmed that it will be Pfizer for those who are scheduled at The Grounds tomorrow to get Johnson &amp; Johnson, it will be Pfizer.
Great. Thank you.
Suzanne.
Yes, hi, Dr. Oldham. I was just going to ask a couple more questions about the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Do you anticipate that we're going to be getting any significant amount of Johnson &amp; Johnson in the future?
Yeah, yeah, that was the hope. Again, we're really hopeful about the Johnson &amp; Johnson because it's the one dose. And so, because of the pause, actually, sort of like with the Moderna, we'll just hold on to that Johnson &amp; Johnson. And, you know, we're hopeful that this will be investigated and we'll be able to use it again, once the concerns are addressed. And so, yes. But in addition to the stuff, the Johnson &amp; Johnson that we have that we'll keep on hand, we do anticipate that supply growing. You know, the other hurdle that I didn't talk about was the manufacturing problem. So they had some problems at a manufacturing plant for Johnson &amp; Johnson. And so it took a lot of the Johnson &amp; Johnson we were anticipating to get this month, we did not receive. But still, that is the hope, that it will ramp up and we'll get a lot of this. It's a very effective vaccine, the Johnson &amp; Johnson is. And again, just with one dose, it has a lot of value to us, particularly as we start to do, doing more of that community outreach and trying to go to, after hard-to-reach populations, because then we just have to reach them once as opposed to reaching folks twice.
I know. When I, I saw that appointments were available, so I went online to see if there was the option of getting a Johnson &amp; Johnson. And it didn't seem like it was an option. It looked like there was only the availability of Pfizer. So does that kind of preclude people from being able to pick and choose for themselves which one they want?
Yeah, we had a small number of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Again, it kind of varies by week. This week, we did have, I believe, 300 appointments at The Grounds and some other, others had, you know, other providers had small numbers of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Of course, now you don't have that option at all until the pause is over.
Great. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
Caller with telephone number 8252, please unmute your mic and give your comments. If your phone number is 916-521-8252, please unmute your mic.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Hi. Sorry, it just allowed me to unmute. I just have a couple of questions regarding vaccine hesitancy, especially given the recent news. I think it's understandable that people could be hesitant. So if our metric about opening is based on that, I'm kind of wondering how the board is going to address that.
Pardon? We need one.
If one of the metrics for reopening in two months, but the governor is allowing us to do.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If one of the metrics.
Could you give us your name for the record? We need that for record. I apologize.
Oh, Pam Rapp.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, the board has not specifically addressed that issue, but I'm presuming that to the extent that our staff come back, comes back and says that they're dissatisfied with their ability to encourage people to be vaccinated and they needed some help with that, I'm confident the board would be very. that, I'm confident the board would be very aggressive in trying to do that.
Okay. So my thought is, you know, this falls in the realm of personal choice and the individuals know their health conditions and their risk factors potentially more than people that are working in the government. And if we can only open if we get so many vaccinations, or we have so many cases, which we'll never have zero cases, we, once we have a disease, there's never zero cases. It's never truly eradicated. So I think that the metrics might not align with us ever opening.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Kathleen, go ahead and unmute your mic, give your comments.
Good afternoon, Dr. Oldham and Chair Wiegand and the Board of Supervisors. My name is Kathleen Crawford, and I've addressed you a number of times on this issue. I'm very pleased to have listened to the entirety of Dr. Parsonet's remarks and the slides. I think they're very valuable and can easily be shared. And I would hope that that is part of the overall message from the county, that really the only way we're going to get out of this is vaccination and that herd immunity is a ghost dream out there. So really targeting our message to those groups who need to be reassured and encouraged and, you know, kind of propped along until they are understanding and accept this, I think is really important. I also think that the fact that we're talking about people in their 20s, 30s, and 40s is an entirely different message. As you know, I'm a senior and I'm one of the 20, the 75% who are, who were first in line and got our shot three to four weeks later on the day that it was available. So, but I think that there's still some concern in the older community, the senior community, about the numbers of slightly increasing infection rate and the fact that we don't seem to have a good handle on it here in the county in terms of that infection rate. So I think that the targeted messages really need to move to that younger group and do everything that we can to encourage them to do that as quickly as possible. I'm, I know that I have family who are graduating high school students, and so they're very eager to get on and get a vaccination so that they can move on to college and community college and feel that their lives are going to become better as well. So I'm really pleased to see that we're where we are, but there's still a lot of work to do. And I don't want us to get overconfident that it's going to go away because, as we see in Michigan, there's a big problem out there in some places. And dealing with the vaccine hesitancy is a huge issue because here in Placer County, we have a fairly active anti-vaccination crowd back before COVID. The schools have had a problem with parents not wanting to vaccinate their children. And although I understand it's a personal choice, it's also a public health issue. So how we address that going forward, because we're going to have children going back to school in the fall, and many of whom will not yet be eligible for vaccines unless they really manage to drop the age group down below 12. So it's, it's, it's an ongoing issue, and I really appreciate the thoroughness of the two reports we've heard today. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment.
Excuse me, Suzanne, you have your light on.
Yes, I had one more comment. I wanted, or actually, a question for Dr. Oldham.
Sure.
Dr. Oldham, I was kind of curious that I know our numbers in Placer County always seem to be a little bit high. And I'm wondering, we don't have the ability to distinguish who are Placer County residents and who are not Placer County residents. For instance, if they're Sacramento County residents who come over into Placer County because our hospitals are so much nicer. But, you know, is there any way just to kind of calm the people in Placer County that, you know, just kind of a FYI, that how many of the cases that are in Placer County are Placer County residents?
Yeah, as far as cases, and I agree with you, we do have very nice hospitals. But, yeah, they have some nice hospitals in Sacramento County, too. But, yeah, but as far as the cases go, yeah, that, we do know that a lot of, there's a lot of movement between hospitals. Right now, you know, over, you know, across hospitals, hospitalizations are down dramatically. And it's been a while since hospitalizations were really included in the peer assignment and the restrictions. I think that that was, you know, the hospitalizations was brought up again as, you know, I know we talked, we had a regional stay-at-home order based on regional ICU beds, that kind of county-by-county hospitalization rate. I don't think that's what they're talking about. I think this June, the 15th date, the caveat on that, and I do think we'll, they will move beyond the blueprint around, around then, but the caveat on moving beyond the blueprint was to say, well, that this all assumes we don't have another overwhelming surge of hospitalizations, really statewide. So I don't anticipate county-by-county hospitalization rates, because you're right, that is, there's lots of, you know, movement across county lines. And yet, we have lots of people from other counties who come to our hospitals in Placer County. As far as other, you know, as far as vaccinations, there is some spillover between, I know when we were doing, you know, we, we are vaccinating now people who live and work in Placer County. So if you're a neighboring county resident and work in Placer County, we're vaccinating. I think all the other counties are kind of following suit. As we have more and more vaccine, I think that becomes less of a relevant issue. Actually, the MyTurn system, which we'll be transitioning to, the vaccine signup system, it allows people to cross county lines as well. So I think the, in the initial phases, we were really concerned about, you know, county, you know, county of residence and the vaccine distribution. I think now it's probably becoming less relevant as we have more vaccine supply.
Thank you.
Cindy.
I had one more question to Dr. Oldham. And I have such a basic understanding of this, so forgive my ignorance, but the, the issues with those who choose for personal choice not to get vaccinated, they become likely, or the more non-vaccinated people there are, the more likely we are to see variants develop. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. And I think actually, Dr. Parsonet was kind of speaking to this a little bit. So the variants are more likely to, you know, take hold in communities that are not vaccinated, but also that do more, you know, more mixing. And to the extent that we can both, you know, continue to encourage, you know, people taking steps to prevent the spread and getting vaccinated, that's going to be the best thing we can do to try to slow, slow the variants.
Great. Well, thank you. I know that in talking to folks that, you know, there's certainly people that have health risks and don't want to take, that don't want to be vaccinated for that reason. But I think it's helpful to explain to folks that they're really putting our whole society at risk when they're choosing, making that choice as well potentially with those variants. And for those who haven't seen the 60 Minutes special this last Sunday night, that was really fascinating on the work that's been done in the military about the pandemics and the research and the whole RNA research that was done that led to these vaccines. So pretty phenomenal. I recommend it as a basic education for those of us who don't do what you do every day. So anyway, thank you, Dr. Oldham.
Great, thank you. And speaking of, you know, you're mentioning the people with the health issues. Yeah, one, this is, these vaccines are highly effective, and even compared to other vaccines that we have in our public health portfolio, they're, they're very effective. The other is there are very few groups that can't get vaccinated. So some vaccines have, you know, certain contraindications for people with certain groups. And so for the most part, people with lots of health issues actually need the vaccine worse than, you know, more than, than, than others do. So that's one of the other nice things about the vaccines that have come to market so far is they're encouraged for just about everyone.
Well, thank you again, Dr. Oldham.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. So we'll now go to our 10:50 timed item. I apologize again for. Even at that clock. So I apologize again, Steve, but the way of this particular day, I guess. And it's a code compliance program update.
Yes, Steve Padredie, Community Development Director, once again, confident you're saving the best for last, or near last, anyway. This is a status update on the code compliance program. The code enforcement, I think, as you're well aware, is a tough gig. The folks that do this work have to try to balance property owner rights versus the rights of their neighbors or even the community as a whole. Tim Wagner and I were talking yesterday about it, actually about building, but about the differences of a purely academic review of building plans or of code enforcement versus more the real life and all the nuances that you have to deal with. Because there are a lot. It's not just strict black and white. And so really, kudos to the staff that do this work. And I'm sure when Tim gets up and speaks, he'll, he'll speak to his folks. We've had a lot of growth over the past four years. The cannabis program was created in 2017. At the end of 2019, we created the short-term rental program. And then five months later, the hazardous vegetation program was created. So Tim's been very busy with all of these. I always joke with him that he's, you know, he doesn't have time to be the chief building official because of all the code enforcement programs he's been instituting. We also looked at an abandoned vehicle program, which we had in Sacramento County. It's a very worthwhile program. There's some benefits. It's also because of some institutional problems that have been created over the past decade or so, it's much more difficult to institute. And we met on that a couple of weeks ago. Tim will, Tim will mention that as well. All of these programs are controversial. They're emotional to those involved, and they're not very easy to implement. There are a lot of partners, the sheriff, the fire, fire marshal, environmental health, and a lot of others. And so as a result of that, these programs have been evolving. And we put some of them together pretty quickly. The hazveg and the short-term rental definitely got put together quickly. We had a presentation on short-term rental a couple of weeks ago, so I won't dwell on that too much, other than it was impacted by COVID. We have evolved that program, moved it up the hill. It's now entirely at Tahoe office. The Cedar office up there is handling that program. Hazardous vegetation, it started the program last year. This is the first real year of enforcement. We've been working closely with Ryan Wassner, the fire marshal. He is here, if you have any questions for him. But this will be the first year where I think enforcement is more likely to occur. Cannabis has been successful. There are, and staffing issues isn't right, it's the type of positions that we're allowed to use for this program that have, are somewhat problematic, and Tim will talk about that today. Tim has led this program for many years. He's done a good job putting these programs together, and he'll be making the bulk of the report today. However, the workload continues to increase, as we talked about last week on the building side. We, last year, had a record year. At this point, we're more than 30%, have more than 30% increase in applications over last year's record year. And we've been somewhat short on experienced managers and supervisors in building, building services at this point. And my current priority is really trying to keep up with the development that's occurring. So we're looking to get Tim more full-time on the code enforcement. Luckily, we have a little bit of flexibility. The program, you know, in a lot of places is in a planning department. Some places it's separate, some it's in building. In this case, we happen to have George Rososco, who had, was supervising the code enforcement program back during the recession, when we had a shortage of work and staff, then he was moved over. So he's got some experience. And so for at least the time being, I'm looking to move the program into the, into planning with flexibility. If things change over time, it can, that can change. With that, we'll start working on that transition fairly soon. But it's just the workload right now and with the priority of trying to keep up with the development, I think that's my priority. So that's where, kind of where we're going at this point, and wanted to give you a heads up on that. And with that, I'd like to introduce Tim Wagner, who is our Deputy Director over Buildings Services and, and the code enforcement.
Thanks, Steve.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Formerly was going to say good morning, Chairman Wiegand, members of the board, but appreciated, understand you have a busy schedule and lots of activities going on. Tim Wagner, Deputy Director at Cedar here, just to give you an update on the, really the great things that men and women are doing over in co-compliance and the things that they're accomplishing these days. First, I'd like to compliment the team on a job well done. Their dedication and commitment to the community is outstanding. Despite the pandemic, late night and evening requests for service, the team was always ready. With the STR program, co-compliance has become a seven-day-a-week operation. During COVID, the team members selflessly supported Tahoe due to the volume of complaints about travelers during the stay-at-home order, and I commend the team for its commitment. If I can take a moment to recognize each of them, the team members, that is, they may be here and they may be online, but Helen and Jamie, the supervisors, both new positions this year, have really done an excellent job leading the team. The officers, Ben, Estelle, Marina, Tim Jaikle, our newest Chris for the, for traditional and STR, they continue to provide exceptional daily service. Steve Renz, Steve Solomon, Joe Zanarini, our seasonal officers, services the dispensable space and cannabis officer programs with excellent customer service each day. And for the backbone of the team, so I have Talia, Johanna, and Whitney, they can be counted on each day to offer their assistance and support. So I just wanted to say thank you to the team for an outstanding year. So what's the co-compliance team really been up to? You heard from Steve quite a bit over the last 10 years. The administrative hearing program in 2010, the cannabis enforcement program in 2016, the short-term rental program in 2019, hazardous vegetation update in 2020. And so I'll share a bit about each of these programs, really starting with traditional code. Traditional code consists of zoning, building, grading, and dangerous building enforcement. The traditional co-compliance team continues to receive approximately 600 complaints a year. Of those, about half are referred or unfounded, so the team really services around 300 complaints. Two supervisors, again, as I mentioned, lead four officers in this effort, three here in Auburn, one in Tahoe. Each officer services about 75 cases, and most complaints fall into four categories. And last year, there were about 43 incidental camping homelessness-type cases, 41 improper use cases, and that can be businesses in the wrong district. It can be noise, it can be other incompatibilities, 74 accessory structure, accessory storage or hoarding cases, and 64 building without permit cases. These cases are typically neighbors calling to complain about incompatibility and the loss of community harmony. And incidental camping and building without benefit of permits are on the rise these days. The team is grappling with how to resolve these matters today. All co-compliance cases are written complaint-driven. Officers typically don't pick up violations unless significant safety is at play. And we are required by law to protect the reporting party in all cases. So we do encourage folks, if they're seeing something that they're not sure of, to call into co-compliance and file a complaint, and we can get a look at that. Traditional co-compliance, program costs come to the county at about 1.2 million per year to operate, and that's just for the traditional piece. So with the cannabis enforcement program, again, it consists of cannabis cultivation and any commercial cannabis enforcement. The program adopted, your board adopted cannabis regulations again in 2016. The team was developed in 2017, and they receive around 200 complaints a year on average, with the majority of cases relating to outdoor grows. The team curbed approximately 78 million worth of street-valued cannabis in 2019. And last year, quite a bit less, at 18 million, but that was mostly due to the pandemic because we got started late in the year with the, with the stay-at-home order and contact. So we had a very short condensed season, as you could imagine. Again, this program's two extra help officers or consultants, along with one shared permanent senior clerk. And shift and employment law practices, as Steve mentioned, encourage the team to look for two permanent officers this upcoming budget cycle. I'd really like to thank the sheriff and his team for their support, especially for the deputies on-site assistance and risk mitigation. The sheriff's office also handles at-risk complaints or those where a criminal component may exist, and we really thank them for that. This program, the cannabis program, has an annual cost of about $495,000. The short-term rental program, again, I won't talk much about this. Your board just received an update a couple of meetings ago. But generally, the program is underpitted by a shared code officer, excuse me, a shared code supervisor, a full-time officer, plus the assistance with a traditional code officer, a full-time clerk, extra help consultants and officers during peak and holiday seasons. We have developed a new module in Acela that's better handling our cases. It's interfacing better with the public to do renewals, and we're hoping to offer some better reporting to really bring out the ground truth. The program's fiscal cost is $453,000. That's for short-term rentals. Hazardous vegetation, again, this is a countywide program with the exception. Hazardous vegetation, again, this is a countywide program with the exception of the unincorporated cities and towns. The program works cooperatively with Placer County Fire Department and the fire districts, intending to reduce the risk of wildfire by mitigating high, high-risk conditions through the development enforcement of defensible space and fire hazard regulations. Again, my thanks to Placer County Fire and the fire districts for their support and this updated, this updated standard, and for their assistance out in the community. The county's team is comprised of two extra help defensible space inspectors, again, seasonal assistance by the cannabis senior clerk, and is technically led by the county's new fire marshal. Last season was inaugural year for the program, and during that time, the team began to identify the more problematic parcels, educating the owners of the new requirements. In addition, nine MOUs have been approved, giving the fire districts the authority to resolve county's hazardous vegetation ordinances and complaints within their district. Your board should know, under SB 190, requires cities and counties to develop and enforce defensible space rules, and we've done that. In addition, Assembly Bill 38 requires the following for high and very high severity zones, and we're just catching up to this legislation. But in January 2020, sellers who receive a final inspection report, and that can be from my building inspectors when they're all completing and conducting final inspections and provide that defensible space service, those owners should be providing that, should be demonstrating compliance with the home hardening laws and must give that to any future buyer. In January of 2021, that was this year, sellers of homes built prior to 2010 must give buyers notice of how to harden the home and where the home may be vulnerable to wildfire. And starting this July in 2021, the seller must provide documentation of compliance with local ordinance, defensible space regulations. I'm not really sure what that means. We're not sure if that's going to burden this team with having to conduct those type of inspections in advance of an escrow close or in advance of a sale. We've heard that Truckee and some other communities in Tahoe have had some success with that, maybe a little bumps in the beginning, but have smoothed that process out. But we are watching that and trying to understand the legislation a bit more, and really the impacts on the team and how that might evolve over time. Again, with this program, we have developed a new module in Acela, our land development system, to aid the team in recording, resolving, and automating the complaint and enforcement process. This program comes with an annual cost of about $325,000. To support these programs, enforcement must be adjudicated at some point if the matter's not resolved by the owner. To aid county code compliance, noncriminal solutions have been developed. Nuisance abatement is one of those, although not the preferred. The second and most effective is administrative citations and hearings. And your board did adopt those standards, excuse me, the administrative citation and hearing process in 2010. Prior to that, as I mentioned, the team relied upon judicial citation and nuisance abatement actions to resolve the more sticky cases, but honestly, with backlog court dockets, diminished fines, and costly abatement proceedings, the team searched for and implemented a more effective solution, which was this administrative citation process. Last year, about 26 cases were heard. This year, so far, in calendar year, about 15 cases have been heard, and I really want to commend the supervising officers for encouraging the expedited process and trying to close cases out and resolve matters more quickly, which is why we're seeing the increase in hearings these days. Administrative hearing program has an annual cost of about $3,000 a year, and that's predominantly due to the hearing officers that we've employed. Next is our cost recovery. In an effort to reduce enforcement costs on the general taxpayer, cost recovery provisions exist in each program. The county can recover its administrative costs, including staff time, after a citation is issued or a nuisance abatement action occurs, according to the county's zoning ordinance. The cost recovery process begins after a hearing officer decision or abatement action, and the first step is to distribute an itemized list of costs to the owner. If the owner doesn't pay, reminder notices are sent, then we actuate revenue services. They try to collect. If they're unsuccessful, they ultimately refer that over to the state's intercept program. Really, with the increase in cases across all programs, cost recovery is becoming challenging due to the volume of cases requiring the recovery. I understood this last year, it's something in the neighborhood of $15,000 is outstanding, or excuse me, is incurred, and of that, we've only collected 3,000. So it is a bit challenging. Co-compliance is, the next program I want to talk about is abandoned vehicle program. Steve mentioned a bit of that. The co-compliance current abandoned vehicle program is scoped specifically for private property matters. So while the team can resolve most private property abandoned vehicles, the team cannot resolve abandoned vehicles on roadways, county property, or any other public property. The program is staffed with a cooperation of co-compliance folks, a cannabis clerk, and the code officers services program. The past year, the team towed about 27 vehicles. This includes RVs, boats, camp trailers, trucks, and passenger vehicles. RVs are the most expensive, particularly the older units with asbestos. They can cost between $3,000 and $5,000. Many times, these are abandoned with no idea who the owner is. They're full of junk. We have to have them towed off to a yard, have the junk removed from them, and then they try to dismantle it at that point. To assist with this ongoing problem and to reduce the general taxpayer contribution to the matter, the team is reviewing, as you heard from Steve, the state's abandoned vehicle abatement program, and that's in cooperation with the California Highway Patrol. This adds about a $1 to $5 fee to every vehicle registered in the county, and those funds are distributed to the county for the purposes of the program. It does include public and private properties, but part of the issue we're finding about today is this Prop 26 that may define this as a tax. And so for that reason, we've pulled back a little bit. We want to look more closely at it and try to understand what that looks like. The county has about 50,000, excuse me, co-compliance has about $50,000 today in its budget to accomplish abandoned vehicles, but we would not be able to do that on the roadways or any public way unless there would be an ordinance change outside of that, outside of that program. So I say, who knew co-compliance would evolve this way in such a short period of time? I guess it's testimony to the county's growth, changing demographics, and sophisticated community expectations. Not much will anymore. Many of these programs are stabilizing and performing well, and I give kudos again to the supervisors and their teams for a lot of great work by great people and supporting an amazing place. I think I heard Chairman Wiegand remark about his life passing before his eyes after listening to planning commission projects, and I have to tell you, Supervisor Wiegand, Chairman Wiegand, this resonates with me. Looking back over the past 10 years with co-compliance, I think we've all earned a few battlefield stripes, better known as gray hair. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions, so is the team. I just want to say thank you to you and the team for really 10-plus years of amazing support with this operation.
Thanks, Tim. From my perspective, your work and the staff is greatly appreciated all the years I've been around here, not to mention growing up here when it was a much smaller county. The kinds of conflicts that you have to deal with, obviously, it's pretty thankless level of work with honorary neighbors, et cetera, but we have more, more of a demand for it. And if we're going to do things which we think will be beneficial overall, like adding wineries to the mix of things, then there are going to be complaints. And if we can't have confidence that we have the ability to actually respond to those complaints, oftentimes to find out that they're not even with merit, but at least we can report out on that and/or do adaptive management if necessary. Marijuana, of course, was a story all unto itself, which took, in my view, a first cleanup phase, which now has, I hope, settled down quite a bit. But yeah, I just can't thank you enough personally and appreciate all the work that's done. It doesn't go, we, for years, some of us asked for more and more support in that regard because of these conflicts, and it's, it's not going to get easier. It's going to be more challenging. So we have to have good staff in place and the resources to make sure it all works, so.
And you do.
Yep, thank you. Cindy, then Jim.
I think Jim was up first.
Jim, then Cindy.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Tim, thank you for this presentation, and to all your staff. I know you're very responsive about our, when we get calls and you're out, trying to do the best you can to take care of them. I know it takes some time, but I really appreciate all the hard work. I'm disappointed that we're abandoning the abandoned vehicle program, but hopefully there's a way that we can work around and find a way to fund that because the problem is growing. Having been in the auto repair business, some of these motorhomes that people, you know, let sit in their yards, don't know what to do with them, end up out on the street with no registration or anything, and I've seen them where they're just jam-packed full of junk. And so whatever we can do to try to move forward with a program that can advance that with funding, where we can find the funding, I'd be fully supportive of. And again, thank you so much for you and your staff for the tremendous job you've been doing.
You bet. My pleasure.
Cindy. Well, ditto, all of that, both on the abandoned vehicles and on the great job for all the staff. I mean, what a thankless job. And, and, you know, I think watching the evolution of Placer County and the growing population and the growing stresses we see between neighbors, I wish we had a good neighbor policy for everybody, not just short-term rentals, because truly, a lot of this is common sense, you know, treating others the way you want to be treated and understanding, providing protection for the community members when we do have other uses. We talked about it with the, a lot of the planning conditions that we put conditional, on our conditional use permits, those conditions, somebody has to enforce that or it has no meaning, right? And so really appreciate all the efforts of your team in protecting our quality of life here and trying to help educate people about what they should do and shouldn't do, and then eventually, if we have to prosecute and go all that way, I really appreciate it. I think, I'd love to get all your stats in a report. I was trying to write it down and I was missing things, just because I think it's so important. I hear a lot of criticism that we don't enforce, and yet I know how hard everybody out there is working to do that, and we don't, you don't take enough credit for it, and we don't talk about it enough. The number of, when you just think of 300 here, 300 there, it really adds up. And, you know, when you start talking about the limited staff you have, how many is that a day, you know, when you divide it out over the number of days, it's, it's pretty significant. So I really appreciate that, and maybe we can have a campaign of being good neighbors to each other, and that might help solve things beyond just the short-term rental issues. But I really appreciate all the efforts, and I was interested particularly in the hazardous vegetation ordinance, because that was the most recent one.
Right.
And, and I saw 51 were actually from complaints. The other 107 were ones we found by going out there. On the 51 complaints, were those valid, those were valid complaints versus?
So I don't have all the statistics in front of me right now, so I'm not really sure. And honestly, we didn't enforce last year.
Right.
We did a lot of education, really just trying to prime the ordinance and get the word out, right?
Being a good neighbor, getting out your fuels.
Yes.
Hazardous.
Yes, so I don't even know that we have even indicated if those were legitimate complaints or not. This year, we're actually doing that, and we've built a good module, again, as I mentioned, in Acela, and so we're going to be able to track that and give you better reporting this year.
Great. Well, I really appreciate those efforts because that'll protect everybody, and unfortunately, that's what we, you know, we need to take care of those that are choosing not to so that we protect everyone else, so, thanks.
You bet. Thank you for your comments.
Jim.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, when you go out and inspect these complaints, you're not, you're not enforcing, you're more educating and trying to work cooperatively, give people time to correct their mistakes, make them understand what they have to do.
Yes.
And sometimes that takes some time. You give them 30 days, you go back, there's little progress, we give them another 30 days, but I know it's a very tedious project, process in order to get people to comply. So I just wanted to recognize you for that as well.
It is, Supervisor Gore. Thank you. I call it a 95-5 rule. We've all heard the 80-20 general rules, right? Here, I call it a 95-5. 90% of the folks, once you identify this isn't something that's permitted in the county, most of them take some action. 5% of those, you need to persuade a little bit more, show them the law, show them the standard, show, show some mechanism compliance. They usually come around. It's the last 5%, and that's what you're seeing with our admin hearings where, kind of, you know, digging their heels in a bit, not in agreement with it and don't want to do it. So we have to take more of an enforcement stance, because it was a couple of years ago, we came to the board and actually changed the name from code enforcement to code compliance to more mimic what our approach has been. Our interests are just keeping community balance, you know? And, and so first thing for us is education, and we've taken that same approach with hazvej is, the more we can educate, the more the community is going to adhere to that and learn and adopt and adapt to that, and, and the better outcomes we have. And so that's the approach we're taking. Unfortunately, we'll have those this year, we will have to abate them, but we're hoping education is our, and will be our primary focus.
Bonnie? Thank you, Tim, and thank you for the report and also for the work that you've helped my team with. I think I have another one today as a result of a conversation yesterday, so I'll be reaching out to you. But, you know, I appreciate the sort of 95% of folks comply. I was looking at the issues with the marijuana enforcement, and, you know, it looks like the citizens' complaints have reduced over time because it looks like probably their neighbors stopped doing something and, you know, reduced the number of grows or made sure their small outdoor grows were not on a property line, that type of thing.
Yes.
So that's really good. Of course, the number of law enforcement complaint, or I guess law enforcement activity, seeing that there were issues in different parts of the county, have increased, right? And that's because we're working with our deputy sheriffs.
Right.
Which is terrific. And, and it looks like we're going to have to have some conversations about how to do staffing in the future because we can't use the part-time annuance for a longer period of time, any long, you know, and so, you know, it looks like you all are going to come back with a proposal about how we might do that better and how we might partner with the sheriff's office, because that is, you know, it's still a concern, right? You've got illegal grows out in different places that are taking, likely taking water from canals, polluting areas, which, which is certainly a concern. And, you know, how do we continue to address that in a way that works, right? Because some of those areas are, can be dangerous for your folks.
Yes, very much so.
Who, who don't have that protection. So it looks like you'll come back, and I look forward to that conversation.
Thank you, Supervisor Gore. We have to tell you, Sheridan's a great success story for us. I think initially, we identified 40-some backyard grows. I think this year, we've had one. We've had some in the rural areas out in Lincoln, but those are diminished as well. We are seeing great success, and I would agree with that. It's attributed to kind of keeping on the pressure with what the standard is. We found last year, because we got a late start, it slipped a bit, and so we think this year is going to be a, we're thinking we're going to find a lot more grows than we have previously. So I do agree, you kind of have to keep the pressure on or it's going to backslide a little bit, and then working closer with the sheriff's department because we, our folks aren't armed. We've really tried to take a land use approach with this and, and just have conversation with folks, and as you can see by the stats, we've really only had one case go to hearing, and that was the initial year. And of course, we expected that, we expected the test, and then we didn't have any. And then last year, we had another one, which we actually had a negotiated agreement out of, and negotiated down from $75,000 to $18,000. It was the penalty for that. And so we really feel like we're approaching in the right way to get the right outcome. So thank you for recognizing that, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thanks to all the staff.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now take up, oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone from Toba Koo? And there is none, so we will now then take up item 13A. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
And we have two on Zoom now.
Oh, we do now? Yeah, please come forward, state your name for the record. Thanks.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jim Deon, and I own Golden State Patient Care in Colfax, the only legal cannabis business in Placer County, and I've owned it since 2003. I'm very proud of my store. We have not have one complaint in 18 years. The reason I'm not here for my store today, the reason I'm here is because of the compliance that's going on in the cannabis family. Right now, I understand that it costs 490, or the ongoing cost is $495,000 for the cannabis part, and another $280,000 for year-end program, whatever that is, but that's a total of $775,000 to try to eradicate cannabis. And I don't have a problem with spending that money as long as you go after large gardens, not long as you go after large gardens. Not my friends and family and neighbors who have small gardens, this 819 complaints that were lodged, 136 were citizen complaints, 684 were law enforcement complaints. Now, the flight plan, the way I see it is, get a complaint, code compliance goes to the property, they can't get in because the gate's locked or the dog's there. So they go back to the sheriff, who, I'm not quite sure who's funding the sheriff, but it can't be the Placer or the federal money. But anyway, so they come back and they say, hey, we can't get in, would you mind checking on this garden? So they go, okay. They'll go out and they'll check on the garden, and they'll come back and say, yeah, it's a garden. Okay, so they're not just going there and back, obviously. 684 complaints by the sheriff, that's the helicopter, going back and forth, and back and forth, and go, up, there's one, and there's one, and then handing it over, and then they go out and get it. That shouldn't be the way this works. You're going after my, your constituents, this is Placer County, these people aren't gangsters. They're not out there in our woods in, in, you know, District 5, growing thousands and thousands and thousands of plants and funding the black part market, which is what we're supposed to be against. So, I've made a little few calculations. You had a total of 40,152 plants that were what they call resolved, which means you made these people destroy their garden. Okay, they had to rip up their plants. That's 819 families that were upset financially, emotionally. Now they don't get their medicine, they have to go into my store. I hope I can get a little bit more time if I run.
I'd like you to keep your minutes, so three minutes, please.
Is this two or three?
That's almost three.
Well, let me try to hurry then, I apologize. 40,000 plants that were resolved, that's less than 50 plants per garden. That's a small amount. Can I get somebody to give me their time?
No, actually, another thing I want to point out is that you're really addressing the different issue anyway. We're talking about code enforcement. The code that is being enforced was adopted by the board several years ago. So I'm sure at some point in the future, we will consider, again, any potential modifications to our cannabis ordinance. But that's not what we're talking about today. What these folks are doing are enforcing the existing ordinance. To the extent that we may want to change that ordinance is a different subject, different discussion.
Well, I don't see that happening soon. My poor neighbors are suffering right now. 50 square feet is what you allow. That's about as big as this table. That's not enough for these folks, you know? And this is your, I don't care if this is the proper time, it might be months. If I don't come and talk too often, this is an important matter. You understand that. Don't go after the 50-plant garden, the six plants that's not over 50 feet or, or too close to the property line. Go after the cartels that are flooding the black market. That's your job. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here from public who'd like to address this item? And anyone on Zoom?
Cheryl, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I wanted to address, so first of all, I'll apologize. I, I thought this meeting was at 10:50, so if Tim Wagner's covered this, I just went by the staff report. The staff report did not contain anything to do with wineries and anything to do with dogs. And in the past few years, there's been quite a bit of concern over wineries. We heard at the Planning Commission for Wineries that there were no complaints about wineries. This morning, it was very obvious that for years, an entire neighborhood has been dealing with this. There's been multiple letters received on wineries, and this is just the beginning. It sounds like there's going to be a lot more. Enforcement was a very big issue that was raised. And, and so I hope Mr. Wagner can internalize what we anticipate to be a lot of complaints. I know in our district, having Sarah Winery, and they said they weren't going to have events, and now there's going to be events. This is just the beginning. In addition, in reading through this, it said that zoning and building codes were what basically the enforcement is on. Well, when the, approximately, I think it was about a year ago, Mr. Pedretti put in an entire new building code. I sent him an email when I saw the staff report. There was no notification to the public that this entire building code was going to be replaced. I checked the Sacramento B. No notification. I got no response from Mr. Pedretti. So apparently, he thought that he can just change the entire building code by himself, and then your board adopted it. The problem with this is that many of us living in unincorporated are grandfathered in on lots of code. To change the entire code without socializing with the public, going to the max, I personally take issue with, but I think a lot of unincorporated residents don't even know that the codes have been changed. And that, I think that that was an illegal adoption of an entire building code. There are going to be people out there that are going to be getting ding, that had no idea that the code was even changed. So I hope that that gets corrected in the near future. And I hope that the, the anticipation of a lot of the winery ordinance gets taken care of, because I think that, that that was severely, severely underestimated, and it was not reported by, it should have been reported, and it should have been reported today. I think it's being swept under the carpet. So I apologize to Mr. Wagner if he didn't, didn't, if he did mention it, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tim, did you want to respond to any of that?
If I may, if I may, Chairman Wagner, thank you very much. We didn't really address anything specifically. We didn't address wineries, breweries, we didn't really get into homelessness and the things that the code teams involved in. I just really kind of brushed on what the, kind of the high level attributes are of the team, and really just wanted to recognize them for just years and years of hard service. You know, relative to the, to the building code, that's a state mandate. That would have been mandated on the county regardless. We did our public noticing, that was a couple of years ago, 2019. And that went into effect in 2020. Again, that was, again, a state mandate across all cities and counties at that point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marilyn, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Marilyn, we can't hear you.
That's unfortunately, a tech issue on her side. I apologize.
Caller with the number ending in 7005, please unmute your phone and give your comments. Caller with the phone number 7005, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. You can turn me now, I'm going to have to mute this. There. This is Marilyn Jasper. I, the people, I appreciate the topics that were discussed in this compliance update agenda item, and what Cheryl, the speaker before me, said. And Cindy says that she hears criticism, and I'm compelled to add a few. Code compliance, right now, as I understand it, is complaint-driven, which is not working, in my opinion. It should be more proactive. During public comment this morning, you heard distraught neighbors possibly putting up with incompatible commercial operations. The problems and loopholes mentioned were the same negative impacts that the public mentioned over and over when that zoning text amendment was discussed, debated for over 10 years, and adopted. And there are still, these, not still, these problems are out there. At last, and, and that's not one topic, I realize. But then, at last night's ag commission, we heard of yet another possible example of non-compliance. That, and that one may have cost the county in taxpayer, tax avoidance, loss of revenues. So, my point in this is, I want to see code compliance do its job. I know it's difficult, I know you're, it's understaffed, I get what's being put out there. But maybe the focus needs to be direct at neighbors suffering with incompatible operations, their complaints are ignored or dismissed, and get back to amending zoning text ordinances that are causing the problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment.
Further comment with that then. Now, thank you again, you guys. Appreciate it. We will now take up item 13A, which is consideration of a resolution to execute and submit amendment claim to fiscal year 2020-21 transportation fund. And Will Garner.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Will Garner, Public Works Department Deputy Director. And as you mentioned, this item is to request an amendment to the local transportation fund claim to the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. Every year, we receive an apportionment of transit funds and street and road maintenance funds through both PCTPA and TRPA. One of those funding sources under this process is the local transportation fund. The local transportation fund is a primary state source of funds for public transportation. It can also be used to fund street and road maintenance in many counties. The LTF funds come from a quarter cent of our sales taxes returned to source and split up by population shares within our county by PCTPA. The original claim that your board approved in October was based on an estimate from PCTPA that the LTF, which is a sales tax-based again, would be down by 20% this year. At that time, it seemed that was the direction things were heading. As you've heard in other presentations to your board recently, sales tax, in fact, has not decreased as many had forecast, but is instead increased over the prior year. With that, the PCTPA Board just last month adopted a revised apportionment for this fiscal year, which makes more funding available for this year's budgets in Public Works. In our item that we brought to you in October to approve all these funds, we reported that the shortfall in our LTF funds would be mostly absorbed by using CARES Act funds from Federal Transit Administration, reduction in service costs, and Senate Bill 1 funds in road maintenance. This action will ease that shortfall by $464,000 approximately. So this amendment today results in $464,409 in additional funding for the public work, the Placer County Public Works this year, broken out $219,409 for Placer County Transit, $95,000 for Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit, and $150,000 for road maintenance operations. And I will note that this does not include the same LTF funds that are allocated by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. This is only the PCTPA side of the county. So with that, the requested action is to adopt a resolution to execute and submit an amended claim for fiscal year 2020-21 local transportation funds to the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, adding $464,409 to the approved claim of $4,519,383. And happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Will. Any questions? I see none. Anyone from the public wish to address this item? No one there either. What is?
I'll second.
Motion, Gufferson, second, Gore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, or, still suppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will. We'll now take up item 13C. I understand item 13B will be continued.
Yes, 13B has a request for continuance.
Thank you.
Karen, do we need a motion on that? Do we need a motion to continue it?
Okay.
Okay, good. So 13C is the old Auburn Forest Hill Road parking ordinance amendment. Stephanie?
There I am. Good afternoon.
There you are.
There I am. So, good afternoon. Stephanie Holloway, Senior Engineer in the Department of Public Works, here with you this afternoon to introduce an amendment to the county code section 10.12, 120, which is our no parking ordinance. And the request is really to add additional no parking areas on Old Auburn Forest Hill Road in the vicinity of the American River Confluence and the Auburn State Rec area. So let me just start by saying that I think it's no secret to all of us here that outdoor recreation has seen a significant increase over the last year due to the COVID pandemic. For the State Rec area, these visitors predominantly come and recreate via the personal vehicle, resulting in an increase in parked cars along our roadways. The good news for this area is there are a number of opportunities for people to park on the shoulder outside of the travel lane. But really, with the increase in visitorship that we're experiencing, we're finding that people are parking in areas that don't have shoulder, and they're parking in the travel lane. So we're finding, you know, just a growing concern for public safety and emergency responses that roadway gets narrowed and the area gets congested. So you have then provided a map of the areas that we are recommending additional no parking. Thank you, Megan. Myself, the road department staff, state parks, we have met to discuss the extents of, of the no parking that you're seeing on this map, and really feel that this proposal addresses some of the initial safety concerns that we've experienced over the last year. We do coordinate with county, with state parks on an ongoing basis. And really, they are our eyes and ears on these emerging situations. This request initially was presented to us by state park staff, and we've responded. We are continuing to monitor the situation and communicate with state parks, and, you know, really see the need to potentially need to pivot, and, and more adaptively manage this. It's obviously an increasing trend. And, like I said, I think that the areas that we're proposing to you today really address some of the initial concern, but it is an ever-evolving situation. So today, we're really simply here to present and introduce the amendments. This item will come back to you on April 27th, sorry, April 27th for consideration. If approved at that meeting, there is a 30-day notice before the no parking takes full effect. And really, the goal here is to potentially have it in place before the Memorial Day weekend. So with that, I'll take any questions I have.
Thanks, Stephanie. Bonnie?
Thank you, Stephanie. I actually know where that is, because I went hiking up there over the weekend. And my question for you is this, I, I, you might have a lot of the same people who park up in the same location, right? Sort of walkers along the trail. I'm just thinking it would be really important to make sure we provide public outreach, or maybe, maybe stat, or maybe the state parks folks know if it's sort of the regulars, same people. I certainly understand the safety concern, it makes a lot of sense, because those are really, really narrow roads. So I just want to make sure we do a good job of providing public awareness, so that people are not surprised. It's just my, I guess it's not a question, I guess it's a, a two cents, let's make sure we provide some awareness in conjunction with state parks as we move to do this.
Yeah, happy to do that. We can talk with our road departments, see if there's some kind of messaging that we can get out. Sometimes we'll put out some changeable message signs before the regulation is implemented. So happy to have that further conversation.
Cindy?
Well, we were just talking about enforcement, so I'll ask, it's great to have an ordinance, but how, how do we work on enforcement for this?
So state park staff does have the ability to write citations for no parking, and they, they do predominantly, like I said, they're, they are our eyes and ears, kind of in the confluence area, as well as some of the other adjacent access points to State Rec. So they are probably our first, first resource for, for enforcement. are probably our first, first resource for, for enforcement. And then also CHP, you know, they are our regular enforcement arm for county maintained roadways. So getting out to notice them and see if they could patrol on some of those peak, peak usage times.
That would be great because, you know, we'll hear about it if we've done it and we're not enforcing. And so just making sure that we work with our partners to step up the enforcement. That'll send a, a strong message and discourage people from breaking the rules. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thanks for the exhibit. That really helped me. I'm sorry I didn't know all the mileage markers.
No problem.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? And Karen, do we need a formal motion for this or do we need a formal motion to adopt this? Moved and seconded to complete the introduction. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Chair, I need to recuse on this next item.
For item 13D. Thank you. The 13-day easement abandonment portion of North Street, Tahoe City. Sarah Williams.
Good afternoon, Chair Wagner and members of the board. I'm Sarah Williams, right-of-way agent from the Department of Public Works. I'm here before you today to request that the board adopt a resolution to abandon a portion of a road easement for North Street in Tahoe City. The abandonment was requested by the owners of 555 Red Cedar Street, who have asked the county to abandon a 25-foot wide portion of the unimproved North Street road easement south of the center line adjacent to their existing northern property boundary. The North Street road easement was offered for dedication for public use, but not accepted by your board on the original 1941 Tahoe Terrace subdivision map. The easement was later accepted as a public road easement by the 1951 Placer County Board Resolution, accepting streets and roadways delineated on certain maps as public roads in and around the Lake Tahoe area. The easement area has not been improved as a public road and is not county maintained. No future use of the easement area by the county was identified. No objections to the abandonment were received and no adjacent parcels will be landlocked as a result. The county has received fair market value from the applicant to be deposited into the Department of Public Works trust account for future right-of-way acquisitions upon your approval today. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions of the board, my head.
Thank you. Any questions? I see none. Anyone from the public? No. What is the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, second Gore. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And item 14, Parks and Open Space Department ordinance introduction. Todd?
Yeah, good afternoon. So what I'm bringing forward to you today is a consideration about a reorganization as part of our continual evaluation, I think this every organization does. As opportunities present themselves, we look at the evolution of departments and services and programs. This is just kind of a, a normal course of business. As we were looking at our parks and open space operations, a couple of things have come to light. One is, and you saw it this morning with the commendation from, of Mark Rideout retiring. Mark was really instrumental in overseeing the parks operation up to this point in our public works department. And as was kind of attested to the things that he's done and the things that have gone on, you know, our parks operations definitely evolved. We've moved from kind of, I'm going to say a sleepy little parks operation, but one that is honestly in, in the same vein as, as some of the major parks and open space operations around the country. And as we look at quality of life in this county, I think our parks operation is probably a key component of that. This is why people come here to recreate and many times why they come to stay. And so as we looked at that evaluation with the retirement of, of Mark, we spent some time talking about the different activities that are taking place in this parks arena. As you all know, we have a number of unincorporated areas that are going to be building out, whether it's Placer Vineyards, Riolo, Regional University, Placer Ranch, all have major either CFDs attributed to the funding of a parks. And in some cases, kind of that recreation amenity is, as we kind of butt up against some of our municipal jurisdictions, those requests for those sort of services are going to take, take fold and be more conversations as we move on. At the same time, we have some rec districts. We have a number of park and, and development fees. And as I'd be remiss to say, we didn't talk about the east side with all the trails and network connections in partnership with our public utility districts that do a lot of the services and in partnership with ourselves. This is just pretty extensive. And as I looked at it, I said, and really took the thought of not only is, are we've grown up a bit, but we're also going to be growing. And so what we're really looking for is someone, and my, my recommendation is to carve out parks from being an actual division of Public Works to being a standalone department commensurate with the other departments that we have. From a staffing standpoint, it's really a transparent issue. We'll be, we'd be reclassifying Mark's position to be a director of Parks and Open Space versus the division director under Parks. They would be able to handle all the financial aspects of it as well as the master planning effort that'll be coming forward to you in the near term. You know, there's over $100 million in kind of the teaser for you all, over $100 million in different projects over the next, you know, 15 to 20 to 30-year horizons that will be proposed and discussed with you when they bring forward the overall master plan. That's a significant amount of, of growth. And not saying it all happens yet tomorrow, but I'm saying there is a game plan and a strategy in having someone to not only deal with the operational side, but also to handle how is this going to be paid for, not only the operations, but the capital. We have a lot of funding sources, whether it's state, federal, philanthropic, and then obviously the county has a number of matches. That's a fairly complex piece. And then we have development fees attributed to that. So my recommendation to you all is to carve out this, this division into a separate department. We would make that transition as a commensurate with the ordinance change that would be taking place. I'll speak to that in one second. But that wouldn't change anything from a staffing standpoint. The staff that we have would remain park staff. If you look at the financial and accounting aspects of it, we have some administrative staff that provide some assistance across parks and public works, but they are really separate in their financial accounting for things as well. So I don't see that being significant change. It's more about the management and administration and having someone really targeted on the, on the department side. As we move forward in this arena, we wouldn't make a financial change until the budget July 1, so everything would kind of remain the same. My general interest here is to go out and do a recruitment for a director position. Gives us the opportunity to identify someone that can really fit the bill and be here commensurate and prior to the adoption of the budget for the, the coming fiscal year. And it gets that person off the ground and running and just gets us kind of in a, in a good mode. So we have two items before you as attachments. One's an organizational chart. The only difference that's proven proposed here is where that individual or that department lies. The way our, our structure is laid out, Dave DeFoni, who's in the audience, handles really more of our land use related things. He's handled public works, overseen public works for quite some time. So this transition to Parks as an individual department just has a lot of primary sense and structure to it that makes, makes a lot of sense as we move forward. So that would, that'd be overseeing under Dave's purview and then the ordinance is the other attachment. Any, any organizational structure requires a introduction of an ordinance and a waiver of an oral reading. And it adds the addition of the Department of Parks and Open Space to chapter two. And that would kind of set the tone for moving forward. We have a formal adoption of that ordinance on the 20, 25th of, of April, so our next board meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions my have.
Any questions? I see none. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
Mr. Garabedian, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thank you. Mike Garabedian, Placer County tomorrow and Friends of the North Fork. Two points, basically. My first exposure to parks was in, it was 2002 approximately, when it was in facility services. And it's, seems to have been in various places in the county bureaucracy since then. I think it would be good in the staff report, written report at least, to have, give that background and see where it's been, how it's migrated over the years, if, if not now at that point. And secondly, the first exposure I had, it had its own SECLA process that was not in the county process. The documents were not listed with the county, Corde and Environmental Services folks. And of course, I would, the recommendation would be to have it part of the regular SECLA process. I don't know if that's known at this time, but if, if it's known differently, that would be good to know now, but I doubt it is. So I hope that it does, it is a part of the regular SECLA county process and look forward to the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment, Chairman.
No further public comments. What is the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, second Gore. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will now return to closed session. So Karen?
Consider the remainder of the items specifically under A1, A and B, 2A, and one item under 2B. An authorized settlement. That concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you. And we are continuing public comments from our 9:30 this morning. So if there's anyone from the public who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda, now was the time.
Chairman, I see no public comment.
With that, we are adjourned for the day.